Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Hearing for May 7, 2019. We begin with a new case, item number 1, 2018-22A, 255-18th Street, Brooklyn. Please state your name for the record.
Marvin Mitsner, the applicant.
No, not for eight cases.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. It's Marvin Mitsner for the applicant. Based upon what I heard at the executive session, I agree with the Chair that correct plans were not supplied by either DOB or the owner, nor were plans that clearly evidenced that the CFO was issued upon those plans.
Sorry, sorry. You said that. I said that the correct plans weren't submitted. That's not what I said. I said that the plans that you're referring to in your papers were not submitted by you or DOB, so the board has nothing to go on. There's an assumption that there were plans. Unless we actually had them in our hands, the board can't look at plans that either don't exist or might have existed. So to say that they were the correct ones and the ones we looked at weren't correct was not what I said.
Okay, but in fact, there were no plans that were found by DOB in connection with the later filed applications that gave rise to the CFO. So it's impossible to tell which plans were used when the CFO was issued. And you complained that the owner had plenty of time to try to get those plans, but I would point out that it's not the owner's burden to maintain and provide such plans. It's DOB's burden. DOB as the party seeking to revoke the CFO, has the burden to demonstrate that the building didn't conform to the plans. But in order to do that, they have to have the approved plans. I would refer the board to Inray Haberman, 85 AD 3rd, 1170. This establishes that principle. The extent that this board has found that the owner did not supply plans, or has found something in contrary to the fact that DOB never produced the plans, that is an error in law and constitutes a misapplication of law.
But DOB did supply plans. We do have plans before us.
DOB supplied plans, but those plans are unrelated, or DOB has not established that those plans are related to the CFO issuance.
But the paperwork that DOB described, the paperwork, and the application that was filed that you're relying on describes itself as a "no work" application. So therefore, it means that there was a set of plans before that had the work shown on them. So that set of plans before, in terms of the timing, seems obvious, was the plans that looked the most like what, in fact, we are looking at. And by the way, this conversation I find bizarre because no matter how you slice it, the multiple dwelling law applies to this building. And so whether or not there are the exact plans, you would have had to show compliance with the multiple dwelling law. So then that last set of plans, the plans that were submitted in connection with an alteration type 1, so it alters it from artist studios to residence, show the compliance with the multiple dwelling law, the next set of plans would have had to do the same thing if there were, in fact, the next set of plans. So for me, this idea of relying on fictitious, potentially fictitious set of drawings and say it's because you don't have it, you can't prove a negative kind of thing.
We're not accepting the assumption that there was another set of plans.
Yes, correct.
Well, but if you look at the later documents that were filed, document 3 and 4, there were plan examinations that were conducted by two separate plan examiners, right? And they would have had plans in front of them to conduct that plan examination. All I'm suggesting, and I understand your issue with the MDL, but in your findings, you've made specific findings relating to the 1999 plans, and I'm addressing that. And to the extent that in your findings you rely upon these 1999 plans as evidence of what was used to generate the CFO, I'm saying that there's a question of fact there and there's also a question of law there as to whose responsibility it was to maintain those plans and provide those plans.
Okay, I can accept the question of fact because you're stating that there may have been other plans. I don't see a question of law because none of that's been established.
Or fact. This is the fact part.
The fact is a discretionary issue. We can decide whether or not we believe that to be true or not. But to say that there's a question of law that stems from that, I don't see that lead.
But the question of plans notwithstanding, the application was to revoke the CFO because the built conditions don't match what's on the CFO. So I suppose if the board were, ignoring the argument about the plans, the basis of the board's decision was that the rear apartments don't comply with the MDL, don't have legal light and air, and that the first floor in the cellar weren't altered as indicated on the CEO. What about the built conditions matching the CFO?
I'll get to that portion of it, but I will.
Okay.
But still, the board in its resolution relies upon the existence of those 1999 plans as producing the CFO. So the CFO, the CFO doesn't contain drawings. The CFO contains uses, all right? But the drawings that were relied upon for that CFO would have contained certain indications of what the building should look like. Those plans are not missing. They're missing because DOB lost their records. That's why they're missing. DOB has an obligation to maintain their records. They didn't meet their obligation, and it's clearly their responsibility. It's not the owner's responsibility. And I know at the executive session, I think the Chair mentioned something about the owner having plenty of time to find the plans and sort of implied that it's the owner's obligation to provide those plans. It isn't.
But you're suggesting that, again, that these plans exist, right? There's one possibility, they exist and DOB lost them. But there's also the possibility that there are no other plans. You acknowledge that we know equally as much that that's a possibility.
No, no, I don't acknowledge that. There were two other PAA filings. There were two plan examinations by two different plan examiners. I dare say they would have had plans in front of them to conduct those examinations, sign off the audit, the Adler audit, that generated those PAAs, and that is what would have occurred.
I agree up to the point that you say "would." They could have. That could have been the case. Not is the case or was the case.
Well, it is the case when you present something to the building's department as a PAA and you have two plan examiners reviewing it. They have to review something. They review plans.
So.
And they signed off on it.
But I thought the last, the PAAs that were submitted, the forms did not.
It said "no work."
No work and did not have anything, any reference to any plans being submitted as part of the PAA. So how then one assumes that based on that, there ought to be a plan. There could or could not be, but it doesn't say there must have been a plan or a plan would have been required as part of that.
And if we just go to what this hearing really is, this is a motion to reargue, right? So what you're presenting here isn't any different than what you presented during the course of the hearings. You argued during the course of the hearings that there were these plans without any way of substantiating that the plans existed. For instance, I asked you to bring the architect in to testify, and there was no architect who came in to testify that there were a set of plans that were lost, for example. And we looked at the documents already and the indications on the filing documents with DOB didn't indicate that there was particularly a set of plans. And if we look at the 99 plans and we walk around the site, other than the missing setback at the rear, the building looks like the picture, right? Except for occupancy issues, right? And so the facts before us seem to reinforce the board's position that the 99 plans were as close to what the CFO was based on as possible. Was there a change in the door swing? Something like that, maybe. But other than that, the drawings look like the site, missing the rear yard setback.
There is just no evidence to support that conclusion.
The evidence is the inspection.
There's no evidence that's.
There's no, and, go ahead.
The evidence that you're stating that suggests otherwise isn't convincing to the board.
Right. But that's the thing, and we're trying to, this is a motion to reargue. What's different about what you're stating today than what you stated at the prior hearings and upon which the board considered and then made its decision based on the record of all the information before? It would be a misapprehension of the facts. Facts are things you can hold in your hand, right? What are the difference, what are the different facts that you're presenting that we didn't have before us?
Until we get a resolution from the board, we don't know what the board is relying upon for its determination.
Sorry, we had, there's a resolution. The resolution issue, right?
I know. And the extent that resolution contains information which we believe is a misapprehension of facts or a misapplication of law, then we're entitled to bring that back before you to try to reargue the case.
I'm not saying you're not entitled to bring the case back. The question is, what was it that was discussed at hearing that you were aware of, because our hearings are well-recorded, right, that's different from what you're saying today? And you heard us relying throughout the hearing on the 1999 plans. Once we understood the difference between the artist, there was some confusion at the beginning about the drawings that said artist studios versus the drawings that said apartments, right? Once we understood the difference between those plans and that there was an alteration type 1 filed to amend the first set of drawings to turn it into residences, now we had a set of drawings upon which we relied to decide what the project looked like. And then when we went on our site visit, we walked around with a set of drawings on the site visits, right? Everybody had on their phones the drawings. I think somebody may have brought the drawings. And we're walking around and it looks pretty much like the picture until we realize there is no setback at the rear. So I'm having trouble following your reasoning.
There's two aspects to these proceedings. One is whether we're entitled to reargument, and the second is the reargument given granted. And what I'm suggesting was different is that until we got the resolution, until we realized what the basis of the board's decision was, it seemed to have turned the responsibility for producing plans that led to the CFO, seemed to change that responsibility to the ownership rather than to DOB. And the law is that DOB is the entity that's required to produce those plans, and it didn't.
The point is, if you're arguing that a set of plans exists, then, and DOB doesn't have a set of plans, and DOB is showing us the documentation on the filing materials that seems, appears to indicate that there were, in fact, no plans submitted with it, and we have a set of plans that appear to be the right set of plans, then in order for you to establish that all of these assumptions are wrong, then you need to produce the facts, right? Otherwise, there isn't any.
That's a question of analyzing the evidence that DOB submitted. They didn't submit the evidence. What evidence did they submit that there were no plans filed with the Doc. 3 and 4 filings?
The alteration 1 applications.
So if I could read the PAA descriptions for the job, actually, so Doc. number 3, description of amendment, PAA filed to add controlled inspections and answer audit objections. And then Doc. 4, description of amendment, PAA filed to amend PW1 in Schedule A. So which of those, to you, indicates that maybe there were additional plans?
Well, certainly Doc. 3, to answer the audit objections.
Do you know what the audit objections were?
We have a list of them. I have them here. Okay. I'll read you all the objections that were listed. Doc. 1 indicates no work, all work filed under all type 2, and it gives the number 300925934. Doc. 2 introduces new applicant for OT work. Doc. 2 indicates enlargement repair of exterior and rear walls. No PW2 found for such work. No control special inspections such as were indicated and performed, and no plans found for audits. So those objections were responded to in Doc. 3, and they were signed off.
Oh, wait. So we don't know that all of the objections were responded to. We know that it says "to respond to objections," right? So a lot of that is filling out forms. Right, they need PW.
Except the need for plans.
But we don't know that the plans were provided because the document itself says no plans provided, right?
This is not the document. This is the objection sheet.
Right. Well, yeah. So we, that's.
We considered this.
You want to go on? What?
I was saying, we considered this, and we didn't find that argument to be compelling.
I'm just, I'm raising this in the context of a motion to reargue.
Yes, understood.
In the sense that I believe that it was an error in fact and also an error in law because the law places that burden squarely on DOB and not on us. And DOB has to meet that burden in order for them to be successful in trying to revoke the CFO. That's their onus. It should be a heavy onus.
I appreciate the argument. I certainly appreciate the argument. I think that before we can get to the step 2 of whether or not there's an error in law, there's a question of law, that we'd have to agree on the position that this fact occurred, which it seems that the board wasn't compelled or wasn't convinced that another set of plans existed. And even beyond that, you know, back to the CFO and the multiple dwelling law, which is really the underlying piece of this.
Yes, we'll get to it. I just want to, I want to reiterate.
I just want to pick up on this concept. So, okay, let's say we have a building where it's clearly, once constructed, it's six stories taller than it's allowed to be under zoning. And, you know, we have seen things like that where it sort of sneaks in and nobody realizes it, and then the neighbors call and say, "What's going on? The building just keeps growing." And then finally, and then somehow or other it doesn't get picked up, and eventually it gets a CFO somehow mysteriously, right? And there are no drawings, none. But when you do an analysis, because the architect went out of business, threw away all their files, DOB lost the file, and so on, but clearly the building is two times larger than the allowable zoning. So if you do a zoning analysis based on the time that the permit was pulled, and you find that the building was actually illegally constructed, you're saying that because DOB cannot produce a set of drawings, there's no way that you could revoke the CFO, or for that matter, revoke the building permit assuming there was no CEO. That's what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying that at all. That's nothing to do with what I'm saying. Okay. Essentially, it has nothing to do with it. What I'm saying is basically the obligation of proving their cases on DOB. You know, the audit was conducted by Mr. Adler. Mr. Adler, I believe, is still with DOB. He has a pretty high-level position at DOB. Did anybody at DOB talk to Mr. Adler to find out if plans were produced to overcome his audit? Did DOB do any of that work so they can come here and say specifically, "There were no plans filed"? They didn't do that. It's their burden to do that.
Would it have changed the outcome? I think is what the Chair stated.
That's what I'm saying.
You know, is it reversible error? Would it have changed the outcome?
Well, let's get to that.
No, 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 not reversible error. That's a different subject. But we're talking about the extra six stories, right? Would it have changed the outcome if it's an illegal construction?
Reversible error is, it's a legal term, Chair. It's a legal term, reversible, not in.
Yeah. Careful, though, how you use in this context.
So I'm looking at the applications filed. Sorry, apologize.
So the question.
So, as you mentioned, the underlying issue. So to the extent that the board and DOB now say MDL 277 must be complied with, and therefore a five-foot distance must be created between the.
Or whatever the distance is that's required by the MDL.
That's correct. Or whatever is required by MDL. The solution would be to create this five-foot distance between the window and the rear lot line. And that's something we presented, I believe. The response, response has been that this is significant construction. That's a mischaracterization, and it's really a misapprehension of facts, that it requires significant construction. We have retained the services of a well-respected engineer who has prepared a report, is actually here and can testify.
But Mr. Mitsner, does the characterization of the construction necessary to comply with the MDL as substantial change the board's determination in this case?
That's not for me to say. That's for you to say. But what I'm saying is that the board relied upon the fact that it was a substantial amount of construction to indicate that it was not curable, and that's what stated. That's what the board stated. And we have an engineer report of the.
Is there more copies?
Yeah, just a second. But that report, and it's a report by Brian Bramall, and he visited the premises, inspected the spaces in question, and his conclusion is that this is minor, minor work.
You're removing the real "or."
Go ahead. Is this.
Before you characterize it, you should read it.
I have a question. This work that you're stating it as minor work, is that a determination that DOB would make? Or is that?
No, I think what he's arguing is that the board came to the conclusion that the CEO should be revoked because of the significant work that would be required to have it comply with the MDL at the rear. That's his argument. Whether or not you agree that that's a decision.
My question is technically, when you, I guess you have to go to DOB to request to do this.
No, no, no. This is in the context of case law.
Okay.
Where, and the DOB also, in the course of its recent history, where there were times where it moved to revoke a CFO, and then the court had determined that certain kinds of work was correctable error, and therefore the CFO should not have been revoked. And in the few cases where there were decisions about what's correctable error, in one case, the one that I remember, was that the foundation of the building was constructed forward of the, maybe it was the front yard line, not forward of the property line, but forward of the front yard line. And in that case, the court held that it was correctable error, even though it wasn't built according to the drawings. It was correctable error to move the first floor back to the front yard setback line. And that's only true because they hadn't built it yet, right? So the only thing that was forward of it was the cellar, if I'm remembering the facts correctly. And the cellar, of course, is not in the front yard. It's not above grade, right? So the court held that that kind of thing shouldn't lead to the revocation of CFO. And so what is, and then in our case on 11th Street, where we, this was a separate subject entirely, but what was missing from the main building, which, where the board decided that the CFO should not be revoked, was an exit passageway that really just needed a slight modification, and the board preferred that the CFO stay in place there because the modification to the exit passageway was really quite minor, as opposed to what needed to be done if that rear building stayed sort of legal, right? So the revocation of the CFO for the rear building meant that, whatever the conditions were, however the building would be used, and the preference was that it would be demolished, actually, then there was no longer an issue about egress from that building, right? So that's what this discussion is about, is if this was, and the board here had talked about, on this case, whether shifting from a dry sprinkler system to a wet sprinkler system required a lot of work in the units, in which case whether that was correctable or not correctable. And we got more and more information about what's involved in that, right? But the focus finally was on this cutback at the rear because it's such an obvious disruption and such an obvious, I have to say, so some of the focus of correctable error, we go back to really what a CFO revocation case is, right? Did the project comply with the drawings at the time of the issuance of the CFO? And, you know, maybe you could argue minor modifications to a building could be forgiven, or let's say just corrected after the fact, though there are some cases, I don't remember the name of that case, where the court said, "The CFO shouldn't have been issued. It didn't look anything like the drawings," or "There were too many things that needed to have been done. Why was the CFO issued at the time?" This one looks more like that case. I wish I could remember the name of that case. And so, and in this case, the apartments don't have legal light and air. For me, that's critical. How are those people literally occupying a building without legal light and air?
Well, in this case, we can't do what you suggest because, because we don't have the plans that were filed in connection with the CFO. So we are relegated to looking at what exists now and what may need to be corrected to come into compliance without plans, without those plans, because we can't rely upon any plans, right? That's what we're suggesting.
That's what you're suggesting, but that's not really.
Well, that's what we're suggesting. In any event, what we're left with is issues that are correctable, as the board mentioned, the sprinkler system, illegal occupancy, which can be corrected. But what the board found was incurable was the rear of the building. And I would point out that it's not as if these people don't have light and air. They've got windows. They've got, they may not have legal light and air.
That's the critical term right there, that we're legal.
But the way you're characterizing it, the way you're characterizing it suggests that these tenants have no light and air, and that's just not the case. They have light and air. It may not constitute legal light and air, and the chances, and because it's a rear yard of adjacent property, it's never going to be built up to. So from a practical perspective, they have light and air. Just clarify that point. Now.
It's a slippery slope there.
Yeah, very slippery. So lots of illegal things are.
I appreciate your position. I just think that, you know, if we start going down that line of reasoning, it could drastically affect our future cases, and I'm not really comfortable with.
It's a peculiar way of looking at the law. Either it's, it's not sort of kind of legal.
I'm not disagreeing with you. Madam Chair, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just pointing out the facts. Because you left the impression that there's no light and air to these units, and that's a wrong impression.
It's one that's below the legal standard, though.
The amount of light near that enters those apartments is not below the legal standard.
The amount of light.
Right. Now, in your findings, you said very simply that the rear yard, or the rear wall, rather, being not in compliance with 277, is incurable absent significant construction that may require temporarily relocating tenants of those dwelling units. And I will, may. I would like, I would like our consultant to come up and explain to you why it's not significant construction and why it won't require relocation of tenants to any great extent.
To any great extent. But it just said relocation.
How about one day?
Okay.
This is Brian Bramall, our consultant.
It has to be relocated by day. That I agree.
Madam Chairperson.
Please state your name for the record.
Brian K. Bramall, last name B-R-A-M-E-L.
Hello.
Howdy, ma'am. This property, to put the light and air in that we're talking about, basically we're building an internal balcony on the property. The way the building is actually constructed, it's a cast-in-place concrete building. The rear wall happens to be a cast-in-place wall also. The formwork is very clearly identifiable on it still. The way it's framed, the sill, the stool below the window is actually not structural. And the girder in the wall is actually chasing around the window. So the operation that we're talking about doesn't constitute. So the operation that we're talking about doesn't constitute a structural rehab to the building at all, or a structural modification to the building.
I'm sorry, isn't this, wouldn't this be more appropriate as a motion to renew? This is new evidence.
But they can't, because the case was granted, the application was granted.
Not available. But in any event, I'm not really sure that it's new evidence because we're still looking at, did it comply at the time the C of O was issued? That's actually the question. Not whether there's a sort of a clever way to do this so that the tenant only has to be relocated for a day, but you, I'm just guessing you might have had experience living in construction.
Yes, more than once.
Living in units under construction. Remember the dust? Remember how much had to be re, had to be cleaned? How much of the work of your possessions had to be moved to another corner of your place, and then covered in plastic? And how disruptive it was, and about the repainting?
And I understand your concerns. And Madam Chairperson, I fully understand your concerns, but the state of the art of construction has improved drastically in the last few years. And the state of art of construction, so the zip wall systems, the filtering systems that we use to capture the fine particulates, it's gone a long way in the last few years.
That's in very high-end construction. I'm just taking a wild guess, we're not getting high-end construction here. Just taking that wild guess based on what I see in the building and how the building is maintained, right? If you were talking about working at 15 Central Park West, and you don't want to disturb the people who live there while you're building a new bathroom, zip walls, filtration systems, all of that, that's the one you're talking about.
That's an unfair, uncalled-for assumption. It really is. You're suggesting that the owners would not do everything in their power to try to do this.
No, I don't think that's what she was suggesting at all.
I'm suggesting that this will not be high-end construction because nothing in the building indicates that that's been the behavior of this owner.
And Madam Chairperson, to assail your concerns on that, the minor nature of this makes it very easy to encapsulate that area. So I think that, I think that your concerns are not necessarily founded in this instance.
Without asking you how, you realize that you need to cut part of the building, tear it down, and then sit back your walls, probably five feet or so, right?
Well, sir, I don't believe you do. I think that making that's a false assumption. Because this is a cast-in-place concrete building.
Okay.
So we're going to do non-structural partition walls. The actual floor systems that you're sitting on is actual, it stays. We don't even mess with it. It's an extremely simple construction.
So that's a D O B call, I have to say, is when you're pulling back the building to comply with whatever it is the multiple dwelling law means to say, because one of the things I do want to say about this, having worked on buildings like this, when you've gotten, got an existing loft building, and the existing loft building already sets back five feet from its property line, and already sets back 15 feet from the building wall that's behind it, then you're allowed to keep it. That's what the multiple dwelling law says. But I don't know how buildings interprets new work, where it didn't comply with that, because I've worked on projects where the D O B required a 20-foot setback. And I just don't frankly know which way they would go on a situation where the building doesn't already comply, because the more strict version of the multiple dwelling law when it comes to rehabs of these buildings is a 20-foot distance to the property line. So I don't know which one it is, right? We're assuming five feet, we're using five feet based on the drawings that we saw, and, but, D O B still has the right to review it however it reviews it, right? So I don't know what assumptions to make. I also don't know, because in those five-foot setbacks, I've never seen the structure of the building remaining, and then the windows simply pull back. That's not, that's not a rear yard, right?
There's no rear yard requirement. The language of the.
The law says that there has to be this five-foot distance.
Between the window and the rear lot line, don't talk about a rear yard.
Again, so this is not an interpretive appeal, but that part of it would go to D O B and their interpretation of the multiple dwelling law and of the required opening. So the assumption that all you do is you pull back to create a balcony, which is not what was shown on the drawings. The drawings show a full five-foot pullback, open to the sky, top to bottom, because that's the part of the issue, that when you're getting light and air, it says you look onto a yard that is open to the sky. What you've got balconies. Yes, you've got balconies that are enclosing access to the direct view of the sky. So I don't know if your assumption is correct at all, and we're not going to get into that because that's really D O B's decision.
Not quite. We are going to get into that because Mr. John Peachey stood before this board and indicated that as a solution. And that's a solution that the court recognized in a matter of 233-15 Street Court versus Bassie. I'll give you a site, 38 Miscellaneous Third, 499, where that was offered as a solution to satisfy this provision of the multiple dwelling law.
Okay, so again, Mr. Peachey is an architect hired by the tenants. Department of Buildings is the agency responsible for determining how you comply with code and zoning. We're not going to get into how they decide you need to comply with code and zoning. There was an opportunity to comply back in the day when the drawings were filed and approved, and the owner chose not to comply. So I think that the, they chose not to comply. So if D O B interprets it differently today, I can't speak to that.
Except that that becomes a correctable error. That if, if in fact, your presumption that there was major construction involved in relocation of tenants, which is the basis for which you revoked the C of O, and you found that, you found that to be incurable, if that is not true, okay, then I think we're certainly entitled to a rehearing on that.
So I'm having trouble with your understanding of what's correctable error. Like, everything's correctable, you can tear half the building. You know, if there's a 30-foot rear yard requirement, as it turns out, sure, it's totally correctable. A bunch of tenants will have to be located in another place permanently, right? But it's completely correctable. At what level does it become unreasonable to say it's a minor correction that could be done on the job, and a C of O shouldn't be revoked? If you told me it was a door swing, if you told me it was some little thing to fix the elevator, I don't know. Maybe it would be, maybe you could view that as a minor issue that could be corrected. This is not minor, I think we've already talked about this.
Let me just, I'm sorry.
What was described as a symptom fix, one-day fix, is just pull back the front walls, leave the complete structure as is, don't touch it.
I don't know if that complied.
And if this is the case, probably it's durable run one day, probably in a week or two.
Yes.
And I believe if I live in these apartments, I would love to move away and then come back when the work is done.
And the other thing.
But if you want to tear down the concrete framing, this is totally different animal. And my understanding for correction, if the drawings called for no structure within this five-feet, seven-feet, wherever, sit back, it should be no structure. It should be no beams, no slabs. And if you go into that, it's totally different one.
Yeah.
Just to make it clear.
Yeah.
Let me just.
No, I just don't find the appellant's argument very convincing. And the fact of the matter is, when that C of O was granted, this did not match the only plans that could be located for the rear.
Right.
Now, let me just point out that, and I'm quoting you, Madam Chair, actually, at the hearings, where you said, and we've had recent cases where there was so much work that needed to be done on the building, it was incredible to bring it up to code, to bring it into compliance with zoning, and the Department of Buildings says that's correctable error. And I dare say, on East 11th Street, there was a substantial amount of work that had to be done, and that was also deemed to be correctable error. I would, I would point out that, to the extent that we can establish, and I believe we do, and it's not just the D O B, the court, the court has recognized that pulling back the windows five feet is all that's required, because that's all that the M D L says. The M D L doesn't say create a five-foot rear yard. It doesn't say anything about creating a yard. All it says is the distance between a window and a rear lot line. Any one window, not all the windows, any one window in the rear lot line, minimum of five feet. That belies the fact, that belies any consideration that you need to pull back the entire building or a substantial portion of it, and you have to do any structural work.
But how would, I just have a question. How would pulling the window back five feet comply with the set of plans that show no structure in the, in the five feet? It's not the same thing. So you would never be easily complying with that set of plans because you have to remove that rear wall.
You're talking about, you're talking about the plans, you're talking about the plans that we can't verify with the plans that were used to generate the C of O.
But you're not suggesting.
No, we're talking about what plans that you say.
You're not suggesting, you're not suggesting that these, this other set of plans that you say may exist had this very layout in mind?
I'm not suggesting that. It's the same thing that happened on East 11th Street. On East 11th Street, at the time the C of O was issued, the building was not in compliance. Okay? At the time the C of O was issued, and yet, there wasn't a revocation, there was, there was, there was a, it was deemed to be correctable error.
No, no, no. So just to correct this for the record, because we're on tape, right? The East 11th Street case was about two buildings on one zoning lot. The building at the rear was the building in question. The building at the rear was not complying, not performing, it was a mess, right? And the board decided that the only solution was to revoke the C O as to that structure, right? As to the front building, the only thing that needed to be corrected in the front building was the form of an exit passageway. And that was it. And the board decided that because the exit passageway was such a minor correction, that the C of O in a building occupied, otherwise fully compliant, should remain. And by removing the back building, it brought into compliance other issues on the front building. So the removal of the back building actually cured problems in the front building. And that was what the board decided. It wasn't that, it granted, it didn't revoke the C of O of the offending structure. It actually revoked the C of O of the offending structure. So these are not comparable, and as I said yesterday, you can't have a partial revocation in one building on the, on part of a floor. All the egress, all the systems, everything are shared by floor, on a given floor.
So for the record, then, since we are trying to make the record accurate, for the record, on East 11th Street, the rear units of the front building were also not in compliance. Those were units that were supposed to be community facility medical offices, okay? And not residential, but they were found to be residential. So it's incorrect to say that only the back building was involved. The front building also was involved in that, in that case.
The front building, those units would have been cured with the removal of the back building because then you had a legal 30-foot rear yard.
But there's no necessity to remove the back building. It could have been cured.
The assumption by the board was the back building would be removed.
But it didn't have to be removed, it could have been cured.
That was not the assumption. But anyway, it's not before us now, so.
So now you also. You also say that you can't do a partial revocation because egress and other systems are affected. I don't see that. If you're going to, if you would limit the revocation to the back units, all that means is that the back units cannot lawfully be occupied as a use group two occupancy. It doesn't physically change the building.
When a C of O is issued, it needs, the building needs to comply with fire codes and other codes. If the, if the fire code compliance is relying on the same corridor, on the, on systems running through the building, for instance, sprinkler systems that are tied together, fire alarm systems that are tied together, they tie on a per-floor basis. So you can't have a revocation where you have egress through a shared corridor, or you have systems through the shared floor. It's one thing if it would be, you know, part of the building, so let's just say there's a hotel on the lower floor, and residences on the upper floor, and no C of O is granted for the hotel portion, which is, which is treated as an isolated unit, where the residential portion is complying with all codes independently and can maintain a C of O, whereas that hotel portion still hasn't accomplished whatever it's supposed to have. So, you know, I just don't think that.
Well, none of those systems need, none of those systems need be changed in revoking the occupancy of the units that don't have the required light and, legal light and air. None of those systems have to change. So I don't, I don't understand the rationale behind your point.
I'm reminded that on 11th Street, you actually wanted a full revocation of the C of O. So, and we decided not to fully revoke the C of O because we thought it was unreasonable to do so with respect to the front building. So this is you arguing against interest on the last case.
No, I didn't argue that. Somebody else may have, but I did not.
Okay.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, anything else?
I just have one note. I mentioned this back in, during the hearing of that case before, regarding the work that's going on inside the units. During the site visit, we've noticed that there are additional mise en lines and additional work is done inside. And I believe I mentioned this before, since the engineer has looked at the building, I hope you get into the units, you looked into the units. I believe the work is being done at that time, is increasing the life loads on the building frame, and this could cause over-stressing in the building frame. So I hope this has been looked at by the engineer or by the D O B. This is a public, public safety issue, that's why I'm raising this. You don't have to respond to.
This is, our engineer always alerts the applicant to any kind of safety issues. This is really a public service, I would have to say. And I just want to say something else for the record, because you, Mr. Mitzenner, you made a submission on Friday that we only saw yesterday after the review session. You made a comment that, that we had said you had plenty of time to correct the errors, and that you complained that how could we have had enough time that was only between the two hearings? I want, this is in a certain way for the, if this were to go further, if there were a challenge on this, I want to reiterate, because people may not remember, but this was, originally came, was set for hearing in July, and the owner postponed that hearing, and it wasn't heard for the first time until October. October was the beginning of the winter, and we had testimony from tenants, which we actually didn't know about until tenants came, who showed us photographs of their apartments with ice on the window sills on the inside of their apartments, because the apartments had gotten so cold that they're, that the interiors of the apartments were freezing. And so we saw, there we were in October, and that's why we set the next hearing for November. This was an urgent situation that needed to be decided by the board. When I was talking about, when I was talking about the owner having had plenty of time to cure, it was from the time that, for one, the C of O, from the time that the drawings were first drawn and the C of O was approved, and then going forward from the time that D O B issued its intent to revoke, the owner had plenty of time to cure error and chose not to. And so it's, and all the way up until, and made no movement between our hearing and the next hearing to say, we've got a way to cure. I don't know that it changes anything, but that, I just want to put that into perspective. That the, that the, the fact is, nonetheless, the drawings and the reality don't match. And, but, there was also no efforts on the part of the owner other than to argue that the multiple dwelling law does not apply in New York State to a multiple dwelling, which is a really kind of odd route to take. Okay, so I just want to finish with that. Do we?
Can we just, just to, just to address that, because you did raise it. I didn't think we'd get into it, but since you've raised the issue, I would point out that this is a matter before the Loaf Board. And we have done, and we have filed, we had to file the Loaf Board. The tenants have been obstructionist. They have put us through hell in trying to get anything we submit to the Loaf Board through the process. So it's unfair to impose upon the owner, the owners, of not having things done. Okay? It's the Loaf Board process, as you have recognized in the past, can be an onerous one. And as we cautioned this board before you revoked the C of O, that the revocation of the C of O will only encourage the tenants to be more obstructionist. CFO will only encourage the tenants to be more obstructionist because once the CFO was revoked, their obligation to pay rent no longer exists.
I'm pretty sure that was a subject of a long discussion by the board, actually.
It was.
Were there any other questions?
I do want to restate, I do believe that there has been new evidence submitted during this re-argument that I don't think is properly before the board. And that was my statement that I was trying to impose earlier. I don't believe that we're permitted to hear that much of this. And that includes the testimony of the structural engineer. That is stuff that is not properly before the board, nor when they had the opportunity, was in place before the board.
Right. And I agree with that, but I do want to say, but had it been, we would have come to the same conclusion because, again, I defer to the Department of Buildings to determine what's the required setback and how that would need to be handled now. Because the option isn't simply to go back and match the drawings as were originally filed. Now DOB reviews and audits and looks at drawings. That's just the process. You don't do it the first time, you do it a different way the second time, or you do it however DOB's, I mean, there have been two building codes issued since then, et cetera, et cetera, right? So, okay, I think...
Testify.
Are there, does DOB testify on this? No. Do you want to speak on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Benjamin Hillroyd for DOB, Madam Chair, members of the board. I rise very briefly to reiterate several arguments that we made in our original application and to respond to the appellant's application for reargument. A lot of discussion was made today regarding docs three and four, job number 301016898, which was attached as exhibits F and G to our original submission. If you look at these plans, excuse me, at the PW1, it suggests that plans did not accompany these filings. The audit to which the appellant referred earlier pointed to the lack of controlled inspections and the lack of plans. If you look at section 24 of the PAA that was submitted as doc number three, it mentions that it's submitted to address audit objections and add controlled inspections. Yet in section seven of that PW1, it states that there are no accompanying drawings. Secondly, speaking to the question about the modification work that would be needed here in order for the building to comply with MDL, as the chair has pointed out, this could potentially satisfy the MDL if it were submitted prospectively, but it doesn't certainly address or comport with the already submitted plans. That's really all I have to say. If you have any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for DOB? No? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other speakers on this? No? Okay. Okay, so then I would, Mr. Mitzenner, would you like to just wrap up or anything? You don't need to.
My wrap-up is very simple. We have the condition at the building that we believe constitutes correctable error that we had suggested, that the board has agreed, save for the rear wall of the building, that it is correctable error. And as to the rear wall of the building, I think we've demonstrated, and although Commissioner Chibetta says it's not probably before the board, the notion that there may have been a misapprehension of facts is before the board. And this board came to the conclusion that substantial construction work was required without the proper foundation, without any knowledge or indication of how the building is constructed and how it would be cured. And so I believe that fact is a misapprehension because the board did not have sufficient evidence to counter that conclusion. And on that basis, I believe we're entitled to a reargument. Should we, reargument be granted, then we can bring in the evidence that you spoke about.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Calmone?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaba?
Aye.
Commissioner Chibetta?
Aye.
And just to set this for decision for the next hearing.
Okay, so it'll be decided May 21st.
Okay.
Decision items, item number 277176VC, 375 Pearl Street, Manhattan.
Is there anyone for this one? Don't really need to sign in, it's just a decision.
Oh, sorry. I can see Ross.
I mean, don't need to swear and decide.
Sure.
Okay. So I don't think we had...
Ross?
Just say your name.
Oh, the podium.
The podium's about to fall, sorry. Apologies for the state of affairs.
Talk about camp.
Okay. Okay, I don't think there's actually anything more to discuss here, so I'd just like to make a motion...
It's closed.
To, it's already closed, right? A motion to grant.
Chair Calmone?
No.
Vice Chair Chanda?
No.
Commissioner Lawton Brown?
No.
Commissioner Shaba?
No.
Commissioner Chibetta?
No.
It's denied.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Decision hearing items, item number three, 12693VC, 125 East 233rd Street, The Bronx.
This was administratively adjourned. I don't know if there's anyone here for this. No?
No.
Okay, so administratively adjourned. What do we have?
How much time do you want to give?
Was there a submission made on this, and was it late?
So the submission was made, it was late, but I told them they might just submit everything now for the next hearing.
Okay, so they didn't submit yet, but you told them to submit?
They submitted.
Oh, they did submit?
This week. They submitted thinking they could still be heard today.
Oh, okay.
And I told them that was not acceptable.
Okay.
So they're on time for next time.
Okay, and did you have, well, this is, you give them a chance, you a chance to check whether the submission's complete?
Right, I told them I would review and let them know.
Okay, okay, so then... So then we could maybe put it on for June 4?
Sure.
This one doesn't have, yeah.
And that would also give them till May 15th to do any corrections?
That's...
Okay, so if you could quickly look to see if it's a complete submission? Great. So adjourned to June 4th with a submission date of May 15th.
Item number four, 6213, this is 6213VC, 2703 East Tremont Avenue, The Bronx. Raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to board member questions.
Please sign in.
Good morning, Frank Noriega from Shell Nobel PC on behalf of the applicant. We forwarded on the comments from yesterday's meeting to the applicant, and they have agreed to put in the bumpers and pickets that they need to do, but they have not done that yet, and they will need some time to do that.
Okay.
I believe there were some questions about some signage and some calculations that the architects are going to need to work on. Unfortunately, we're unable to make it today to answer any questions. And I believe we need to also verify some plantings, making sure that they match the landscaping plan. All those things we agree to address, but we will need a few weeks to do so.
Okay, that's fine. So, sounds like about six weeks to do the work? Get the bumpers and...
They were thinking at least three to four, but if six weeks is the earliest, we'll take whatever we can.
I think six weeks gives you a little bit of time to shop little pickets and to shop your favorite bumpers.
Price compare.
And I'll look at those.
Exactly.
Yeah, I just...
Oh, and to do this?
Oh, yes. Yeah, so the signage plan that was submitted, and I appreciate, you know, you responding back, but it still doesn't meet what we are looking for. There are two things that needs to be submitted. One is the revised sign chart. That still is not by each street frontages, so that needs to be indicated. The plan that has been submitted, it shows plus or minus, the dimensions are shown as plus or minus 11 feet. It has to be exact.
So you want an exact measurement?
Or at least you can say the total shall not exceed 40 square feet if you want to be very clear about that.
You want to overestimate it?
And the sign three, we don't have any, I mean, the dimension is provided, but we don't know what the actual dimension of the sign is, so all of those need to be...
And it's not in compliance because it's an illuminated sign in excess of 50 square feet...
Right.
On a frontage, so that's major.
So you're saying it's illuminated on the frontage? I will verify that.
If I just may make a suggestion for the architect, so, right, break down the, identify what the requirements are under the C1, because that's what's guiding here, and provide a breakdown per frontage, both for illuminated and non-illuminated.
Sounds good.
Sorry, is he guys in the back?
Sorry, stop. Your voices carry really well. Thank you. It's a gift, yeah.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
No, I think it's, we will definitely take that into account and look at the three frontages, illuminated, non-illuminated separately, and we'll look at the maximum...
Yeah, so it's not cumulative, it has to be per frontage.
Definitely.
Okay. So, all right, so the biggest problem is if the illuminated sign is in excess of 50 square feet, it's not allowed. You have to remove it and replace it, right?
We will, yeah, we'll have to figure out how to address that if that is the case. We'll have the architect verify that.
Okay, so that's why, I don't even know if six weeks is enough to fabricate a sign. It is certainly enough to take a sign down, right? And so the sign that goes up needs to comply with the drawings, right? Okay. So, all right, so let's do a six-week submission.
Six weeks? I think that, one, two, three, four, five, six. That's seven weeks is June 26th, which puts you on the July 16th hearing.
For 23rd.
So there's a June 26th submission?
Submission for July 16th hearing.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Ah, her future, okay.
June 16th.
Okay.
July 16th.
July 16th.
Item number, oh, item number five, 163 to 165 14A, 502 504 506 Canal Street, Manhattan.
Good morning. My name is Jimmy Shahibah, I'm counsel for Ponti Equities, and I was able to listen to the executive, public hearing yesterday. And as you reiterated there, there has been no substantial change to the certificate of occupancy. As you are aware, there was some confusion initially with this where the folder with regards to resolving the audits was misplaced, and now it seems to have been located and been reassigned to a plan examiner.
So they have located, or they recreated it?
I believe they located it. What had happened was it was sent down from the SCT unit to the plan examiner, and I guess it was either not marked correctly. But now my understanding is it's located and it's been assigned to a plan examiner. And we have our consultant was in the department yesterday and is going back today to try to obtain an appointment. And, you know, as soon as we get that information, I can make you all aware of that.
Okay, but this is really just about amending the CIO, right? Is that, what the, what's the work that actually has to be done with DOB?
So there were some audits, and we had to correct those audits and resolve the all two application. And I believe that's what needs to be done to get the CIO.
Oh, okay. All right. So, and then you heard my comments that for the next time, how much time do you think you, are there any speakers on this one?
No.
For the next time, and it depends on how much time you need, I would like to see updated versions of the tenant's affidavits because it will be almost a year since your initial submission, and your flood insurance actually will have expired by then. So you need to renew. I'm assuming they've already gotten a notification on their insurance.
Correct. My understanding is that we should be receiving declarations for the insurance this week. The, with respect to the tenant affidavits, I just, that might take a little time just to coordinate with them and have them, you know, draft that, sign it, et cetera. But that shouldn't be a problem. I would say, you know, maybe a few, four weeks, something like that.
Okay, we can give you more. No, we can give you, yeah, we'll give you more. Actually, I think it's a good idea to put this in towards the end of the summer just because that allows for some of our worst flood actions to occur.
Right. I believe you still require to maintain that law, right?
Yes.
Actions and, because it shields us and stuff.
Exactly, that's a requirement of the grant, yes.
Yeah, okay, so that way we can get, yeah, an accurate representation of how we're doing this summer, right, usually. The torrential downpours are usually in July.
Yeah. Hurricane season.
And August, okay.
That's when I usually receive the watches.
Yes, exactly. I'm used to now...
We've been, we've been pretty calm lately, so...
And also, that might give you some time to really finish up with DOB, right? So maybe put this on for either late August or early September.
So we have August 13th and then May of September 10th for hearings.
Yeah.
Just look at...
August 13th.
What'd you say?
He said August 13th.
Yeah, no, because we need to fill up that calendar. Okay, let's say August 13th, hopefully that's enough.
That would be a submission July 24th.
And of course, if there are any flood events in between July 24 and August 13th, those need to be recorded, right? So bring us up to date in case there's a change.
So July 24th submission, August 13th hearing.
Yeah, right.
And just, so I'm...
The submission is of the flood insurance and of the affidavits.
And the need proof of escrow?
Yes, proof of escrow. But obviously, if subsequent to the submission date you have DOB updates, great. And if there's, as I said, any intense water events, then update those as well.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number six, 31673VC, 310268 Street, Queens. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
This is the one we got the community board?
Community board, yeah. They said they had no objections, they were a good neighbor.
Good morning, Kyra Rothkug. Yeah, that was going to be my first item, is that not only did we get unanimous approval from the community board, but the community board loves this gas station. They love the maintenance of the site. I think what they really love is that they have the cheapest prices around, and it's a very busy station. Because I've never really been to a community board meeting before where the public actually comes out and speaks in favor gloriously about a gasoline service station.
It's actually funny to use the word love in gas stations.
Same sentence.
So we're very pleased about that. With regard to, you know, we have a very unique site. I mean, the site's been there for 50 years, 40 or 50 years as a gas station. It actually predates the seven-story apartment building next door to us. It's a very small site. We don't really have room for any feasible type of landscaping, but what we did agree to, and what we do provide, is we provide planters on the pump islands, which...
Aren't shown on your drawings.
All right, we'll put that on the drawings. Additionally, we have a kiosk building. It's smaller than a one, it's smaller than a studio apartment. It doesn't allow for people who enter the building. All sales are done through a window. They only have a couple of sundry items. So, there's not even really a need for a dumpster, and we don't really have room to do a dumpster enclosure. I mean, I'm checking the zoning, but we could get away at that site with just a garbage can, for instance, because there's no, we're in sales, this isn't a large convenience store with accessory parking.
Well, so this is something I don't know, and I'm thinking like, why would you have a dumpster if you don't need one because they're expensive and it's very expensive to have the haulers come? And all I can think of is because it's a gas station and you're disposing of flammables, it needs... it needs to be in a metal container. So, um, maybe, I'm not sure that you can make that offer unless there's new, you know, dumpsters are of course this really ancient thing. Maybe today there are smaller containers that comply with that requirement, but I'm, I'm guessing that's the reason, because they're really heavy gauge.
I, I mean, the, the dumpster at this location is extremely small, but also it doesn't face any residences. It faces, uh, basically the service road for the BQE, so it's a, it's hardly even noticeable to, to the surrounding neighborhood, uh.
Yeah. I mean, you put it next to some, well, it seems like it sort of depends on the day, because there is that piece of property that is owned by the state, but not, it seems like it's not all used by anyone. I mean, so I see sometimes the dumpster is in there.
It's, it's not, technically, it's not really allowed to, to, to be there.
Yeah.
But we really don't have the, the room to build a fancy enclosure, but I, I am exploring whether we can sort of remove the dumpster and maybe just have a, a, a large garbage can that would be chained to the bollard in front of the building, on the side of the building.
The bollard on the side of the build, which side?
On the side facing the service road.
Oh. Um, hmm. But that's in front of your air pump, right?
Well, it would be located, you know, sort of on the side of the air pump.
Mm-hmm. So, I don't know how people feel, but it was, at least it's away from the residents, right?
It's, it's not, yes, it's not, it's, you, you wouldn't, no residents would, are even able through their window or views to even see, see the dumpster.
And, um, and there's no food sold at this little kiosk?
There's no, there's no food sold. They sell some candy, sundry items, they also sell like a can of, uh, motor oil or whatever, but it's all done through a window.
Right. So, okay, so, so my, okay, I don't know how, I'm, I'm kind of okay with this because of the location. Just to understand though, are there a lot of pedestrians who walk by to go under the underpass?
Not that I'm aware of. This is all, this is all automobile related.
Yeah. This is not a heavily walked pedestrian street.
Okay. Because the other thing I think of is rodents, who are chasing after that one old candy bar. Which is another reason why dumpsters are so great, because it's so heavy to lift, probably a rat can figure it out, because they can figure out anything.
If there's a hole in the dumpster, because it's so heavy.
If there's a hole in it, but even with the top, the tops are really heavy, but there's always that teeny little thing. I know mice can get through, I don't know about rats.
No backbone.
Yeah. Mice can squish their little heads right down.
Because there's no backbone.
I know a lot about the subject. Okay. So, all right, so, um, so then you want to go on with the other issues?
Sure. Uh, there, there was a comment yesterday about the, the, the pipes, the venting pipes, which are located on the side of the lot, adjacent to the apartment building. So a couple of things. Uh, venting pipes, according to, uh, the fire department and building department, they have to be a minimum of fifteen feet in height, and they have to be at least, uh, ten feet, located ten feet away from, uh, an opening, an opening of an adjacent building, which , which ours are. Venting pipes don't vent, they don't emit, uh, gas fumes. Venting pipes suck in air when the pumps are being used. So, so there is no, there is no venting of, of, of gas or fumes or emissions, uh, that occur, uh, at the apartment building next door.
So their intake, they're not exhaust.
Their intake, their intake. And then when the tanks of the gas station are being filled, the trucks that come and fill the tanks have a vapor, what's called a vapor recovery system. They plug into their truck, into the tanks or whatever, so all the vapors, when tanks are being filled, are also being consumed into the truck. So there's nothing, there's nothing being vented, uh, to the apartment building next door. Um, additionally, we have, we have permits, you know, we have no violations on our site, everything is permitted. Um, you know, I saw a note from the fire department that they want to check their records to, to see, that, that, that's fine.
Yes.
We have no, no, no problem with that.
Okay. I, I, I want to just go back to the subject of planting along the residential boundary. Um, when I look at the drawings and I, you don't have a maneuverability diagram, so I can't really tell what the impact would be. Oh, there is, sorry, but it's one of those maneuverability ones where it's just a line width of a car, so you can't really see how close the car would get or how the site is used.
Okay.
So, um, what I'm curious about is why can't that area where the guardrail is have planters, have a in bed, in-ground planting?
I'll, I'll, I'll address that.
Okay.
It'd be nice if the building next door didn't pile up garbage in that, that area, by the way. That's, that's where they put out their garbage, so, on any given day between, uh, I, I mean, we're good, because we have a fence, we have an opaque fence, uh, to the, the building next door, but they use that, that area to, uh, put out, put out all their bags of garbage.
So it's a double assault on those people.
Yes, it's, 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 it's actually, it's an assault on the gas station.
Oh. That's odd.
We're just trying to protect you.
Um, we have a rooftop, a rooftop air conditioner. It's all approved by the fire department. Again, it's only for a building that's roughly a hundred and thirty square feet, I'm sorry, three hundred and thirty square feet, and quite frankly, you couldn't hear any, any noise from the, uh, air conditioning unit above, because it's right adjacent to the BQE.
Yes, the ambient, that's right.
And, and, and also, we are, you know, we're, we're not at the frontage of the building, we're at the side of the building and behind the building, so we're, we're not really located that close to the adjacent apartment building. And again, there are no complaints from the community board about, uh.
Or the neighbors that you know of?
No complaints at all. Uh, we'll provide a.
I note with respect to that, that you can really barely see the unit, so it means that the little parapet wall of the kiosk is probably a sound absorptive material, because otherwise, a lot of the times we'll see units there on dunage beams on top of the parapet, and they're standing right there, right? So there's no sound block, but here, it actually, because you can't see it, um, it looks like the parapet wall is blocking it.
And it, and it was.
There's a little vent there, but it looks like it's actually mounted much lower, maybe directly on the roof, which, it's probably not very heavy, so.
Yeah, for a three hun-
Three hundred square feet.
Madam Chair, we typically see.
Right, you could just use an air conditioner in the window.
We typically see much larger convenience stores that have food prep and, and other, uh.
Right.
Yeah. Um, and we're happy, we'll, we'll provide a sign elevation drawing and a illumination, illumination plan to the board.
Okay.
And you'll break out the signage by frontage?
We'll, we'll break out the signage, sure.
Could you though, with those vent pipes that you just showed, little circles, this is for future use, indicate what they are, that they're not actually vents, they're, they're intake, air intake?
Yes, and then, you know, we'll, we're happy to dimension the distance between the, the building.
That'll be helpful.
To, to show that it meets, uh, meets our building department requirements.
Okay, great. All right, so we did have comments from the fire department, so we do also, in addition, need to wait for their.
That's fine.
Finished review, and we need the lumen spread diagram.
Yeah, no.
Because, yes. So, because we see some lights mounted right on the canopy, that arguably.
Sure, but, and you also see that the lights, from the photos, that the lights on the canopies are pointed down.
Yes.
Down and away from the, uh, apartment building.
And I think there are two pole lights on the corners, on that shared property line, so that's where the AC is going to be a little bit out. Yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm. You're just seeing it top a little bit, but I don't think that's the noisy part, okay. Um, and then there were vending machines. I don't know if they're there, they're in the satellite imagery, you see the vending machine.
So that's, that's it. I mean, you know, we, three weeks.
Okay. Um, speakers. I just want to run a, yeah, are there any speakers on this? Okay.
Three weeks, three weeks, three weeks. Okay. Um, submission on June twenty-sixth for July sixteenth hearing.
With the summer gone.
I know.
Thank you very much.
You didn't even have it yet.
Thank you.
Item number seven, three oh three dash twelve BZ, eleven oh six, eleven oh eight, Utica Avenue, Brooklyn. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and two feet? Respond to city board member questions.
Did you call that, you called item?
Yes.
Say that again? I, I, you know.
Thank you. Thank you.
Take a fine wine.
I mean, uh.
Elise Foladere from Eric Palatnik P.C. on behalf of the applicant. I passed out DOB-approved plans. I didn't give you all forty-six pages, I gave you the highlights. Um, but firstly, I would like to say that in terms of the lender situation, um, they expect a commitment letter within the next week, but they still haven't heard that from the lender, they're still in discussions. So it's a little bit hard for me to give you a timeline, but they're dedicated to making this happen, they're working with a lender right now, and they're on their way, and they want this project to happen.
Are we talking about an initial commitment letter?
Um, they said a commitment letter from the lender, so I guess they haven't.
Gotten through the full application?
So, and she noticed that that was the one thing they were missing.
Yeah, because they have, they have all the DOB approvals, they just haven't, they haven't for a while, so obviously they've been searching for, it's probable that the bank needs to see that there's a certain amount of donations in place before the bank will, you know, that's how they, it's almost like a collateral situation.
Um, and these DOB-approved plans are from two thousand seventeen, I know it's two thousand nineteen, but they're from the end, and we're still kind of in the beginning.
Right. Um, then it was approved in seventeen, so it postdates the change in the building code so that you wouldn't need to go back and.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, right, so that's the thing, and obviously they might need to be updated for DOB, will allow you to pull permit today.
Okay. I hope that doesn't happen.
Yeah.
Um, with the, the restrictive declaration and the operative lease, because there's really nothing built yet, they haven't completed those documents.
Right. My question was that those sites are still, um, available to provide this service?
I, the intention is yes.
And they've not been slated for some other dividend.
Okay. Uh, um, and then if we have to do another hearing, I can look into that if you.
Yeah.
Don't get all your answers, but the intention is yes. And, um, you were correct, it, the, in terms of square footage, it was supposed to have been thirty-six thousand nine hundred and seventy square feet. And, um, that's why, and I gave the DOB-approved plans to clarify about the sub-seller and the seller.
Yeah, so that's interesting. So in the sub-seller is where the community rooms and the classrooms are, and then the parking is above that.
Yes.
And then the, okay.
Yeah.
Because, yeah.
And that's why I give these plans to verify.
Yeah, thank you.
And I believe that was all the questions.
So I just want to make sure for our council's purpose, everyone understands the amount of square footage that should be shown, because we end up reiterating.
Yeah, no, we.
Right? Everybody good on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any speakers on this? Um, and we did want to see a timeline, right, that was going to be something. So you don't have a commitment letter, but maybe there's a projection on when.
It's, it's hard to give a projection until we get a let, the commitment letter is in, that's why, um, on the statement of facts, I went through all the different items they've gotten so far and the timeline for that, but it's hard for me to tell you. I can take a very wild guess.
So it wouldn't be up to you to take the guess, it's your client, right?
Well, then, yeah, until they get it signed.
Right, so, but let's just say, you know, let's say within the next six months.
Yeah.
They, they, their funding, they get their funding.
Yeah.
Right? Then, I mean, they, this was the architect they had in two thousand seventeen, is it still their architect?
And they just, they told me that they could get it all done within two years.
Okay, so they've already selected the contractor.
Um, I have to ask about that.
That's the thing, is have they set this out to bid? Bidding takes three, four months.
Yeah.
Right?
They told me they could get it done within two years, once they get the lender.
This is the part I'm having trouble with, it's quite a large building.
Okay.
Um, so, um, I don't know, what's our maximum that we're allowed?
Four years.
Four years.
Four years. So the two years is the part where I'm not so believing it. It's a fairly large building, large buildings usually say eighteen months on a good day you build, right? You don't even have the funding in place yet, so giving you time for funding.
Yeah.
As far as I can tell, the job wasn't bid yet, normally you don't bid, bid a job until you know you can pay the contractor.
Definitely.
Right? That takes three, four months, and then there's negotiations and all that, so you're almost a year and you didn't even hit, you didn't even put a shovel in the ground.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So I would say you need to go back to your client, hopefully has like a project manager or somebody who's knowledgeable about construction involved with them, and, and get a real timeline, because not two years.
The intention is to ask for four years to make sure we don't have to go back.
Okay, okay. So, all right, so, but could you do that so that we can get a good sense?
Okay.
Well, the.
Yeah.
I'm saying the board could make that at its discretion.
Right, that's true. But I think we still needed.
We still, the parking was still an issue.
Yeah.
Right, we still had open items.
Yeah.
If we didn't have open items, then we could do this maybe normally, right? But we did, we do have open items there for a timeline that really, that looks realistically at doing the job.
And to update the request to ask for the four years.
Say again?
I think it's already asked, sorry.
Got it, okay.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Because there's so many unknowns.
Yeah. Okay, so no speakers on this, I already asked speakers? Okay, no speaker. All right, so then, um, as soon as you can do this.
Okay. You want clarification on the item?
We need to know that the sites are still available, right? And so we need some kind of letter or something from those properties, right?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, it's gonna take, I don't know, they need four years.
Okay. Um, so for continued, we have twenty on for June fourth.
Okay.
Fifteen. Could you submit by May fifteenth? That's next, next Wednesday?
I have one more.
So you either have May fifteenth, or you have like six more weeks.
Well, how about this? We give her less, we take less time, because it's not a lot for us to review, right?
Yeah. So give her a different, okay.
Instead of three weeks, two weeks. Instead of three weeks, two weeks.
Yeah, 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 okay.
So instead of May 15.
Oh, what about May 20? Okay, so May 22nd for June 4? May 25th. Sure, sure, sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Good. Thanks.
Item number eight, 11814BZ, 1891 Richmond Road, Stanton Island.
You could just, uh.
Don't lift the top. Just push.
Fix it.
No, no. Oh, that's another approach. Wait, but maybe that's a good approach, what he's doing.
Yes, it is.
In front of the lips.
No, but then it's going to tip back to you.
Slip back to you.
Right? Yeah. Okay.
But everyone pushes, everyone pushes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but then you're going to lean, and it's going to fall in.
I don't know. I think Phil might ask something, but all right.
Good morning, Philip L. Rampoula for the applicant.
Raise your right hand, please, Mr. Rampoula. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board in response to the board member questions?
Right. Okay, Philip L. Rampoula for the applicant. At review session, you were asking for the reason that we have not started construction. The reason we haven't started construction is as follows. We have prepared the architectural drawings, the structural drawings are complete, mechanical drawings are complete, sprinkler plans are complete. The only plans that are not complete is for the retaining wall along the rear of the property. It's Building Department policy that they don't want a retaining wall filed as a separate application. They want it as part of the, of the new buil, new building application, as like an 03 or an 04 document. We were prepared to go in and get everything that we have approved, but were told that we couldn't until the retaining wall drawings were completed. So we were tasked with designing the retaining wall, and we have done additional test pits over the past four or five months to work out different systems for that retaining wall. The type of retaining wall has finally been chosen, and it's with a structural engineer, and it's being drawn. I am told that he needs another few weeks to complete his drawings, to give it to us to go to, to go to DOB. So with, with me having to get through the Building Department and then starting construction, I'm thinking that it's going to take a year and a half for this type of construction. It's going to take him at least three to four months to put up the retaining wall. We're asking for three or four years for continuance in order to get the C of O.
The one and a half years is for, they get to where? Just to start construction?
No, to start construction. He's, he's funded. He's, he's okay.
Yeah, so that's what, so I just need to go back at you. So you need to complete the drawings, submit the drawings, get them approved by DOB, pull your permits. That much takes how much time?
That's going to take four months, five months.
Okay. So, and so in four months, or let's say five months, then you start construction?
I'm thinking a year and a half for construction.
Oh, okay. Plus the year and a half, okay.
And if anything goes wrong, or we have a hard winter.
Right. So that's already two, yeah, all right, so that makes sense. Any other questions? Oh, you said that other agency approvals were received, right?
Yes, yes.
So you, you actually didn't submit them into the record, but.
I put them in my fax as to what the dates were and what, and what was.
Yeah, that much we have.
And I'm required to send it to you before we start construction.
Okay. Okay. I don't know that we need them in our record now, but if you have them, you might as well send them.
I can send them.
Okay. So, but I don't, we don't need them in the record for this decision. It's just if you have them, send them, so we don't need to figure it out later. It's in our minds now and.
Understood.
Okay. All right, then. Are there any speakers on this? Any other comments, any issues? All right, so I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair pro-moder?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Shotley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
So I'd like to make a motion to grant for a term of four years. Chair pro-moder?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Shotley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabetta?
Aye.
Thank you very, very much.
Appeals counted, a continued hearing. Items, item number nine, 201823A, 201824A, 2931 Herbert Street, Stanton Island.
Good morning, Todd Dale for the applicant. So at review session, I know there were certain questions raised, and hopefully we can address them and respond to those now. But the first point to speak to is, I mean, the, one of the key points that was raised in previous hearing was the concerns raised by the board and the fire department regarding the width of Herbert Street closer to Saginaw to the west of our subject lot. After the last hearing, we went and we spoke to the principals who were involved, who were in the ownership entity of this lot, discussed it with them, and they agreed to the improvement, to increase the width proportion that's not in front of the subject buildings. In our most recent submission, we set forth a proposed condition with respect to the improvement, and the thought was is that should the board be satisfied with the other options, that could be granted on condition that no certificate of occupancy could, should, could be issued for the two buildings, Lot 104 and 105, until the improvement was complete pursuant to DOB and DOT standards. Now, I know there was some discussion about no plans being presented, and I would just respond to that and a couple of things are practical issues with that. First, spoke to the engineers and architects, and they said to get an approved builder's pavement plan, it would take like six to nine months. So.
Right, but we didn't say it needs to be approved. You just need plans that we can refer to and.
Then the other concern with that particular issue is that, one of the things we want to avoid is that, they also told me that when they prepare these BPPs, there's often, and it's likely, that DOB or DOT requests changes. So the concern is, is that if we presented a plan of some sort to the board, that it's not going to satisfy what DOB or DOT want, and then we run into a situation where we're needing to get approval from the board, or running into a letter of substantial compliance, and those are issues that just extend this even further. So the condition that we set forth, I think, covers the board's concerns and the fire department's concerns, and provides a little flexibility and allows this to run concurrent, because the fact is that doing this improvement is a significant extra time and cost. And, you know, this application has been going on for a while, and by setting forth the condition, it would, you know, create a situation where this developer, you know, again, should the applications be granted, could pursue that concurrently with what's happening here. So, you know, we understand, but we just think that at this point, you know, preparing these plans becomes, it creates a potential minefield as far as going back and forth between agencies, and, you know, we would agree to the condition saying that the northern portion would be improved. You know, there's every expectation that DOT, based on the approval, approved BPP for our sites and approved BPP to the east of our sites, is going to continue on with an even sidewalk. So, you know, I understand what's being raised, but I, I hope the board understands the issues we're dealing with here too, as far as the time, so.
Right, I, I understand, and at the same time, and you know, we've been going through this for a long time, and the reason we've had a lot of hearings is because we've been struggling with this one subject, right? And I'm happy to hear that finally, with fire department finally saying, and they're the ones who have to drive down that road, saying, no, you have to do it, right? Finally, the owner relents, right? How, so what I would have to say is, a condition, as we know, we put conditions in many of our resolutions. And then the, the property owner completely ignores them and moves along, right? And so the only way that we can enforce a condition, or let's say, we can ensure that DOB is aware and the owner is aware, is with a cloud on title. So it's called a restrictive declaration, where the owner commits to doing this thing, and attached to it would be a sketch, and we would say substantially complying with the sketch. So that doesn't mean that there can't be changes made in the builder's pavement plan. It means that the goal is for the roadway to meet the requirements of the fire department, which is 34, sorry, 32.2 curb-to-curb minimum distance, right? That's not, doesn't sound like that's negotiable. So as long as you get the 32.2 minimum distance, how it's configured based on DOT's further builder's pavement plan, and as long as you've got a sidewalk continuity, there you go.
I understand what you're saying, but I find it surprising that if the board, I understand that certain conditions are issues, but in this instance, if the board specifically puts in BSA resolution, okay, should it be granted, it says no certificate of occupancy can be granted unless the northern portion of Herbert Street has been improved to the satisfaction of DOB and DOT, there's no way we're going to get a certificate of occupancy. So this is an issue of a restrictive declaration.
Yeah, sorry. I beg to differ, because we've seen lots of projects approved where it says no C of O, or no any, or no whatever, unconditioned that, and the C of O gets issued, or the property owner completely ignores all the instructions. So the only thing that I can think of that is a little more forceful is a restrictive declaration, so lenders are put on notice. Everyone is put on notice that this work has to be done. And if you want to keep fighting about it, then the hearing will keep going, but it's a lot easier if you just agree to this very simple thing. It's a simple restrictive declaration.
It's.
With a little sketch attached to it, which is recorded against property one and property 10, whatever those numbers are, 104 and 105. And there we go.
I understand what you're saying, but you say it's simple, but it's not necessarily simple, because no plans have been drafted, so it's a costly expense to retain a professional, to draft these plans, to go forward, to go with this, above and beyond. Another thing too, I would point out about the fire department letter, even though we understand the concerns that are raised, I think it's important to note the contradiction in the fire department letter, that they note in their letter that they already approved the development to the east of our site. It was approved in June 2018 with the existing width of Herbert Street at Saginaw Avenue, because that's the only way they can reach those sites. So if the development to our east already received a fire department approval, and all of a sudden, the fire department is changing their position with respect to these buildings.
No, no difference, sir. Excuse me. Your, your client owns the property that is the subject of the widening, right? So it's different when you're talking about properties down the street, and I can't speak to those approvals, because I don't believe they came here, and this might have been in the day when DOB was approving. However, the fact is, the reason this came up is because your client is the developer and owner of future lots 105, 104, and 105, currently known as Lot One, and this is affecting Lot One. So it makes it a possibility for your client, owner of Lot One, to make this enlargement, and needs to do it, and I don't want to have an argument about the same.
And I would clarify that, though. Our client is actually the owner of Lot 104 and 105. There's an entity that has multiple principals, and we represent the principal that's going to be owning Lot 104 and 105. Lot One, and the reason this, we went back and had to speak to him, it's a different principal that's going to be responsible for Lot One, who has agreed now to this condition to develop further. And I would say that very, as we said before, very clearly, the specific lots and buildings that are before this board are the two buildings here in Lot Lot One. But back to the fire department issue, it's not a situation, what you're speaking to as far as the ownership, is irrelevant to the point that the fire department issued an approval in June 2018 for the buildings to the east of our site. That's, that's a fact. They put it in their actual letter. And those buildings are accessed by the existing Herbert Street.
There was nothing to be done about it.
I think we heard you on this.
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing to be done about it. So I just want to say, Mr. Dale, this is whatever number hearing this is.
Sure.
We're here. We're not busy, right? So we are busy, but nonetheless, this is the fourth hearing, and I believe we talked about this in January, and in March, early March, and at the end of March, and here we are at the beginning of May, and we're talking about the same thing. So the writing on the wall is, it needs to be done. If your client wants to be able to proceed with this application, it needs to be done. Now it's reinforced by the fire department with great articula, articulation, and, and here, that's, that's it. That, that's the situation.
All right, so I understand.
And so, yes, it costs money to develop property. That's just the way it goes. The, the owner of Lot One is making money by subdividing the lot to create these two development sites. We don't know what that person's plan is for the balance of the property, but in the end, this will be better for everyone, including for the neighborhood. So really, you, you just need to do this thing.
Sure, and I, and I understand, and that's why that after we brought them, you know, with, with concern, and, because concerns were raised, we understand that. With respect to this particular issue then, I would, I mean, if the boards, I mean, I'm, I would actually request a second call on this, because I would need to reach out to them to see if they're willing. I need to speak to the owners or something like that, as far as a second call, and I understand that nothing would be resolved today.
Yes.
We need to speak to them as to.
That's fine. Okay. But before you do that, because I don't know what Mr.
Sure.
Chief Daley's schedule is today, perhaps. Chief Daley, do you want to speak to this? Because we also have the issue of the passageway that goes under the building, and I don't know. Yeah.
John Daley, Fire Department. I wanted to explain the reason why I submitted a copy of the approved plan to the lot to the east of Todd's application, but just to inform everyone that this whole block is being developed. At the rear of that, at the rear, I forgot the street name, sorry, there's an access to, to the train station over there. So just wanted to give everybody a kind of an eye, overview, idea of what was going on.
Didn't, so the ones that are, so the, the homes that are adjacent to the ones that are proposed, adjacent to the MTA, weren't they before the board, and we withdrew, they were withdrawn because they were continuation of a block that had Cs of Os, and they were residential? And that one portion was back? I think that's. I don't know without. Oh, look, oh.
I was informed by our units in fire department that their plans were approved. So again, it was just an over, to give everyone an overview of what was happening on that block. That was the reason for my submission and information.
Okay, understood.
As to respect to, you know, Todd, that the owner, it will agree to widen the, the roadway at that intersection, and we do commend the owner for agreeing, for that agreement, also provide access for the fire department for future development in the back there. With respect to the height, the opening of eight feet, we, there was a misinterpretation of the fire code, in that they thought they needed a 14-foot clearance. Really, the 14-foot clearance is on the roadway. So when they, if they were going to put a canopy over the roadway, have a grand entrance, that has to be 14 feet. So our objection, so the opening shows eight feet?
Right.
Which is acceptable by the, by the building department, so we have no issue with that.
To get to the parking area.
So, yeah, so.
Okay, I, I do have a question, though, about that.
Yes.
So car fires.
Yes.
How does, when, when parking is located behind a building?
Correct.
Where the only way you can get to it is through, through something like that, how are those fires filed?
The fire, the fire apparatus trucks have to stay on the main road, adjacent, near the fire hydrant. They would not bring the, an apparatus in to the rear yard, because in the event that if the fire were to spread into the building.
Oh.
We're going to lose the truck.
I see.
That's the last thing we need. We already pay enough taxes.
Understood, okay.
So, yeah, we would fight the, have our water supply, our engine trucks in the roadway, and we would bring our hose line to the rear of the building.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now I learned a little bit more about fire science. Okay.
Todd Dale, again, so, and just to clarify, I know we put it in the submission, but the buildings are proposed to be sprinkled, which I know is another one of the fire department conditions, and I think that outside the width, we responded, tried to respond to all the other items that were there.
Okay, good. All right. Are there any speakers on this? All right, so, a second call?
So, if you would agree to a second call, I'd like to reach out to the principals who are involved with Lot One and talk to them about what's here, and just, just we can provide a clear path for the board.
Okay.
Are you also going to expand on your hardship argument?
With respect to the hardship, we believe that what was put in the statement in the last submission clearly speaks to the fact of hardship. I mean, these lots only have frontage on Herbert Street, as we noted.
How does that make it a hardship?
Because you can't develop the lots without access to Herbert Street. The other alternatives, I would say, two points to that, that you're including in the submission. I think the first is that if you wanted us to develop those lots without using Herbert Street, we'd be required to.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying. The hardship is with relation to a mapping action. So how is this a hardship? How, if, if you don't relate it to a mapping action, then that wouldn't be satisfying with the case law states.
I would speak to the mapping action, a couple of things to that point. First, one of the clear differences here between this and some of the other mapping actions that come up, this is, this is a public street. So as far as the mapping of the public street, it would be on the city to map it.
Sorry, which is a public street?
Whereas it's a public street.
Herbert is owned by the city of New York?
Well, it's not us. It's our, Herbert is, has a CCL that's issued to it, and it's not a private street. A lot of times, we've had the discussion of as far as mapping, I know it's come up. This is not a private road, and I think that's an important distinction, a private road versus a public record street. I also think, as far as unnecessary hardship, we pointed it in here.
Well, let him finish his sentence.
I also think that one of the key points to note here with respect to unnecessary hardship is a matter of equity. There are, and I apologize for the typo, it was Block 6680, not 6681, but there are three existing homes across the street that have COs issued by the City of New York that are further east that are accessed on Herbert. There's the other buildings that have been approved further east on Herbert. And it becomes a situation where for this particular site, it creates an unnecessary hardship if you do not allow them use of this public record street as the city has allowed at least six other homes.
A mapping action may permit that in and of itself.
Sure, but then why should this particular property owner bear the burden for the mapping for all of these six other homes?
So, I want to say that that's the correct answer to the question. That if the city in the past has allowed, and that's actually GCL 36-3, that provides for if you've got this right sort of scenario. The problem is, it's a very limited scenario. I don't know why they did it like that, but anyway. So, GCL 3 requires the street to be a certain width and this and this, and Cs of O, and approvals by the BSA and so on. And so, it makes it such a tight parameter. But the fact is that when you've got a road that's been allowing access to, in this case, six other properties on the road, and in the later case, we have 100% of the properties, or let's say 99.9% of the other properties on the road, then unless we were talking about a huge lot, you know, thousands of square feet, right? But here, it's a relative, even if we just say it's Lot 1, right, all by itself, we say Lot 1, it's still not a huge lot. It's a relatively small lot. So I think that that's where the argument goes, and that browse and brock and so on, with those kinds of isolated situations, is less relevant than some of the other cases where the courts have looked at some guy's little house on the street.
I think, I agree with you entirely, but there is that one component that I'm not hearing, which is, this is a small development, and it's on, it's on a block with lots of, with a, and I think.
You said, you said.
I didn't hear, I must have missed that.
Yeah.
I'd say, like, this is a very small development here, and I would also note that the only reason we're here before the board is because of the particular requirements of the LDGMA that because this is a commercial overlay, we're required to have a mixed-use building. If that commercial district were just 50 feet shorter, and these are residential buildings, we'd be as a right. So.
What? Oh, say that one more time. That's very important.
The LDGMA says that if you have a Use 1, Use Group 1 or Use Group 2, and it's required to be located in a mixed-use building. So the reason we're proposing mixed-use buildings here is because the commercial district extends to the end of the lot. If that commercial district were 100 feet shorter or 50 feet shorter, residential buildings could be built as a right, and we would qualify for exception.
Under GCL 3.
GCL 36, Section 3.
Because it would have been a one or two-family residence.
Yeah, two-family.
On Herbert Street. That is such a good answer.
So that's why those buildings across the way were, be able to construct it as a right. And I don't know the full history of the buildings that are on the north side of Herbert, further to the east, the ones that were referenced in the letter. I believe that those applications may have been withdrawn at some point because those might be one or two families.
If it's by Herbert Street, they weren't.
I think, I think those are residential buildings also, so then they realize they didn't need the GCL approval. Because, just so you know, it was a few years ago that that exception came up because, you know, way back in the day, historically, Department of Buildings incorrectly, perhaps, didn't issue objections for GCL 36s for these homes. And then when the law was then applied in a more correct fashion, I guess, I don't know if that's the correct adjective, but in a different fashion to these applications. It was actually then, I think this Amendment 3 was two, three years ago that they added.
Yes. There was your answer, right there, and you went on for three pages, and you had a two-sentence answer.
Well, I think that, I think that was actually included in one of the submissions at one point, but, I mean, I also, we want to say, I mean, I'll just leave.
Yes, okay, that's probably best. Yes, nothing like being ahead, okay. Alright, so we're second calling on this.
So, we'll do a second call on this, and we'll reach out to the property owner about the board's request of a form of declaration and/or plan with respect to Lot 1. As I said, just, there is an ownership entity, but they have different principles, and we need to work between the different principles.
Okay, great, thank you. The second call.
New cases, item number.
Wait, 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 it's four minutes of? Should we take a break? Because it's four minutes of.
Yeah.
Want a five-minute break?
Five-minute break, okay. Taking a five-minute break. Just because I didn't know whether this is four minutes or ten. Yeah, okay.
Call it, or just.
Go back on the record. Mics on, please.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody got their mics on? Okay, recalling, item number nine, continued hearing calendar on the appeals, 2018-23, 2018-24, 8, 2931 Herbert Streets, that's all.
Todd Dale, 40 out. We spoke to the principals, and they're agreeable to recording a restrictive declaration against entirety of existing Lot 1, saying that it will be approved on the northern side of Herbert to DOB and DOT standards to a minimum width of 32.2 feet, which realistically will be 34 feet based on the other approvals, but we'll reference the 32.2.
Curb to curb.
Curb to curb.
Continuation of sidewalk.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So, we'll say, we'll include the 32.2, but just so the board knows, it'll probably be 34 because that's what currently exists.
We'll forget, so whatever is written on the document is the answer.
So, with respect to that draft declaration, we could have, our office could have that prepared by the end of the week. So I don't know what the continuation schedule is, so counsel could review and come back with any comments. And then, you know, assuming it's satisfactory at the next hearing of the board.
Okay.
It's agreeable.
I don't have Lauren's, her handy chart with me. Okay. What'd you say, so?
So we could submit, well, for our purposes, the restrictive declaration, we could get it submitted to the board by Friday.
By Friday, and then we need a little turnaround time.
Sure, so I don't know what, yeah, as I said, whatever the schedule you've. Obviously, I think everybody's interested in moving this along quicker.
Yes, and wrapping this up, yes. And I don't think there were any other open issues, right, with respect to this one? Okay, so then.
If you want to do June 4th, it's May 22nd submission? Do you want to do something later, earlier?
Four? Little. Yeah, we could do that. Does that work? May 22nd, is that enough time? We could also give a little more time because, no. So if you could, if you can get the restrictive deck in for the first draft by Friday, then there's enough time to keep turning it around, kind of, until June 4th. You know what I mean? So even if, even if the final sign-off wasn't by our counsel, wasn't until, say, Friday of before, that would be okay, right?
I mean, June 4th, we can definitely do. If there was something earlier, we could do that too, but I understand.
Yeah, there really is. So, okay, so June 4th with an immediate submission by Friday to counsel, to allow for counsel to turn around. How about that?
And that restrictive declaration. And as I said, I think everything else was.
Great, excellent.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that's the only thing we're getting, is the restrictive.
Yeah, that's the only open issue. Okay, cool, yeah.
Alrighty, new cases, item number 10, 162, 164, 15A. I would call them both in them together, 1011?
Yeah, yes.
139, 4888 Road and 88030, 3404, 4th Street, Queens. And 11, 165, 166, 15A, 88-36 and 3804, 4th Street, Queens. You can just sign it, you don't have to be sworn in.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I go to the other one? It's going to send, I got it on Friday. Oh, okay. Is there a continued hearing? Is it next week? Uh, yeah. Not now, 21st.
Good afternoon, Chair Promoter and Commissioners. Jacqueline Skurzki from Ackerman LLP for the applicant. I would like to respond to the issues raised at yesterday's review session. The first issue was to provide an update on the outstanding sewer connection. So, I spoke with our client, and he actually provided me with the form of the deed restriction for the shared common sewer connection, and not sewer, sorry, storm drain connection here. It was a long process with DEP to get to this point, but they actually have the form signed off by counsel's office, so they're going to record that. And then the next step is just to get the no-action letter from the New York Attorney General's Office. And then following that, they'll have the side connection permit and hopefully complete the work within two months, they said. Although it may take a little bit longer because they also have to reinstall a new sidewalk after they do the work.
Okay. Alright, and then there is that strange stop-work order that should be, that their expediter should fix, right? It's a stop-work order that looks like it's just this red banner that's floating on the DOB website without reason. That could cause problems for lenders or something, right?
Yes.
So they should get rid of that. And then also, we wanted an update on that ECB violation for the fence?
Yeah, so the ECB violation's from 2009, and it was issued to the prior owner. It says that it's open, but it's related to the.
This is really an expediter job both for the, for both of these things. That should be taken care of because it's a kind of a stain on the record. If your lender looks at that, that could slow up the project, right?
Okay, understood.
Okay, so, I don't, there were any other issues? No? Are there any speakers on this? Any questions from commissioners? No? Alright, so then I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chia Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nesheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
The term? Yes, that's true. We were talking about four years, right? Yeah, because they haven't started construction, it needs to be four years.
No, they have started.
I'm sorry, sorry. Oh, sorry, they're almost done. Sorry, sorry. I'm reading on one. So, the only thing that's missing is the sewer connection. So maybe two years is right, right?
Isn't two years the max?
Yeah.
Is it the max?
Is two years?
Uh, because this is a, this is common law.
This is, this is a common law is two years.
It's not statutory.
Oh.
You don't get two or two, it's two or four.
Statutory has the maximum of four.
Four, I believe. But they're asking for two anyway, and if the only thing they need is sewer connection, and they already have filed almost everything except the no-action letter they need from the HE's office, which I didn't know was the HE's office. Alright, so for a term of two years.
It'll be from today, it won't be from the date of expiration.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so for a motion to grant for two years.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chia Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nesheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Thank you.
So both cases are granted. Excuse me. Item number 12, 2018-125A, Force 95 Wald Avenue, Staten Island. This case is postponed for improper notice.
So we'll have to generate a new?
New notice, yes.
Public hearing notice?
Yes.
And so we need a minimum of 20 days. Is this one, one that we should put on?
I'm thinking this is a GCL 36. I think we could put this on for, yeah, I think we could put this one for August.
Okay. Oh, he's up for this one. Not he, not that. Okay, so the hearing will be August 6th. And we'll stop for, so we'll get a new, a new hearing notice. Yeah.
Zoning calendar, continued hearing items, item number 13, 2016-4240 VC, 1230, 130, I'm sorry, Ted, Fred, Manhattan. Use your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board? To respond, I see the board member Friday.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Herbert Gate Better.
And before you speak, I just want to add that because there were things that we didn't, I didn't refer to in yesterday's review session, and I don't think the other commissioners were aware. There had been a submission either on April 11th or May 1, depending on whether. I know it's dated April 11th, but because it didn't hit, we may, we're not sure that it was actually received, but in any event, there was.
It was hand-delivered.
Okay, so, but in any event, there was a letter from the Acoustical Consultants stating that the issues described in their 2017 report were quote "addressed." I'm not really sure what "addressed" means, but, you know, anyway. So just to update that there was a letter, because I requested a letter from the engineer, and in fact, that's the Acoustical Consultant who said that the issues were quote "addressed."
I do have copies here with me, if anybody wants.
Right, I don't know, did everyone see that submission?
I mean, it was, what happened, so you know, is it was submitted on the 11th electronically. It was submitted by hand on the 11th by my assistant. We never received a response back from submit that it was too large a file, so we never got a notice that it was kicked back to us.
The plans were too large.
The plans were too large. But we never, we never received a submit, you know, saying, this is too big, resubmit.
But did you receive a submit confirmation of receipt?
We received nothing back.
So that, so the thing is, when, when you submit, to submit, because I actually do it very often myself, right? When you submit to submit, you instantly get a response that says, thank you very much, your materials have been received, right?
Right, but so then we emailed it three different times to three different people, and nothing. We got back no kickbacks.
So that, but that's an indicator that it wasn't received. So just for future notice, know that unless you get a confirmation of receipt, it wasn't received, the system doesn't have a way of identifying in the submit response, the file is too large, right?
Right, the only reason why we did not administer the adjournment is because they had physically, so we went to the case file, and the case file had the actual submission properly issued on the timeframe.
Okay.
So we looked at that and said, okay, you did actually submit, some, something happened with the emails, or someone dropped them, whatever.
But, but it was here.
No, we know for future, in the past, we have gotten rejections. That's why this was the first time we had not gotten a rejection.
But you didn't get a confirmation, so for always look for confirmation, okay?
Well, we are well-worn, and we know how many megabytes to give in and not give in Dropbox or otherwise. But this was unquestionably timely submitted in, with the, with new plans, new diagrams, and the letter from the Acoustical Consultant, which seemed to be the only outstanding issues.
And are there any speakers on this? Because we did notice the, the building. Okay, so then are there any comments from the board?
I haven't seen the updating.
There was a firm map submitted with that April 11th submission, where the arrow, there's a yellow arrow that points to the site. So it may not say this is the site, but it's clearly a different kind of an arrow than, you know, just.
Yeah, I mentioned that yesterday.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, I don't want to hold things up because an arrow doesn't say, isn't as professionally handled as it might be, but.
We know for future reference to indicate, we have someone else doing it for the future. We know to indicate what the arrow is or to label it "site" on the arrow. So we know that, but it was a very large yellow arrow. That's okay, we'll take it this time. Thank you very much. But we know, we know for future, now. But it's one word, "site," and it's, it's done. It, for future, it's, we, we have, we understand. And for the submissions to submit, if somebody submits to submission and the file is too large.
They won't get any confirmation.
Yes, I understand. Is it possible that they sent like a blank email or say, we tried to submit, file is too large? And so we can get some.
No, no, they don't know. So apparently, the system doesn't have a method for indicating that the file was rejected because it was too large. And often what happens is you get a warning yourself. When you're sending a very heavy file, the computer will say, this is a X-megabyte file, which may be too large, consider putting this on Dropbox. It actually, it's like an advertisement for Dropbox, right there while you're trying to send, right?
If you email, the email that you're sending from has limitations, yes, that happens.
Yeah.
But if you're sending to somebody that has limitations in his inbox, you don't get.
No, often, often you don't know. And so then, that's why when you're sending a large file, you should confirm in a separate email. I just sent a large file, did you receive?
This is the first time we have, in the past 15 years, that has ever not, that we've ever had this issue, and we've sent large files. That's why it was confusing, and this wasn't the largest of law files. So, anyway, it's done.
Anyway, it's done. Alright, then, I'd like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chia Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nesheta?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Nishibeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant, and I don't think there were any conditions. Chair Promoter? Other than maybe what was in the original grant. Um, aye.
Oh, this is a new PC.
Oh, oh, right, sorry, that would be the case.
Yes.
All right, so, Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ratley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nisheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Nishibeta?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number 14, 2017-288BZ, 17-10, Whitestone Expressway, Queens. This is just an adjournment.
Yeah, it's an adjournment.
It's just an adjournment and to discuss when. Yeah. This will be August. Sure. Yep.
Good afternoon, Lisa Orantia from Ackerman LLP for the applicant.
So, so we wanted to, because what we've been doing is giving very tight amounts of time, and it's obviously not enough for the negotiations, so we were thinking if, because we don't want to keep having adjournments, um, so maybe if we gave you to August, that would give you enough time to, to make whatever.
Yeah, August works for us.
Okay, so the last year.
That would be, uh, submission July 24th, we're hearing August 13th. 2016.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make a note about that, because we don't want to encourage another adjournment. If they're a little late on their submission, give, allow them a weekly wait.
Sure, okay, sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
August 13th, right. Item number 15, 2017-301BZ, 467 Marcy Avenue, Brooklyn. Yes, raise, sign in and then I'll swear you in. Raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to the board member questions?
Good afternoon, High Chair, High Chair Commissioners. So after the executive session, the fire department submitted supplemental letter, I believe, which you should have, which again, um, has no objection to the application, but also specifies with regard to the flame proofing and the existence of tanks near the site. I think that should satisfy one of your primary concerns.
I agree.
Also, we clarified the application to indicate that what we're asking for was approved by the Department of Buildings, it's a temporary structure, not a permanent, in line with the 10-year term of the special permit. At that point in time, if, if this exercise becomes viable, we will continue the term.
If the exercise, you mean, in other words, if people still do, like, trapeze in 10 years?
As you can tell, this is a rather unique use.
Yes.
And the owner is, is anticipating that it'll have enough customers to warrant the facility staying open.
Circus has been performed for a few hundred years.
Actually, this is, this is mostly for school kids.
Oh, is it?
Yes, it's, he has some wonderful educational programs for school kids, it's wonderful.
He's working in Chelsea Piers, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, so, but this is a trial in a neighborhood that, that has the students that he could use, but may not have the interest, so we'll see.
All right, any issues by anybody?
Okay. Oh, when, when did the, when did the facility open? Do you have a, a beginning of?
Oh, it's May 27th.
17.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just for purposes of your term.
Fine.
All right, um, are there any speakers on this? Does Fire Department want, you don't need to speak if you don't need to, okay, want to. All right, so then, I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ratley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nisheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Nishibeta?
Aye.
And a motion to grant for a term of 10 years, when does it start, from the day of the opening?
May 2017.
Okay, that's fine.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Ratley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Nisheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Nishibeta?
Aye.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Application's been granted. Item number 16, 2017-313BZ, 853 Kent Avenue, Brooklyn. Raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to the board member questions?
Good afternoon, Mr. Friedman, Friedman B. We listened yesterday to the, and I, we submitted, I think, last night and this morning, so the building is lower, and we gave the elevations, the sides, I gave both, I wanted you also to see how the next door building, like, really covers.
Covers it on one side, but there's a vacant lot.
But you get to see what's happening, because you have the other one.
Okay, but you, you didn't, I appreciate, thank you very much for being so quickly responsive to the comments. Um, you didn't show the materials that are going to be used on the side elevation, so because I don't want to prolong this, I'll just make a condition that it can't be my least favorite material known as exterior insulation, foam insulation?
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay.
You know what that would, that would do to my insurance? I have to sign every year when I get my insurance that I'm not, that I don't specify that.
Really?
Interesting.
Why, yeah, because there've been a lot of suits with that, so, one of the things I sign on my, that I don't specify, if I specify stucco, it's wireless, because that whole, the other stuff flies off the building and it's. Interesting.
Wow, look at that.
You shudders at the thought.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's very helpful information. Um, so, and then the only other thing that I wanted to mention that we clarified yesterday, we did get a noise sign-off February 21 with conditions, and the conditions were put on the drawings, so they've already tied that up, um, and so I don't think there are any other issues. Everybody okay? Oh, yes, sorry, so we need.
Hyrum's work, I, last night, sent it to Dana and Hyrum, Hyrum, as he walked out from here, said he'll, gonna stay on top of her.
Second to sections that you guys already got approved.
He got everything.
All in one document.
Right, so he's, it's gonna be, any, it's ready.
Maybe we can second call it.
You think it'd be done today during, during our hearing process? Because we could put this on for second call.
Alternatively, we could put it on for May 21st.
Yes. The problem is until the EAS is submitted, we're not clear in seeker.
Okay.
Right? So if it were possible for them to assemble this today and submit, hit the submit button, then we could put this on for second call.
So let's put this on for second.
Okay. Yeah, so, Lynn's here. Okay.
Just sections with the, the checklist.
Okay, and I, I just want to make a note also, that the, the drawings were revised, as Mr. Friedman said, um, both to bring the height down, but also the side elevation indicates that there is this sort of, for lack of a better word, a little balconet. It's only one foot from the facade, that's the maximum that would be allowed, okay? So, appreciate it. Okay, so second call this, all right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 17, 2018-116BZ, 1982 Utica Avenue, Brooklyn. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and respond honestly to the board member questions?
A lease volunteer from Eric Palatnik, P C, on behalf, yeah. We got some revised plans, we also have a bubble set in there to show you some of the items you asked for revised on the plan. First, you can see that, um, the concrete blocks and air station were removed in the rear, if you look at the bubble plans, it points out where, there's just like blank bubbles. Additionally, if you go to Z, the last page, Z007, um, it gives a detail of the dumpster to show you that this dumpster is big enough to hold the standard-sized dumpster.
The enclosure?
Yeah, I mean, the enclosure is big enough to, thank you, to hold a standard-sized dumpster, and the dumpster will fit inside of it.
Not sure this is drawn to scale. You've got, that means you've got three inches on each side of the dumpster in, in order to get in, or not even, because the dumpster is six feet out-to-out dimension.
He said that the standard two-cubic yard rolling dumpster measures 4'7" deep by 5'6" wide.
Right.
And the trash enclosure is 6'6".
Six feet out-to-out.
Yeah.
That means outside dimensions, right? So the fencing has posts, and then the fence is located wherever it is on that, so you lose, let's just for argument's sake, say, two inches on each side.
Isn't it six feet, six inches?
Oh, it's six foot six, they increased it. Oh, they increased it to six.
So about four inches each side.
Yeah, so there's four inches inside, so it's, it's pretty tight.
But it will fit.
So, um, but anyway, okay, so that's that part, let's talk about the next part.
So the next part is during, let's say, a car came up to wash their car, the doors would all be shut when washing the car, because why would you want to get water in your car? So there won't be any doors flinging open on the side while people are using.
But there's a vacuum station here.
Well, and the vacuum station, you would open your car door on that side of the vacuum, on the, why would you bring the vacuum all the way around?
Because you can't get to the other side of the car without your vacuum.
Why wouldn't you be able to open, I would imagine, when I go to vacuum, you'd open it on the side, the vacuum is on, and then start using the vac.
How? You're opening it into a place, and then you, there's no place for you to stand. I mean, I'm just looking at, you've got the vacuum station, you've got this tank vent, you've got the, whatever that thing is, it's a, the washing contraption, and you've got the light fixture, and now your body has to fit somehow or other between all of that, and open the doors, which I don't see you can do, because it's hitting the vacuum station.
I would imagine you'd have doors here and here, and you could stand in between and open your doors and.
No, so the car, the way the car's drawn, the doors at the back, the second, the back passenger doors are arguably hitting the vacuum station. It's, yeah, Z01 and O1, is there another?
O04 is another one. Because you see the maneuverability.
You see the car in Z04.
But they're giving you, if you go back to O01, they're giving you the stall, not the car, and the stall is eight and a half feet wide, and most cars aren't eight and a half feet wide, the eight and a half feet width is allowing for opening doors.
Oh, so, like an SUV, like, we fit more and more people on SUVs, what are they?
Not eight and a half feet wide. Maybe, maybe like something that's bordering on box truck size, but most SUVs are, are no wider than six feet.
Eight point five times by eighteen-foot stall compliant with New York City Code, that's the stall, that, that is the area they provide.
Right, no, that's understood, that's a standard parking stall. Right, but so, but the question is, when the doors are open, Commissioner Ratley Brown, you're saying when the doors are open, you're still within your eight feet?
Well, you're not protruding all the way, like, you're, you're suggesting that the car's eight and a half feet, and then opening the door is an additional, like, three feet, and I'm saying some of that opening is accommodated by the stall.
Right, okay, understood, okay.
And, and to some extent, I mean, at least from my experience of vacuuming cars, you typically do open the door that is closest to the vacuum.
Right.
Because the, the, the.
Hose.
Hose is not big enough to take it across. You have to do it from the side, then it goes.
So then you're like reaching across to the.
Right, you're inside reaching across.
Personally, that's what I've done too, not that I drive all the time.
Well, as you can imagine, I'm no expert on car vacuuming, so, um, so, yeah, so with this kind of stuff, I'm deferring to the drivers on the group.
Commissioner Ratley Brown's correct, like, most, even mid-side SUVs is six and a half feet wide, I think the Hummer is maybe seven and a half feet, like, or seven point seven feet.
Hummers are all the rage now again.
In the.
They don't need to make them anymore.
No, it's like seven and a half.
My, my only concern is, is the drainage. Because it is so close to the curb cut, and there is a bus stop, um, you know, my, my concern would be water running off of that onto the sidewalk, onto, and, and, you know, onto the curb. I just want to make sure that any water runoff is contained within the site, and it's very difficult for me to guess from this plan how the side slopes for the drainage, for the water to drain all the way there, and that it doesn't drain onto the sidewalk and onto the curb, because the curb is also going downwards. That's really my only concern, that's one of my concerns.
I guess I don't want to speak to elevation, but there is a drain right next to it, you can see that, and they said there's gonna be, there was two fire washes before, and now there's one, and that was Anthony, but I realized they were in the back.
Where is it shown that there's a, a drain?
The rectangle.
The rectangle, oh, okay.
And they said it's a swirling motion, but.
Where is that rectangle?
It's swirling.
They said, they said.
Z01 has a hatched rectangle.
Commissioner Nishibeta, under the letter that says "building," uh, next to the building, you see a rectangular hatched.
Says there are three drains on the site, one of which is at the rear.
Actually, there are four.
Yeah, I'm, I'm more concerned about the draining into the street than anything else.
Three. Oh, oh, this one.
Because there was less fire washes and all of those drainage, and the drainage next to it, the, the engineer wasn't concerned, but if there's something, you need.
I believe, I believe we gotta manage the slopes of the concrete.
Yes, it won't necessarily drain there.
Okay, okay. Yeah. That's my only concern.
Right, we need to make sure.
Could you make that a condition, that if you slope so to drain water into the onsite drain?
So my only question in terms of whether anything needs to be done still, was about the, the planting situation in the, on the side. So, so first of all, because this is, um, sorry, this is, uh, this is an existing, right? And the Community Board had, in, back in the day, a lot of concerns, and we understand that maybe the resolution isn't quite up to date, but they did have a lot of concerns that the improvements be done now as opposed to conditionally, right? Because, for instance, the conditions were that there be no car washing, and that the hours start, end at 12:00 AM, and there is car washing, and it's 24/7, so this is not exactly, and we actually talked about how the architecture has to solve the conditions because the owner doesn't comply with the conditions.
I talked to the owner, and they said they could potentially put a sign if that would be used next to the car wash, that it has to be stop-use by a certain hour.
Well, the way you stop it is that the machine doesn't turn on, you put the money in, and it doesn't work.
I asked them if that was possible, they didn't seem to.
It's called throwing the electric switch, right inside.
Okay, I can ask them about that, but they, they said we could put a sign, but it's.
No, no sign, so in other words, the electric is on a timer, and the timer shuts it down at whatever the reasonable time is, reasonable time.
I mean, it's not adjacent to residential anymore, so you could have a little flexibility, because it's on the street side.
Midnight?
I mean, in all probability, if they do have a road problem, like they say, nobody's gonna be out there washing their car at 3:00 in the morning anyway.
Next to an auto dealer too.
But she, they should have the choice too.
In the C2.
They should have a choice.
I'm not suggesting, I don't think the part, I don't think it's ideal, the size, but I, I think it's, I think it's workable.
Okay, so the question is, are we limiting the hours on the car wash or not? That's the question, um, again, I think we should. We should.
I think we should do midnight.
Okay.
My bigger concern is that if we can have some language on the plans that ensure that there be water retention, so that water doesn't go out into the street.
Yes, definitely. All right, so car washed to midnight, um, and then we need to amend the drawings to show.
Do that today, too.
Okay. Yes, right, no, so you can do this today, but actually, we want these things installed, so, so they're not gonna be conditioned, it's not a conditional approval.
Today, okay.
Right, um, so it's not a conditional approval, the actual work needs to be done.
Then I will not be doing it today.
Okay.
I'll go back and do some work.
Okay, um, however, again, I, I do want to talk about the landscape along the perimeter adjacent to the residence, right now, there's only a fence, and a little bit of sort of sad landscaping.
Is that sign still up there?
Yes, it is. So I keep looking at that and saying.
Is this the most recent photo?
This is from yesterday, and.
Okay, so the vacuum pump is still there?
Yeah, it's still there, they know they have to get rid of it. Sign's still there, yes.
So I think the way, the way I. It is beautiful, and you can improve upon it.
Not that beautiful, it's medium-ish.
So just to keep two things in mind, one is, one of the condition was not to allow One is, one of the condition was not to allow car wash and the car wash is continuing. So we are accommodating that by relocating the car wash from the residential section to a portion that would be less onerous on a residential piece of the property. And to ensure that no such future misuse of that section happens, we would hope that the applicant would work with us and improve that section of the residential by providing landscaping. Since we are accommodating, the applicants need to provide car wash.
Yes. Which is what we talked, well said, yes. We didn't say it was well the last time, but we did say it last time. So it's, it's really, and that's, and in terms of the exchange, I, I thought we already had the exchange of allowing a car wash, which we absolutely did not allow at the last hearing, I mean, the last review. But also, there's planting shown that's up against the, the auto dealership. So you might say, well, why do that, right? So instead, in ex, in exchange, you know, instead, replace that with a continuous strip of planting along the residential property line.
They already have it, so let that be.
Oh, I don't think it's installed, I think that's new.
No, it's not installed yet.
Oh, it's not installed yet?
Last time you're like, I think we can get this on quick, so we got a quick new hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
And we didn't have time to install.
Right, right. So I think when, in looking at it, it looked like we're protecting the wrong property. So you're protecting the auto dealership instead of the residence, which is always the issue. So what it should be is a continuous planting bed along that entire west property line. That's wide enough to support dense hedges that grow to six feet.
I just would also like to point out, I realize that you're compromising, that this is a brick wall and you will not be able to see it.
But there's many reasons that you have planting, which by the way, we just learned about in that report about the future of the planet. That unless we have some greenery and some drainage and allowing vegetation, we don't any longer have insects and all those other.
My reason for recommending that is more, it's as the chair always speaks, and I agree with that. Architecture speaks. And by having the landscaping there, we ensure future possibilities of one-off car wash situation in that area.
Okay. So because, um, so one, so one thing is because I don't want it to be just a few little pathetic plants that are planted there. It really needs to be dense shrubs planted closely together that grow to a minimum of six feet. And the typical is, is like an arborvitae, right? That's the one that we see most of the time. So if that, those are planted, I think it's four feet on center, you should get, you should get that dense shrub.
And then are we still have to keep the one to the side?
No, the one up against the, the auto dealership shouldn't therefore be necessary, right?
Okay, so that's not necessary, instead you want one in the back?
Yeah, so all the way across that western property line.
Okay.
And then, so that means the drawings will show that and they'll show the sloping towards the drain. And I guess that's it.
I'll, I'll read the condition regarding the, the floor drains. I drafted it. So it should say side drains shall be considered or will be considered in such a way to ensure no water outflow from the site to any of the adjacent properties. And that all water from store and or car wash within the site are directed to the four floor drains shown on Z, on drawing Z dash zero zero one point zero zero. And that these drains, floor drains, shall be maintained operational all the time.
Good, so that would be a condition, but you should also write words to that on the drawing.
I would only, I would only add that.
Yeah, you can listen to the tape and you'll get the.
I was just gonna ask if the link, can I have the language? Well, I'll ask.
No, you can just listen to the video.
Commissioner.
I can, I can email it to the project manager, he can email it to you.
We'll get the. Understand, I can listen to the video, just wanna make that.
I'd only add that adjacent properties and street.
Adjacent properties include, it's public property.
Okay. All right then, so I guess the question is, do we need another submission of the drawing before they go ahead and plant?
I was gonna say also, when you updated drawings to correct the common number.
Correct the what?
Oh, I put O one on it, oh, the architect just put O one on it.
No, it says three seventy-two O one B Z.
Yeah, the architect put three seventy-two O, that's what I'm saying.
It still shows basic calendar number.
Yeah, yeah, the, sometimes I put on top of it the calendar numbers, but the architect uses the previously approved plans to draw them and they just put them on that.
Okay, you'll correct it, yeah. Just explaining what happened. Never mind, don't worry about it. Okay, good. All right, so. Did you need a new set of plans? That's the thing is, if we do a new set of plans and I want to see them for next week, we could do that.
Okay.
And then, and then we could.
May twenty-first.
May twenty-first. May twenty-first, yeah, for the next hearing. And that way, now you can go and install. And of course, when we talk about a planting bed, it has to have a curb, just like what's drawn here.
Okay. And I've adjourned at least four hearings from May twenty-first, so there should be plenty of room. Yeah, no, I'm saying so, there's room.
No, I was gonna, but I was gonna suggest that since the, the official submission date for May twenty-first is past, when would you, like next Friday, May seventeenth? Okay, so your submission would be May seventeenth for May twenty-first. Is that, no, is that enough time, sorry? Friday, this Friday?
Can you do it by this Friday?
Okay, then May tenth, sorry, May tenth for May twenty-first. Speakers, oh yeah, are there any speakers on this? Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Is he the next case?
Barry's moving in.
Oh, yeah, where's, uh, sorry.
Item nine, item number eighteen, twenty sixteen, twelve oh eight B Z, three hundred E sixty, Fourth Street, Manhattan. He went to go.
He's here.
No, he went to go look.
Hmm? What happened? They didn't come?
Yeah.
Seriously?
What was the date? May twenty-first, adjourned.
Second call, we'll have to do a second call.
We'll do a second call, but careful because we can also vote on this.
Yeah.
Face for what?
Yeah, because we spoke to them last week and they were aware of this hearing.
I'm from the management company, General Office, does that mean I'm standing?
No, 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 no.
Management company.
We have, we have Frank St. Jacques from Acreman as the council.
Anyone can appear on this, so three hundred E sixty-four street, you're related to them?
I'm not eligible to go up there, I don't have enough information. I'm just looking at our lawyer emails and.
You represent who, the building or, I mean, you're with who?
With the management company.
Management company of the building?
Yes. But I'm not on behalf of speaking, I'm not.
You're just here, yeah, sort of the building.
All right, he's on his way apparently.
We'll second call it, but we have, that's the end of our morning calendar.
Yeah, we have ten minutes for the.
Yeah, okay. So we'll come back on the record at one o'clock with our two PM, with our one PM calendar, sorry, afternoon calendar. All right.
One o'clock. One o'clock. Barry's moving in first.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Friedman?
Do we have the?
So there's no lunch today, we're just going straight through?
Um, I think there's a lot of.
Okay, mics on?
Yes.
Okay, recalling, the second call, item number sixteen, twenty seventeen, three thirteen B Z, eight fifty-three Kent Avenue, Brooklyn, you're still under oath, go ahead.
Moshe Friedman, thank you very much.
So you were going to resubmit the EAS?
We received it.
So we received it, okay. So consider it submitted?
Yes.
So sorry, let me just tell what the conditions were. Okay, so I therefore like to make a motion to close.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabat?
Aye.
Commissioner Shibata?
Aye.
And a motion to grant on condition, we all know the conditions, it's to include the department, I mean, the DEP conditions for the RAP and CHASP, which are dated December fourteenth, twenty eighteen, on their sign-off letter. And then the noise sign-off letter of February twenty-first, twenty nineteen, which states composite window wall noise attenuation of twenty-eight DBA is required for all facade. And alternative means of ventilation required and should be incorporated into building design and construction. And I note that that, those two notes are on the drawings already. And that the front balcony, I'm gonna slow down.
Yep.
Front balcony shall not extend more than twelve inches from the facade, which is shown on the drawings. And then no exterior insulation foam system permitted to be used anywhere in the building. No, to be used anywhere in the building, not permitted, okay? Which we have a happy agreement by the art engineer. Okay, great, so on that motion, a motion to grant.
Chair Perlmutter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabat?
Aye.
Commissioner Shibata?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number eighteen, second call, twenty sixteen, twelve oh eight B Z, three hundred E sixty-fourth Street, Manhattan. Raise your right hand, are you the only one testifying today?
Aye.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board in response to the board member questions?
I do.
You can sign here.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Frank St. Jacques, Acreman, for the applicant. We attended yesterday's review session and have been in touch with staff. We understand that the noise issues are ongoing. I'll just tell you what, what we've done and what we plan to do. Yesterday, the overall audio was lowered by two decibels. That was done by the audio consultant, Eleven Audio, remotely. So I've been told that's a significant change. And we hope that in the interim, before we identify with the, whatever issue persists, we're hopeful that that should alleviate some of the concerns. Barry's has also been in contact with Sarami to conduct additional testing. Because the December test and the February test indicated that, that audio and microphones were not audible with some exceptions in the bathrooms of the residential units above, they are going to come for a range, across a range of days. So we've proposed doing testing over two to three days at different times during the day to capture the many different, I guess, sound environments that are occurring in the studio. The information that was provided by the residents, Barry's had charted that out onto a spreadsheet. There, there didn't seem to be a correlation between instructor, class, time. It's, you know, sort of across the board. So given what we've seen with respect to the prior reports, not being able to pinpoint a specific, you know, instructor or class or type of activity within the gym, Sarami's been asked to come in and, and just do a more comprehensive test to, to see, you know, what the issue is. They'll also test the audio levels. And Eleven Audio will be available to adjust specific levels, adjust, you know, overall volume, et cetera. I apologize, so Barry's Audio Consultant, that controls their sound system, that set up the limiter, that set up, that basically can, is the only, they're the consultant that can make changes to, to the sound system within Barry's. That's Eleven Audio, they're the, the sound consultant.
Is the owner of the gym present in the room?
The owner is, is not present. We do have, she's based in LA and couldn't make it.
Who's present?
Matthew Schwartz, who is the Director of New York City Operations.
Of Barry's?
Of Barry's, correct.
Can we speak to that person, please?
Absolutely, so Matthew, if you could stand up.
Can you be sworn in?
Raise your right hand, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board to respond honestly to the board member questions? Please sign in. Please, please.
Matthew Schwartz?
So, Mr. Schwartz, thank you for coming. What, what's your role in the Director of Operations means what?
So I oversee operations for New York on the whole. So any issues as far as like anything from client issues, treadmills breaking day-to-day, staffing issues, scheduling, overtime, working with the audio engineers in this case, making sure we got in contact with them as soon as we heard about the ongoing issues to turn it down as of yesterday, making sure that call was set up.
So when you say operations in New York, does that mean it covers all the Barry's gyms? Or just, are these franchises or these, it's a chain?
It's a owned chain.
An owned chain, so all the Barry's gyms are under your, you're the Director of Operations for all the Barry's gyms in New York?
In New York.
Okay. So, so here's the thing. We have reports every single day since the last time we had a hearing. And before that, every single day from the time before we had a hearing, from upstairs neighbors complaining every single day that they can hear the instructors in the early, early mornings, starting in something like five thirty AM, until those, those residents leave to work like around seven thirty, eight o'clock. And then every evening from something like seven thirty when they get home until maybe eight, eight something, right? This has been going on for what I think is two months. And, and probably was going on before that, but we didn't start having a hearing until before that. And as far as we can tell from the exchange with whoever it is who's working at Barry's, and we forwarded these emails to your council's office, Barry's has not responded. And now you're telling us that you're going to bring Sarami in to do testing when testing really isn't relevant because you have residents complaining about hearing the instructors. It's not just a little bit of a din or anything like that, it's hearing the instructors. So what I'm seeing is no action done until we haul you in for a hearing. And that's not okay. And I just need to tell you that we recently shut a gym down where they continue to be a nuisance and refuse to make any changes accord to make life livable in the building for the upstairs neighbors. So I'm warning you right now that if we don't see an immediate change that eliminates the nuisance to the neighbors and Sarami testing in their apartments is not gonna be persuasive. Because if the neighbors can hear at seven thirty in the morning and are sending, keeping logs and sending log reports to both you, to your council and to us, that means the sound has not, the, the problem hasn't stopped. So here's the instruction. Our next hearing is May twenty-one. You will cure this by May twenty-one where we vote to close your gym, okay? And you have been operating illegally since two thousand sixteen without a special permit. And you've been ignoring the complaints of the neighbors. So there's nothing to discuss, that's just, that's just a fact. May twenty-one or your gym shuts down. We get one report during that time from your neighbors that they can hear and are woken up in the morning or they're sitting over dinner and can hear your, your instructors. End of story, find a new site. That's it, you have plenty of time to handle this properly. Do you want to add anything?
I just, I just wanted to, that on the gym that we did close, they did invest a lot of money. It just didn't fix the problem. And that's what we're really concerned with. If the problem isn't fixed, it's gonna close.
But I want to just say that we've been getting these reports for weeks, right? When did they turn down the sound? Yesterday.
That's what I wanted to understand, what happened to the communication if you finally acted yesterday after a couple of months of issues?
If, if I may, we have been making steps each time to see if it's improved. So first was all new flooring put in to mitigate through like any weight drop issues. We then insulated all the speakers in a more intense way, taking them even further off the walls, putting sound like around them insulation. We insulated back walls, drilled into doors and added insulation. We've refilled any holes with more concrete. We've been taking steps in that way every single time and taking things down incrementally with volume. This was just a much larger volume shift yesterday.
But why did it happen yesterday? Why didn't it happen three weeks ago or four weeks ago when we were getting these reports? We have reports from March, every single day in March, every single day in April. And we just got a report now for this last week in May. Why did it take eight, what is that, eight, ten weeks?
So Madam Chair, that, the difficulty that Barry's has been having here is that, that the testing showed that, that the levels were not audible in those, those units above. And I understand that, that the residents have experienced the, the noise. We're trying to find the right fix here, or Barry's is trying to find the right fix. And we think it's, it probably has something to do, it's, it's more structural. That's why they're, they're working to fill the.
What, what modifications were made in the last eight weeks?
The flooring was installed, the, across the whole gym.
In the last eight weeks flooring was installed?
Correct, so that was in February, so unless I'm doing my.
Okay, our last hearing was March twenty-sixth.
Since the flooring was installed, the volume is, and overall adjustment has been made twice.
To what?
I, I mean, to the, the audio levels were, as, as an overall adjusted by, I believe, three decibels.
And when was that?
So yesterday was the, the two decibel drop. And the, the previous one was two Fridays ago.
Is that for the music or the instructor?
It's for the overall sound system volume. And I, I just.
So is it fair to say that the only steps that were taken? So is it fair to say that the only steps that were taken to remedy the issue was these last two volume drops?
No, not even the last two because until yesterday, there was one volume drop of maybe 1 decibel, right?
Of 2 decibels yesterday.
2 decibels yesterday, 1 decibel a couple of Fridays ago.
Two Fridays, correct. And that's the limit of everything that's...
No, that's as Mr. Schwartz said that, and we haven't submitted this into the record yet because the complaints persist, but the speakers have been isolated. They've done a thorough inspection of the interior space.
When were the speakers moved?
That was about two weeks ago.
Also that same Friday?
No, prior to then. I'm still waiting on the evidence to submit to the board with respect to what was done. We mentioned that it was going to happen at the previous hearing and in submission since then, we can submit evidence that that has in fact happened.
Our last hearing was on March 26, right?
Yes.
So changes need to have been made between, we're only interested in what was done between March 26 and now, right?
So the overall sounds, and I'm sorry to cut you off, but the sound system has been turned down twice since then.
Yeah, but the one that was turned down yesterday is, we just called you in for a hearing on Friday? Is that right? Which day?
Thursday.
Thursday. So to my thinking about this, had we not called you in for a hearing with three days notice, basically, you wouldn't have stepped down that second time, the additional 2 decibels. We would still be hearing about it being at the decibel level that maybe you brought it down by one, which we haven't gotten any kind of written information on anyway. So we don't have any written information about what happened between March 26 and the day before yesterday. And this is, and this kind of thing is exactly what happened at the other gym. The other gym made certain modifications based on their version of a Sarami report and then it didn't work. And then they, in addition to which, they ignored our instructions. And it wasn't until they had to come back to the hearing where all of a sudden they scrambled with a solution, right? This is the, these are signs of a non, an uncooperative gym operator who doesn't have respect for the difficulties causing, being caused to the residents of the building. And we did get that email from one of the residents that says, you know what, I give up. Buy my apartment from me because I cannot sell it in the marketplace and you can use it for an office, but I have to get out of here. That's an indicator that the nuisance that's being created by this proposed use, that's an illegal use, is an unacceptable use when you're essentially chasing a tenant out of the building. So...
So just so we understand correctly, the Sarami testing is not going to be persuasive to the board if the residents are still...
It's not necessary. If somebody's being woken at 5:30 in the morning and can hear what the instructor is saying, what are you going to test?
Are you suggesting that that's not, that they're not really receiving living complaints?
I'm not suggesting that.
Okay, so then the Sarami report's not relevant. If we're agreeing that there is noise there and it is disturbing them, then there has to be a way to mitigate it. So we don't have to, the Sarami report would be helpful, the testing would be helpful if we didn't know. But if we're all saying, we're already at the basis that there is something, there is something toxic, there's a nuisance. We're there. So now it's just about remedying it. And it's going to cost money and I'm not sure that testing to hear the levels at this point before any remedial work's done, at the very least, is worthwhile.
So I think that answers my question. I mean, our approach was going to be to try and identify the problem further through testing. It doesn't sound like that's something that makes sense here for the board.
What I'm trying to say is if your acoustical consultant has ideas about, is making recommendations for how you can mitigate this, then, and they need to test in order to figure out how to mitigate, that's a completely different thing than coming to us and proving that Sarami's tests that are conducted under different circumstances and so on are, that their test results indicate there's no problem. So we're not interested in their tests indicating there's no problem. There's a problem.
Okay.
So if you need to test to figure out how to cure the problem, that's completely up to you, but you must cure the problem and it must be, we need to not hear a single further complaint from those upstairs neighbors, not one.
So that means like little bitty adjustments here and there is not going down the right road. This has to be a thorough and complete radical change in how you've been operating up till now.
Right.
Something I want to bring up, I mean, my understanding is that this was a former movie theater and at that time, some resident there had complained that there was a noise issue. So you may want to work with the building management also to figure out if there is a structural issue, how to address that.
The building management's aware of the problem. I believe someone's here representing the building management. They've been looped in on all this discussion.
I think it's probably structural at this point.
I can't speak to that, but we'll certainly look into it. I mean, that's really been Barry's concern is that, again, the testing has shown that this is not audible and that the microphones and audio is not perceptible on the microphones in those units. So it's, I'm not arguing that the residents aren't hearing things. I'm certainly not suggesting that, but it's difficult to address when we don't know how to address it. And this is what the audio consultants have said, you know, what would you like us to do? How can this be remedied?
I think at this point, you ask what the commissioners have said here. You need to find a solution to the problem, not find the problem.
You've given us the deadline and we'll work with Barry's and I just want to, I'm not sure that there will be further testing, if only just to, I'm just putting that on the record. So we'll work with the residents and with 11 Audio to see what we can do about the issues.
Okay. So it's not like a simple investigation and we tried so hard and no, we couldn't. We cannot hear a single more complaint, further complaint. That's it. Simple. And so if it means your instructors work without mics, if it means you turn, there's no music and you cut the wires to the speakers and that's the end of it.
And the lights are limited.
If it means that this is silent, if it means that it becomes a yoga class, that's what it means. That's what we actually imposed on that other gym to try to come up with a solution and they were unwilling to modify their behavior, hence we shut them down, right? Some spaces are not designed to handle noisy uses because unless you're willing to create like, you know, spin studios, for example, everyone learned a long time ago that if you don't design a spin studio as a floating box within a box, you will vibrate everyone in the building when everyone hits that resonance together, right? So we do not see spin studios anymore. They're not designed as floating boxes within boxes. If Barry's in this building needs to be a box within a box, your business choice.
Madam Chair, it is. And that's what the...
Well, if it were...
It's been a significant investment in the sound attenuation.
No, no, no.
Prior to the hearings and then afterwards.
If it were a box within a box, it would not have any walls touching the exterior walls of the building, any of the structure. It would be a floating structure within the structure and that's a very significant expense, but if that's what it takes to make this work, then that's a business decision on your part to do that. But this cannot be audible and you're incorrect that it's not a box within a box design. That's a very, very specific type of structure. So, okay, so are there any speakers on this?
So if I may just ask, I mean, we have been in touch with staff throughout this process. I just want to be clear as to, in a number of instances, Barry's was under the impression that the changes that had been made were effective and we weren't, and Barry's was not receiving new complaints.
When was that?
I'm concerned...
On March 26, they said things were getting better.
It sounds like the changes you were making are not, for me, you're not on the right track. I'll tell you why. If I want to fix something, I'm an engineer and if I want to fix like a measurement and I want to like move that thing by five inches, oh, it's not fixed yet. Oh, let's fix it some more. Next time, I want to move it like 1 inch. Yes, that's better. Third time, 0.2 inches, but for you, this is not the case. For you, the first time is 1 dB. The second time is double. So it sounds like it's not conversion for you and we're not going to tell you how to fix this. You need to sit with your consultant and think about a plan to fix this and fix it quickly.
When's the last time you've communicated with the tenants?
Second?
I just wonder when the last time they communicated with the tenants who are issuing these complaints?
Well, we see that in the email communications.
I'm asking when they communicated in response, when they responded.
I think the last communication was just after the audio was lowered, not yesterday, but the previous time. We asked, we notified the tenants that had been lowered and asked them to let us know if it made a difference. Several days later, we heard back that it hadn't, which is when Barry's started to work towards, you know, what the next step would be. I understand the board's concern, you know, we'll work towards this May 21 date. I guess the concern I'm trying to articulate is that we don't want to be in a position where the day before the hearing, we find out that this is ongoing. And that's sort of been a difficulty all along with the communication. Barry's can be better about that. We would just ask that, and I know it's asking a lot of the residents that they participate...
No, it's not going to work. No, 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 it's not going to work like that.
Okay.
What we've seen in the emails, because we have copies of the emails from the residents to Barry's. We have the residents submitting, it's loud today, it was loud yesterday, here's my log, et cetera, et cetera. And the response is, thank you very much for sending us your information. And then again, an email from the tenant or a request, can you send us please at real time so we can check who's singing, who's doing, whatever it is? And the fair response from the resident is, I have to go to work. I can't give you information at real time. I make notes and I send the information when I can send the information. It's not the tenant's job to fix your problem.
Understood.
So what you need to do is fix the problem and you, it's not like you don't have their email addresses and I'm sure you have their phone numbers. And if you don't have their phone numbers, they live upstairs, right? And you know what they're out, you even know their habits. We know their habits, that they, that in the morning, they are woken at about 5:30 by your first performance and then they leave somewhere around 7:30, 8:00 and they can hear it continuously all the way through. And then they get home at this kind of normal after-work time around 7:30 or something and they can hear it until you don't have any more classes. So you know exactly when they're home to knock on their door and say, are you still having a problem? So it's not as if there's some sort of mystery about how to get in touch with these upstairs neighbors. So the onus is on you. You have their access. You can ask them the question, is it better now? Did you hear it yesterday? Et cetera, et cetera.
Understood.
Okay.
We will continue to be in touch with staff and with the building residents and I guess we're back on May 21.
There better not be an email chain like we've been seeing, you know? You're not giving us enough information. Why don't you give us real-time answers, et cetera? That cannot be an answer. Okay? Take this seriously, Mr. Schwartz, because the, we will shut you down. And so take this to your directors and understand that this location is at extreme risk of being closed.
Understood.
Public speaker.
Anybody from the public would like to speak?
A resident.
No. Yes? Please, please.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jennifer. I am a tenant at the building.
Say your last name.
Robbins, sorry. Jennifer Robbins. I'm also in the email thread, if you have read.
Yes, kind of know you will.
Yes. I think that, you know, the board, thank you, you know, I think a lot of things have already been said. I suppose if you have any questions for me, I mean, I, yeah, it's loud. It's always loud.
Did you hear anything today?
This morning.
You did?
This morning. I would say about 9:00, 9:30, something like that.
And how loud was it? Would you say?
Well, this morning, it was just instructor. And to be honest with you, like the last few days, I've just been very frustrated that I just, I try and drown it out. So now I like play music really loudly and I just try and avoid it. So this morning...
And you can hear the instructor clearly?
Yeah, I can hear like 5, 4, 3, 2, 1. I can, you know, I like...
Is there still vibration?
Um, when there's music really loudly, if it's like a heavy bass song, there's definitely vibration in the bathroom specifically.
And do you hear weights dropping? Is that still a complaint?
I think that the weights, I'm not sure if things change with the class. Maybe they drop, maybe their class changes, but now, it used to be weights like every hour, now it's weights like maybe two or three times a day instead of every hour. But I'm not sure if that is something that has changed or if that is due to any flooring. It's hard really to know what's what because every day fluctuates. There's not a clear communication of what is happening to be able to identify the patterns.
And just for the record, can you state the floor that you live on?
Yes, so I live on the fifth floor, which is actually the first tenant floor.
Right, right, okay.
Yes.
So you're saying it's mainly it's a noise issue, it's not a vibration issue?
No, there is vibration.
Yeah, but mainly, yes, they got some vibrations, but it's mainly noise.
Yes, that's accurate, yes.
And in terms of your schedule, it sounds like you're at home more often.
I work from home, yes.
Oh, and you work from home?
Yes, I'm working.
Okay.
Yeah, it's very frustrating and definitely the communication part is, become very frustrating because actually, we've been doing this hearing since January, but we've been reporting to our building since, I think the first report was September, October last year. We haven't had the most amount of support from our building and so it's really been just the tenants kind of fighting for this, so.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you coming. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you. Really appreciate it. Okay, so we set this.
Okay.
It's May 21, you come back and from Ms. Robbins and the other residents, we should not hear a single complaint, not one. That's a very high bar. You better live up to it. She heard today after 2 decibels down. So, you know, maybe everyone has to take their shoes off when they're working in your gym and you shut the music down, no music, no mics, nothing, and you become, you know, another entity. Think about that because otherwise, you're going down, okay?
It's much easier to fix a noise. That's my experience. It's much easier to fix a noise issue than to fix a vibration issue.
Vibration, yes.
Vibration issue, it could be coming from the structural elements of the building itself. And looking at this is a nightmare for a sound engineer or vibration engineer. But for the sound, it's much easier to fix it, if you want to fix it.
Right. But what I suspect is that there is something where the contractor, to the extent the contractor was supposed to have installed insulation or separation between structure and so on so sound wouldn't travel, there's a place where it's completely open. And if you were to open the ceiling or the wall someplace where you'd expect to find that separation and insulation, you won't find it. That's the most common thing. That's what actually did happen in that other gym where they were supposed to have installed a floating slab and they...
Connected.
It actually touched the walls and the structure, so all of the vibration was communicated all the way to the fifth floor of the building from the cellar. So actually, maybe even the sixth floor of the building. So I suspect that's the real problem, but without somebody really investigating. And so a sound engineer coming in to check, it's not testing in the apartment, it's more likely making probes to find out where you're not making, where there's no isolation or where the, where there's, where there's material actually touching, which that would probably be much more vibration related, but still, yeah.
Right, because this is going through another floor.
Yes.
Before it even gets to them. To hear a voice through a floor to another floor.
No, no, no.
Isn't this on the third floor?
That's not correct. No, the floors are numbered differently so that the resident units are directly above...
So this is the director, you're directly under.
So one of the apartments is above the studio, the other apartment is above a mechanical space at the rear of the studio.
Oh, okay.
But there's no floor in between.
There isn't any floor in between.
And if you read the emails, often the resident is very specific about where the noise was, you know, I heard it in my bathroom, I heard it in this place. So knowing what the plan is of the apartment, you can know where a likely culprit area is. My reaction would be to tear down the whole ceiling and look inside. That, right?
And maybe just turn your audio off until you find some sort of, I just...
No, seriously, between now and that...
You're running the risk of closing the business because... You're running, you're running the risk of closing the business, because you're not going to have your ideal situation, which is, is having your microphones as loud as you want. But, you know, to keep, keep moving on in business, it might be best to get rid of those microphones.
We're serious about this threat, so don't play with it. It's much safer if you stop doing anything for these next two weeks and find out what the problem is. And if anyone's working out, they work out soundlessly, right? Otherwise, it's been nice, but, okay? We're serious.
Just a question, is there, so that your continued May 21st, any submission?
Uh, no.
Okay.
The submissions are actually us not receiving a single complaint-
Okay.
...from the upstairs neighbor.
I would like to know what steps they've taken.
Oh, you would like to know the timeline?
I'd like to know the timeline of the steps they've taken, and what steps they're taking to address the issues.
Okay, now on the 21st?
I think it might be, given the interest of the time, I would rather have them present that at the 21st hearing and not provide a submission date. I'd rather have them focus on curing the matter-
I agree with that.
...and then presenting to us what all steps have been.
I agree with that.
Maybe we should also ask for an email from the neighbors also.
Yes.
Even if it's an all-clear, just to say-
Yes.
"So far, so good," or, you know, "No problems whatsoever."
Right, yeah. And so you can tell them, and we can actually send an email.
Okay.
I'll send an email to the doctor. Yes, okay.
And I think it's put in best interest as you're taking every measure to make the improvements, to alert the neighbor, and see if those are making any changes or not. Don't wait till 21st to see-
Yes.
...if those improvements have resulted or not. Keep it ongoing and-
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, immediately after leaving today, we'll instruct Barry to start taking steps. You know, our hope is that we can resolve this quickly, but, you know, we'll, I'm not sure that it'll be one single step, so I-
Whoa, 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 I'm going to say it again.
Okay.
Not one complaint.
You put it in a bad position now.
That's not steps, not one complaint. If tomorrow morning they hear, or this evening they hear, and they write it down in their log, that's a complaint.
Sure.
So we're not moving slowly here. It's a phone call to the office that says, "As of now, no microphones, no sound system, no shouting from the instructors." A different way, a more like calmer way of lifting weights, or whatever it is they do, right? So it's not steps, understand? It's taking care of it now, and then if there's, if there's a construction that has to be done, advising those neighbors that, "Today, we're going in and we're taking, we're doing construction. Construction's noisy, please understand that," right? That's a different thing than the instructor shouting, "Five, four, three, two, one," right? Okay.
Okay.
Can't be clearer, not one, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now we're going to take, right? Because 30 minute break? Because we think this next case will take some time, and lunch break, yeah.
Lunch break.
Okay, sorry.
We'll be back on the record at 2:10?
Yes.
That's half an hour, 2:10. Apologies for the delay.
Okay, we're back on the record, ladies and gentlemen. New cases, on the day 7, 2019, item number 1, 28136 BC, 25177, Jericho-Town, Pike, Queens. Raise your right hands. Do you affirm or tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the board, and to respond honestly to four number questions?
Two.
Okay, so this is where she presented.
We attended your review session yesterday, and we listened to it, and we listened to it, and we listened to it.
Three times only?
Yeah, three times, three times I listened to it last night. Six hours. And I think everybody on our team listened to it as well. Thank you for putting as much energy into the review as you all have. And I'd also like to acknowledge your staff during the review process. This has been a complicated project to pursue, drill a lineup, as you discussed yesterday in your review session. And they've all been very thorough, from the top to the bottom, everybody in their review of this application. Which I guess, I don't know how you'd like to structure the discussion, if you'd like for me to raise things, or if you would like to bring up your own issues, and I could follow, there was a lot discussed yesterday.
Right, I mean, I think a lot of this is that the analysis maybe was based on the wrong collection of base standards, right? So some conversation might be premature, because we need to make sure that you're using the right base building, that we see that DOB-approved plans, so we understand actually what, what the Plan B version is. And then, and then to make sure that we have the two proposed projects the way we described yesterday, so it's more accurately describing the deltas.
And we can do that. We went through it last night, and Sydney is here from Philip Habib Associates, and Stonefield Engineering is here, Andrew Valari. But Sydney is really the one that is, she's there responsible for doing all the traffic calculations, all the modal split numbers and all that. Stonefield has been responsible for helping with the facilitation of the movement of vehicles and pedestrians around the site. So we spoke to Sydney, she listened to your video last night, and she too heard what you said. I'd like to just summarize what the three different scenarios are, because I know that you and Vice Chair went back and forth, and there was, at the end of the video, when you came up on the three scenarios, even Commissioner Sheta had a comment as well. So I just want to make sure that we have the three scenarios that you're looking for correct. We've run our numbers already for what you've asked for, and there's, I'll let Sydney say for sure, but there's no material substantive impact, I believe, on it, with the exception of, in the worst-case scenario, for the daycare that you asked for, I guess it's a good place to start. You asked for us to show the PCE, the ambulatory with all the parking that's required, without a reduction, and a daycare. When we do that, if we do the ambulatory with all the parking, we will exceed the available number of parking spaces that we have on-site. We don't have enough spaces to achieve that. So I don't know how you'd want us to treat that in our analysis, or happy to address it that way and to provide it to you. I think after you hear our presentation, after we speak to you, I think you'll see that everything that we're doing makes good logical sense, and the numbers are going to bear it out. I think it's just the way the information is maybe being perceived right now, it seems a little mixed up maybe, and we could help sort that out. But the numbers are going to, we've done the numbers all different ways, and they all pan out, especially when you use the data that's on a comparative analysis to similar locations to this, well within what you've set up as your own standard for the onsite parking for a medical facility, so.
You mean that to meet demand?
To meet the demand. It's the standard that the board has put in place outside of the statute, which is the requirement that the board has set in place, it's not in 73, the reduction of parking, which I think you've asked for us to show that the peak demand is available on-site. That's been what you've been asking for. As I've stated before, I don't agree that that's a requirement of the special permit, but we want to try to satisfy your concerns, to get you as comfortable as we possibly can. So we, the DOT standards throw us above the onsite, but the comparable facility analysis, we provided one for you on Northern Boulevard.
Oh, it's left, left.
Yes.
The DOT standards for?
The DOT, using the secret technical information, what we're going to show you, and what the numbers you already have show you on the studies that have been done, is that when you rely upon that, the parking is not met on-site. When you rely, when you look at the DOT numbers-
Which standards are those? Because there were several that are-
She'll go through the modal split, she'll go through all of them. But what I'm simply trying to suggest to the board is, because I've been eating, drinking, and sleeping this for the last three years, you've only had it for a couple of weeks at the most, if you've probably been looking at it, is that all of the onsite demand that the board likes to look for, that the peak demand period, that can all be met on-site when you base the analysis upon similar facilities, similar medical offices.
But if you base it on the modal splits that DOT gives, it doesn't-
That DOT gives for the East New York rezoning, which is not analogous, and as we have talked about in past applications from the board, the board has always said it's better to get exact data from similar locations to provide-
No, 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 that's not totally accurate. So what the board has said is DOT recently issued a different utilization rate, and so for medical facilities. And so rather than using the 127 per thousand, it now uses 100, I forget what the number is, 104, is it? Per thousand plus staff, which is another number, right? So we've accepted that DOT has modified its standard for medical facilities, but we go, unless we have good reason to believe that there, that the facility is identical to another facility that it's being compared to, we go with the conservative DOT standard, journey-to-work standards, and census tract data, because we need to assume reasonable worst-case scenario. And in this case, it's completely spec development, so we can't know what kind of medical office it is. It could be something where people are arriving all day long, so we need to use, all day long, very frequently, because we need to use whatever it is DOT considers to be the correct modal splits. Okay, so.
No, just to-
Say your name.
Sydney Kepin with Philip Habib and Associates. So we were able to obtain the DOT modal split data, which I believe was a 5% increase in auto share than what we were currently showing. And so with that increase, it does increase the total medical office peak demand, which required by zoning with the parking reduction, I think we would exceed that requirement by 10 spaces for the site.
So you would exceed what zoning requires?
Correct.
So then we have a problem, right? Because-
It's not what zoning requires. If I could just clarify, what she's saying is, we're trying to, I'm trying, I'm coming right out front. There's not, obviously, there's no regulation in the books anywhere that speaks to onsite parking and the parking reduction. There's none, there's nothing out there, right?
No regulations on which books that speak-
For the special permit, for the parking reduction, for the 7344, there's no formula that's utilized, there's nothing that's been applied to the 7344 special permit that says anything that we're talking about right now.
You mean to meet demand?
Yes, all this discussion about demand, there's nothing that I've ever read in the zoning resolution.
It's called 7301, is that right?
73, well-
The, it's the one that says that the board may impose any, any conditions or to-
Right.
-preserve character and so on. That's the one where it's pretty obvious that as long as you meet demand, then you shouldn't be having a problem, right? Because the zoning resolution is quite general about what groups, what kinds of uses it's targeting. So in some areas, we see that it's far more parking than is actually required, and in others, we see that it's not enough parking, but it's only, it's zoning that's telling you to do that. We just had this discussion the other, last week about another case, where even if demand was showing that it was more, at least it was meeting the requirements of zoning, and that we couldn't ask for more than zoning asked for. So there are times when demand is even greater than zoning.
I'm confused with-
I'm confused with, you know, I'll withdraw.
No, 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 so, but I'm hearing you say, "But we don't even have the data in front of us, so we're kind of arguing with that."
Yeah, no, it's just-
Yeah, but you're telling us that if you use DOT modal split data, the demand is exceeded, exceeds what you're able to provide on-site, or what you want to provide on-site for this application.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Exceeds zoning.
So I could be, so I'll be as clear as I could possibly be. I don't agree with the board's assertion that 7303 lays out any sort of formula by which a demand has to be proven to meet, to secure the special permit from the Board of Standards and Appeals. I do agree that you're allowed to look at all these different things. But what I'm suggesting is that by looking at all of these things, and trying to apply a standard, which is what you're doing, and asserting it that it's from 7303, as an applicant comes before you, they're left with not knowing, when they make their application, what standard you're going to be applying. Because we have other applications where we have been asked to apply standards from similar facilities, and in this case, we have identical facilities. The operator's in front of you has five other facilities, they're all the same business model. They all include medical, and they all include-
Who are the operators? Who are the operators?
The operator, the owner of the building is Mayor Babayov, who's here with A.B. Capstone. He's the developer of the building. And Mayor develops buildings that exclusively include medical office and daycare. That's his target.
Isn't this person the landlord?
He is the landlord of the building, yes.
Who rents to medical facilities?
Yes.
And couldn't the medical facility be a clinic where people come every 15 minutes, constantly, constantly, constantly? Because that's that medical businesses, business model.
Regardless if that's the business model, or it isn't, but here we're providing, I'm sorry.
No, but so we're looking at the reasonable worst-case scenario. We're looking at, it could be rented to any medical facility, and I go back to the times where we have accepted equivalent medical facilities are the most obvious ones, where it's a branch of the same doctor's office. They want to open up another one down the street, and so they say, "No, but actually, it's the same exact thing. We're continuing our business over here, and we're an eye clinic, for example, and we know exactly what we're, what we do already." And so the board works on that.
We could provide you with that data for this.
No, you don't have-
We have the same tenancies, we do. We know the tenancies.
You don't have tenancies.
Who signed the lease here?
He's negotiating right now with a couple of tenancies, all of which we have that information that we could provide you with.
Right, but usually, we accept that comparable site. When we know who the operator is, the operator is functioning somewhere else in a similar kind of geographical location that's got the same amount of public transportation, same kind of issues going on.
Right.
So you could then say, "Well, you know, same operation over here, except for maybe a difference in square footage, and you could prorate the amounts." So then we allow you to use that site. But if you still haven't hammered out who your ultimate tenant is, and you don't have the lease binding that tenant to the space, there's no way for us to know whether whatever you put forward as comparable is truly going to be comparable.
Again, though-
Sometimes there's a condition that says that as long as that particular tenant stays at that location, so-
Well, that's, yeah, that's my point, but this is where, I, listen, I like everybody up here personally, but the position that I'm taking professionally is that I strongly disagree, because-
What do you disagree with?
Commissioner just said, if I could just do what you just said, and it makes, well, we have to tie it into a specific user. The special permit for medical use is not tied into any specific user.
Yeah, but it's a case-to-case basis. It's on a case-to-case basis. We take the information that's given to us to see what the parking need is, and we reference it against the, what zoning says, and every, everything that we can, to see what's appropriate for that particular user. And sometimes, if the, if I recall correctly, if the argument's made that this particular use is only this much, other uses aren't, we can, within our discretion, we're permitted to allow that use, and allow that waiver, allow that parking waiver to that extent.
Mr. Polak, I think for the three years that I've been in, on this, serving on this board, one thing that has been very consistent is when we have a medical practice, a known medical practice proposing to, requesting a reduction, and they have a similar medical facility somewhere of the similar equal geographic location, we do look at that data and try to balance out the demand factor, that, than even what the zoning would require, even what the typical DOT or even EIS's requirements are. And I think I can name cases, there was one in the Fort Hamilton that had that automated vehicular system, there was one, there was one in Williamsburg, there were, like, several of them where we consistently, there was one in Astoria, we consistently use a similar practice that has been done, that has been, that we have replicated.
And-
Where we did not have a sample, where we did not have a sample, we then relied on-
On DOT.
On DOT's EISs. And that has been consistent. I don't think we have deviated.
And you have not deviated, you have not deviated.
And I want to just add to that. However, we have also had situations where the public comes and testifies and says, "The However, we have also had situations where the public comes and testifies and says, the parking here is horrendous. So then we go deeper. We say, all right, we understand that you have a similar facility, but neighbors are saying there's zero parking here, even though the parking counts of your expert are saying there's parking, the neighbors are testifying that it really isn't parking. So then we say, to be safe, we need you to run the numbers to reasonable worst case using DOT standards. And when that checks out, or when it's within one or two cars or something, then we say, okay, one or two cars, we can live with that, and so we're willing to accept, right? Or we may say, no, one or two cars, go find those one or two cars on the site. You've been there, right? Some of those are your cases.
Some are mine. And I haven't agreed all the time. I'm going, and when I can satisfy you, I'm trying to, but I don't agree with what we're doing, and I'll tell you why I don't agree. Because, guys, Vice Chair just said a minute ago, in the three or four years that she's been here, that's how she's done it. But if you go back in time to the 30 years since the section has been written, that practice hasn't been followed. So what I'm suggesting is that the imposition of that requirement is just above and beyond. But let's move on from that. Let's go on to the point that you raised for a second, though, just a second ago, where you said, oh, if you're over by a couple of cars, but the neighbors here complaining that it's a big deal, we go into a deeper thing. Okay? We are on a section, and we can, if you could hand up those photographs, that's.
Don't forget the community board voted against it.
Oh, and I have huge respect for Richard Hellenberg, he's one of my favorite people in New York City. And, but unfortunately, I disagree with him too, and we're allowed to disagree.
So the disagreeing with the board and its operations isn't getting you anywhere?
No, but I know, but I'm, you know, I listened to an hour and a half of negative, let me keep going, though, I got some, I got some good stuff. Okay? So you just heard, you just said to me a second ago, that, ah, if you're over by a couple of cars, but the neighbors here are complaining about there's not enough on-street parking, then, you know, we have a problem. Here you got the opposite, okay? You have 821 available on-street parking at any point. If you look at the pictures.
No, 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 let's just stop right there.
Can you?
No, no, I have to stop you right there because it's exactly the situation where we say, you need to meet demand on the site, because whatever reason it is, almost always, the parking consultant finds available spaces on-street, and then the neighbors say, there are no available spaces on-street.
I am holding up a photograph that is taken in an afternoon, on a beautiful November afternoon. We will get you the date, and I will provide you with photograph after photograph after photograph, as many as you want, that will show you that for approximately a 500-foot section of roadway on Jericho Turnpike in an easterly, westerly direction from the intersection of Little Neck Parkway on the northern side of the street, starting directly in front of our property, extending until the shopping center down the block, that it is routinely not utilized at all by anybody. There is approximately 15 to 20 spaces sitting on the street right there. Now, why am I showing you this? The other pictures, if we could pass up the other pictures, let's show these pictures. What goes on here, let's go back to where we are. I know the commissioners, two commissioners yesterday said they explained this to me. I don't understand this, you know, that was New York comments. We are not in metropolitan Manhattan, New York City, or even Queens here. We are at the edge of eastern Queens, at the edge of western Nassau. We're at Little Neck Parkway, which is basically the dividing line. Nassau is known as a bedroom community, it's suburban in its setting. Queens is known as urban. This area is more like Nassau than it is like Queens. When you see how the buildings are laid out and the shopping centers are laid out on the block, everybody, like our building, has parking. The on-street parking is not relied upon for the shopping centers around us, they utilize parking lots. There is an abundance of on-street parking available. This is not like the rest of New York City, where people are scrambling on the major roadways, such as in Brooklyn on Utica Avenue where you can't get a parking spot, Queens Boulevard where you're struggling to find a parking spot, any of those, Ocean Parkway where you're struggling to find a parking spot, any of these, Atlantic Avenue where you can't find a parking spot.
What is this, what is this, this last mission, what is this to prove?
That's, that's a mission, this is showing you a couple of different things. The first thing it's showing you is that there's a lot of on-street parking available, if you look at the roadways. On the first page, what it's starting to show you also is that there are buildings that have their own parking. It's also.
You would agree that all the parking on the first page is, is taken up?
Yeah, this is not, this is nowhere near our property. This is just being given to you, it's also being given to you as an example, which we're going to come to later, the way that parking lots in general are set up, and that the way that buildings are set up, or that people park behind a building and walk to the front. So the AutoZone that's shown here, I'm trying to normalize the condition that all throughout the retail world in New York City, people park behind the building and walk to the front of the building for the service. So that's the other reason, I'm jumping ahead.
The medical office service?
I'm going to, I'm going to get to that, but I was just, let's see if we can stick to the parking for a second. No, the medical office are going to come to. We have a solution, we have a solution for everything. It's not, as I said before, but clearly you could see from this singular picture, which you could see the shadows that's taken late in the day, you don't have to take my word for it, the south is on the other side of the street, the shadows are extending, you can see it's late in the day, and then the shadows, it's 4:00 in the afternoon, I don't know what day of the week it is, and we can see that it's, there's a lot of parking. And we'll come back and we'll show you that. All I'm simply trying to suggest to you is when we're looking at this, and you were saying, what's the philosophy behind this? What was he thinking, Mayor, when he did design this building? What Mayor was thinking was exactly what AutoZone was thinking, was that let's put the parking behind the building, let's keep a streetscape, and what he was even thinking is that, look at this stretch of block, it's a C8 zone, it's got motels across the street, it's got no local retail, they built a schmutzy CubeSmart next door, right next door to us, a schmutzy CubeSmart they built, they're not drawing tons of people in there, and he knows that he could utilize the street, and the parking bears out that way, the, the on-street. And they went out and they counted, and Madam Chair, with all due respect to you, I respectfully take a lot of objection to the comment before where you said that any consultants will come up with any numbers for the parking, because Sydney is top of the line.
That's actually not what I said. What I did say was that most of these cases, the consultants find the parking, and then we dig deeper into the question, and we find the parking is actually six blocks away.
You, that might be your, that might be your experience in most of the cases, but we're on a case-by-case basis here. And Sydney and Stonefield are top of the line, and, and we're not, listen, you want to say they fudged the numbers, so maybe they had 400 spaces.
I keep saying that, but that's not what I said.
Maybe they had 700 spaces instead of 820, maybe they had six, but whatever, there's still hundreds of available, hundreds.
So here's the thing. So here's the thing. Okay, I see you like doing this, okay. So I, what, but the point is, we meet demand, all right? And that's our standard.
I disagree, I disagree with that, but we'll try.
But we're the one, we're the deciders.
What if I, well, you're the deciders for now. There are other tribunals that might hear.
Okay.
Okay, so let me ask you, there are, I mean, it's.
And a question of discretion.
Okay, it's a question of discretion, maybe, maybe, maybe somebody else may look at it and say, agree with Platnik. But let's come back to it. So you're saying to me that under the rules that aren't printed anywhere, that what you're coming up with, that if I come back to you with Mayor, with his ironclad promise that the uses that are going in here are similar to some other location, as we just discussed, and I could show you that through leases or some other way, that that would satisfy the board, is that what I'm being told?
Not necess, I don't know. It's a case-by-case basis, right?
Didn't we just discuss?
We discussed the situations where we had, we knew the operator, and the operator who was coming to this location was the same as an operator at the other location. That's the, that's the cases that we're talking about. They were opening up another branch in this location, or they were, or they were spreading out, for instance, we had one.
Gotcha.
Where they decided they were spreading out because they needed to hit another market.
Like I said.
So they're a completely known entity.
He's in the business, his model, like, like my model, as I do zoning cases, his model is, all he does is medical ambulatory and things like that, so.
But I think the point is that the board sees a lot of different kinds of these facilities, with different types of operations, with different demands for parking, and different neighborhoods.
I'm going to bring you analogies.
With different public transportation options.
Yes.
And so they're trying to say, look at your site and look at your operators, plural, singular, whatever it is, and if they have an operation known somewhere else, then you can use it.
So one of my options is, just so I'm crystal clear on, on how we're analyzing and how we're presenting it to you, even though the regulation is not anywhere, the verbal description you just gave me is how to analyze this on a case-by-case scenario is what I should be using, whether or not it's analogous to what the board determines is analogous, and if I could do that and present it to you and meet onsite, even though that's not anywhere, then I'm entitled to 7319, is that?
Well, let me be more specific.
Go on, yes, I'd like to know.
Do your parking analysis using DOT.
Yes.
First and foremost, if it shows a greater demand that you have capacity for, then you can press your case with us if the operator that is going to be in this site and has signed a lease has a comparable operation somewhere else, and you can draw ties between both of them and show us that the demand really would be lower because it's essentially this operator right here in location B who's just opening up a duplicate site here, and everything in terms of transportation options and location is almost exactly the same in location B as it is here in the subject location.
I thank you for the clarity.
But I just want to.
And I'd like to bless you all.
I want to add to that.
It's a good game show.
That this isn't an opportunity to sign a lease for a year to therefore get an opportunity to use that lease as a way to persuade the board.
That's not the intention of anybody.
And these were never, these cases that we're talking about were never those. These cases were the operator of the other establishment developing this site and then needing that waiver because they knew that they have hardly any one drive to their site, right? And so, or even in one case.
Well, that's not true. I had one that was a dialysis center that wasn't operated by us, that they were moving, we were taking from another dialysis center that was operated by another company, and we were starting up our own dialysis center. So that was different. And that was one in Brooklyn on East 17th Street. So that was different. I guess, listen, there's a lot of nuances, I don't agree with what anybody's saying on the subject, but I'm happy to try to accommodate you.
You do agree that you have to start with DOT. You've got to agree that.
No, because I practiced for 20 years, and up until 16 years ago, I filed about 50 of these applications, never once was DOT brought in to opine. And the Chair actually said yesterday that she's sending it over to DOT, and she wants, in the review session, she wants it to make sure that it's a finding of the section, but it's not, it's what the board is seeking.
Sorry, 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 don't start mixing up, we're looking at a daycare center. I do want DOT to look where we look at a daycare center, it's the safety of children that we have.
Yes, the safety of children, yes. To the safety of children, and that's explicitly correct, that's what we're after too, the safety of children. Where I'm disagreeing is that DOT nor the board has no jurisdiction over the peak demand discussion they're having, or how many people are coming, or when they're coming. Up until four years ago, DOT never once opined on peak demand, any modal splits, any of that.
I'm not asking you to do that, okay, start your application referring to the DOT standards.
Standards.
I'm going to, I'm going to.
And that's always been, that has always been your starting, that should be your starting point.
No, it was only a starting point, that was a starting point four years ago. Before that, in New York City history, not once did DOT or the board ever discuss modal splits, on-demand site parking, or the requirements of anything.
We never asked DOT to discuss this stuff.
I know.
It's the EISs and the FEIS.
Right, but now it's being used, well, we drew, we did the EIS and the FEIS, and we meet that, we got a negative deck, we're okay with that. The board is talking about this right now, we didn't trigger any thresholds on the debt, on the SECR. The board is talking about the modal split right now to prove the zoning application under 7344, and that's what I'm saying to you, up until four years ago, none of that was ever asked for.
That's not correct. I know of other cases where specifically the board, before we started in on this, the board specifically asked that parking demand be met with this case.
If I could be aware of those, I would like, if I could speak to your counsel, I'd like to learn of them, but.
Can I just ask a question? So I understand that you want this movie, this project, this building reviewed for school safety, as is always done with a 7319.
But this is, this is the medical office.
But there was a comment about DOT reviewing the parking study, is that a different comment from the school safety?
So the reason, so to ask DOT to un-hear or unsee what's in the data isn't, isn't possible, right? When we submit to them, the parking, the study, it's the parking and traffic study that needs to be provided to them for an analysis, right? So they should be looking at all the data provided so that they can get a clear understanding of everything.
So they'll see all the data, but for school safety, they review for safety of the.
Right, but they'll be informed by the information they have about the cars and the analysis and so on, right?
So just school safety, then?
It's, it's DOT reviewing the materials on parking and traffic. I'm not going to say anything more than, I don't want to give them a parameter on how they review, right? We give them the materials we have in the EAS and in the studies on parking and traffic, and, because we don't have a loss of service study either.
They have different divisions, that's why I asked this question.
Right, okay, so we can talk about this later, and so, right, okay.
Eric Platnik, thanks to the board for having a conversation. Yesterday, there was a lot of talk that the special permits are an inclination by the, by the legislature that the use is permissive, and one of the, one of the commissioners said that. All I'm simply saying, and I'm not disagreeing with your right to ask for it, I disagree with the fact that it's considered in the zoning application. I think the distinction we were making a moment ago is that the health and safety of the students is your parameter, and it should be for DOT. Whether or not, how many cars are being demanded upon a site and a modal split, and the traffic, and using it from, the SECR manual, using it from another office facility, is the board trying to get more information so you're comfortable that the peak demand and there's enough parking onsite? But what I'm suggesting is the special permit doesn't contemplate whether or not there's enough parking onsite to meet any demand, it's blind to that. It only speaks to medical and use group six office uses, and it's specifically clear in its findings that it's just says that the uses shall be contemplated in good faith. And, thank you for giving me the time to finish my thought, for my 20 years of practicing, it wasn't until four years ago, and I would beg of Ms. Laurie, of Ms. Monroe, to provide me and all the other practitioners out there, because I've spoken to all of them, of the board's practice over and over in the routine practice of the board, and maybe you'll find one application, but I guarantee you, I'll find 40 for every one that doesn't make a reference to it.
Because I'm finding it actually kind of disturbing that you're, you're stating that you don't know of any standards the board has reviewing these, when you have count, you have a number of these applications before the board, and I'm actually looking at one, an application from 2010, and our resolutions for these special permits consistently discuss the parking studies that are involved in the application process.
Yes.
And they include paragraphs discussing whether or not the parking study evidences that the number of parking spaces proposed will meet the demand, and this is from a resolution, this is just one of them, I can keep going.
That's just one.
I'm sorry, Mr. Platnik, let me finish. So this one from, from November 15, 2011, from your case, says that the, wait, wait, the parking announcement.
And by the way.
You're interrupting.
I'm sorry, I know, but she's not, she's not a commissioner, she's having the conversation.
I'm sorry, don't you ever tell us how to run our hearings.
But you asked me, you asked counsel for examples of resolutions where we discuss the parking demand.
I apologize.
You, you asked for my, my participation in this hearing, and so now I'm participating.
And by the way, you do not decide who participates in this hearing.
She's entitled to speak.
Don't you ever do that again.
I apologize.
It's, it's not the first time someone's done this to me.
I apologize.
It's, it's quite rude, but, so, in response, do, do, do. Sorry, I lost my train of thought. So, I'm sorry.
And I apologize, I didn't mean to show you any disrespect.
My, no, but my, my, my point was to say that you're not new to these applications, you're not new to the board, and I find it really difficult and disingenuous to believe that you've never heard that accommodating all the parking on the site has been a requirement for 7344 applications. And I, and I'm not, and four years notwithstanding, Vice Chair just said, the time she's been here, that's been a requirement, and so if we can move from this, you know, not being a requirement, I don't think that you are doing a service to your clients by, by arguing about board precedent, that I don't think any of these commissioners are expressing a desire to move away from. I think what you should be doing is concentrating on meeting the findings as they have explained them to you, both in yesterday's review session and in the 20 minutes from talking about this case so far.
And I appreciate that. And I would very much like to continue, if you can, to provide into the record the resolutions that you're speaking of.
Are you going to yell at me again?
No, I'm not. And I like the fact that you're pointing to previous resolutions as an indication of how things should be treated, because we'll get to that in a minute. So going back, so to what Commissioner Ali Brown was saying, so those are our choices, and if we actually decide that we, we need to reduce the square footage by a few feet in order to accommodate the peak on-demand, I assume we'll meet the satisfaction of the board there. So in the case that, if that's the finding that we meet the peak demand on-site, then if should we have difficulty and I reduce square footage in order to achieve that, I'd imagine that would meet the board's requirements as well.
I just want to read out A of seventy-three oh three, and it says, "The board shall make all the findings required in the applicable sections of this chapter with respect to each such special permit use or modification of use parking or bulk regulations, and shall find that under the conditions and safeguards imposed, the hazards or disadvantages to the community at large of such special permit use or modifications of use parking or bulk regulations at a particular site are overweight by-"
Outweighed.
I'm sorry, outweighed by the advantages be derived by the community by the grant of such special permit. And, and it is asking us to make sure that, you know, it, it, it's not affecting the neighborhood, like, all of the other things, and the neighborhood light, air, privacy, quiet, these are things that go into it. That's why we are asking for the parking information. Yes, it may not be saying specifically demand analysis, but it's leading up to ensuring that these are not going to be compromised.
So I would recommend that you not spend any much more time in your, of your client's money arguing in a, an illegal memorandum about why you shouldn't have to do this and just do this.
And I wanted to just say, in reference to the commissioner who made the statement about special permits, that was me, and I said, "Contemplated use." I didn't say alternate as-of-right use.
No, they contemplated, yeah, they contemplated. I know it's not as-of-right, but it's a contemplative.
The board has broad discretion here.
I, I-
And so, therefore, any standards that we put in place are rational standards.
We're gonna try to find a way to satisfy the board, and I do apologize, Ms. Monroe, for my comments earlier. I do not mean any disrespect to you.
Excepted.
I like you as much as I like everybody else, as I said earlier, and I meant no disrespect. So moving onwards from that, the next conversation the board had, well, we've, now we've identified and, well, we're still at the first scenario that you want us to analyze, we haven't gone past that. So, the problem that brought us here is that we have way, we have, to provide that first scenario for the daycare, the worst-case scenario, the build-out provides too many, there'll be too many parking spaces, there would be 140-something parking spaces required. So would you like us to maybe, in that scenario, reduce the amount of ambulatory square footage? Or-
We need to make it into a complying project, right?
So make the worst-case a complying project, you understand the question? And we'll chop out some of the floor area for that, to show you that.
And, and we also need to see the DOB-approved set of drawings.
Yes, we'll give you the DOB-approved set of drawings. I think you understood, I heard the conversation back and forth, I think after, after you spoke back and forth, you got the gist, that part of it was philanthropic, not-for-profit, the other part was, was use group 11, and the remainder of it was medical and daycare. It was use group, use group 11, use group 4, excuse me, retail and medical office were the uses that were in there. And that was in the as-of-right. The next scenario you asked us to demonstrate to you was to show you, for the parking analysis, as much medical as we want with parking, with use group 11 and use group 4. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that'll be the analysis that we'll do for the parking application, and then we'll give you the proposal. And I'll, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to discuss the parking. So let's talk about next, what's the next subject? Do you wanna talk about stairs? Do you wanna talk about parking layout? We got some good information for parking layout that I could potentially help you with all the concerns the board raised yesterday.
The parking lay, so, so this is the part where it's quite difficult because it's an overlay, are the parking layout concerns mostly, I think, have to do with the, with the school, right? And you had some concern, yeah.
I have a question, maybe, maybe you can walk us through your parking operation for the proposed development, which includes both the daycare and the ambulatory care facility, keeping in mind the questions we had raised. The questions we had raised was the conflict that would arise from those vehicles that are parked along the side via valet while the daycare drop-off pickup is happening. Other one is the ambulatory care, the lobby entrance is along Jericho, though the parking is in the rear of the building and the connection is from, in a way that, that doesn't-
We heard the whole thing.
All of that, right?
I got everything.
So just help walk us through your proposed parking operation and, and how that would address those issues.
Okay, so, thanks for giving me the opportunity to talk about that. And while Andrew is putting the plan up, and I'm gonna let him speak in a second, let me back you into how we got here. So we, we got into this whole plan, I use like a Coxix as an example, it's a leftover piece, so the parking is a leftover piece here. When they bought the property and they started development on the property, this was not acquired. This is in an R2A portion of the property. We're in a C8 zone here. So we're in a C8, because it used to be a gas station, it's, that's why it's C8 here, not in the middle of an M-zone really, true manufacturing zone. So when they designed it originally without this piece, the cellar level, do you have the cellar level?
Uh, it's on the other side.
And this is where we wanna revert back to. And you can still see the vestige of it. It actually still says attendant parking booth right here. The original plan was that people were driving down, these were added on. This is designed for two-way traffic up and down. And you were driving down, when I was coming into the building, I was leaving my car here, I was going to the elevator and I was going upstairs. That obviated, that eliminated all the problems that you're seeing now. We were, we're gonna revert back to that after hearing the review session yesterday and after hearing your concerns. The reason why we ended up getting sucked into this whole cockamamie plan is we originally didn't have these Gotham, what are called Gotham lifts, in the building, which are specially-designed low-level lift systems. About a month ago, when we were in the middle of a meeting with Richard Hellenbeck, we discovered this, we came back midstream and showed him, introduced this to him. At the time we did it, thinking we were satisfying Richard and making him happy because we had a horrendous-looking set of stackers over here that were four cars high, almost like what you see at JFK. And none of us liked that. Nobody liked it. We didn't like it, they didn't like it, so that's how we got to that. And when I went to your review session yesterday and we heard your comments were, and I'm seeing how you're commenting upon the flow of cars around up here and you're expressing concerns about safety, even though I think some of them we could address, and I don't think it's that uncommon for, for people to walk through a parking lot, to get into a building, even with children, I go with my children to all different places all the time, all their daycare places, I'm always parking and walking through a busy parking lot, holding their hands, always.
Are they the subject of a BSA special permit?
I don't know if they are, but it just, it draws the point, and, and thank you for, for bringing this up also, which is, this was voluntary.
What was voluntary? Putting that parking-
The parking. There is no daycare or school in New York City, for the most part, that has any off-street parking or loading. Not none, I discount that, that would be a lie. The vast majority, the 98% of daycare and schools in New York City, think of your own experience. They don't have drop-off zones. Where's the last public school you went to that you pulled up into a drop-off zone in Long Island, yeah?
This is not a public school.
It's okay. When was the last daycare? When you run a search of daycare on Google, like I did last night, and you type daycare Queens into Google, you get 150 listings. The first 30 of them are in people's homes. They're in people's homes on side streets, there's no parking. So, all I'm simply suggesting, and the, the special permit itself for daycare doesn't even hint at parking. It doesn't even hint at staff parking. It doesn't even hint at off-street loading. None of that is even talked about. As a matter of fact, there is only one place in New York City where they say, when you build a school, you have to have an off-street loading area. Ocean Parkway. That's the only area where the drafters of the zoning resolution said that they wanna have off-street parking. Yes, I'm sorry, cut you off.
Mr. Palatnik, you just mentioned that this is right at the edge of Nassau-Queens border.
Yes.
So I'm assuming many of your clients that will be coming to the daycare facility are not going to be just restricted to Queens residency, they'll be coming from across the Nassau border.
Yes.
And Nassau, I, not that I've lived there and I don't visit that area frequently, I'm sure, as you showed in most of the photos, every use there has its own parking space and I'm sure a daycare facility-
But we're not in Nassau.
We are not in Nassau, yes, technically, politically, whatever boundary you wanna pick, but you will be having clients from Nassau, and in order to make that facility attractive for your Nassau clients, it's good that you're providing that facility.
It's great, it's great, and I wanna, we wanna make it safe. We do wanna make it good.
And it's great you're doing that, but then we also need to make sure it's safe. Just because we don't have any such similar things in Queens doesn't mean we don't apply that rule. And, and you know from every review that we do of schools, facilities, we go through a lot of great pains to make sure that there is safety and security imposed. So it's good that you are thinking of providing a drop-off pickup.
That's why we were doing it.
It needs to be better integrated.
So here's, here's a couple, what I'm going to is, we have a couple of different solutions to make it safer. Okay, putting a drop-off downstairs solves a lot of the discussions that everybody had yesterday about the safe, you had a lot of discussions about a safe, or safe refuge area for people to go to. That eliminates that for the, for the retail people, it eliminates that for the medical office people, they're all going right downstairs and they can come right up to the daycare. The daycare can do the same thing if they want. They can drive downstairs, even though they're not required. There's an elevator downstairs, right here. This one goes right up to daycare. So even though daycare is not required to have an off-street loading area, and even though it's not required to have any parking, if you're not satisfied with the extra steps that Mayor Bebev took, he specifically purchased this piece, you can't use it for the medical, you're not allowed to have medical in R2A, you can't use it for the retail, you're not allowed to have retail in R2A. Daycare is the only potential use. He went out, after he purchased this piece and an extra cost, bought this with his specific intention of creating an on-site drop-off area. Now, if you're, the board is telling us that his, his doing of that put him in hot water. We have the opportunity to speak to Department of Transportation and put a separate dedicated entrance, right, a separate drop-off zone right here for the daycare, where the daycare can come into the building off the street. And they don't have to be in the parking lot or be in the building, if that's what the board would rather see. We can do that, but we thought it was better putting them up top, off-street, in a place where nobody is going through except for our own controlled traffic, and we thought it would be much safer to do so. Now, if the board agrees, that's great, if the board does, we'll do whatever the board would like, we have a lot available to us. But that's the thinking behind it. So if the board was asking yesterday, "Why do we think this works?", that's why, how we think it can work, we can, we can make it so you don't have these traffic problems up here. The only problem you would have, that you, that you express concern about, is you would have cars coming across right here, and there could be traffic control measures put in place, or there could be personnel put in place right here that would somehow protect people there. But if you said that this is uncool, you hate this, and this is horrible, this was a voluntary thing, this was done to try to make it better. He could've come in with the application with it just like this, and then we would've been just like the application I have on 152nd Street in Whitestone, which is coming up at the board pending right now, so the application approved in 2008, which is also on the Queens-Nassau border in Whitestone, which is a very suburban neighborhood, where everybody drives, it's Community Board seven, it's just unanimously approved, and that application doesn't have any off-street loading at all. It actually just has a little carve-out in front of it where the cars come in. And there they have 200 students coming to a daycare center. And I think Sheldon Lobel's acumen was at the Borough President's Office yesterday, when I was there last Thursday, with a similar kind of application. So, we're after the safety of the students, we're not trying to make an unsafe setup. We'll, we'll do whatever you tell us to make it safer.
So from what I'm hearing is there is an option of where all the valet parking and it will happen in the garage area.
Yeah, we can do that, and we came up with that idea after hearing how upset everybody was yesterday with the movement to the cars.
Can you go back to the other, thank you. So in this case, if I'm going to that facility, I will drive all the way, my car, to the cellar level.
If you're going to the medical, or if you're going to the retail, and you can even use it for the gym if you want to, okay, but there is no direct elevator access to the gym, so you gotta put on your walking shoes and walk around a little bit.
So my only concern in that-
Well, there is, but the difference-
I mean, there are many concerns, but immediately that's coming to my mind is, is the fact that, you know, people will be coming off Little Neck Parkway, there, there has to be some kind of a speed control, somebody has to stop the car, and maybe you have a stoplight.
I was whipping through here.
Yeah, you have to have a stoplight, a stop, something where you allow the pedestrians to, the, the drop-off pickup area.
We can put in a host of speed control measures, it could be a ripple bunches. I drove down Vanderbilt Avenue in Brooklyn the other day, I hit a speed bump, I thought the front end of my car was gonna come off. So we could put in 10 speed bumps and things.
Probably provide more, more pedestrian safe zones along those areas so that people can wait, especially you're thinking of kids on strollers, you know, maybe it's two parents, parents with two kids or, you know.
We could have this lit up-
All of those things need to be entered into your design.
And we're happy to do it. We're happy to do it, and I think it addresses-
Provided you, provided you meet the demand issue.
Well, the demand issue is like a whole, yeah, yeah.
The demand issue is a big one, but, so I just wanna-
But the demand issue, the very least, I could, I'm sorry, I can make it smaller. Go on, I'm sorry about it with her.
The, so I just wanna make sure I understand this. What, what you're suggesting is that all of the users of the building, aside from the daycare, would drive down themselves.
Yes.
And that there's 10 reservoir spaces, which I'm not sure, I don't think DOT allows it to be on the ramp, right? We learned that recently.
It depends on the width of the ramp.
Okay, so I, I'm not sure what DOT, but we actually had a case where they had to come back because DOT didn't allow reservoir spaces to be on the ramp. So, we don't know what to assume here.
We could look.
Right? So, so, all right, so that within the garage, you would get your 10 reservoir spaces.
That's the idea, moving everything away from the street, which was a concern, that people might back up onto the street. I mean, we were sensitive to your concern.
All right, so let me just finish the sentence and, don't talk so fast. Okay, so then the, and then the next is that the upper level there would be the area devoted entirely somehow or other to make us not freak out, at the moment we're freaked out, to the daycare center. Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's pretty much what it is right now. It's the, exactly as it is right now, except this would be gone.
What's the thing?
And this would be gone.
That would be gone.
That's the valet.
So you still have-
And instead, we'd have speed bumps all along the way and sign it, you still have these spaces here.
Those spaces for what?
Valet.
Valet for who?
The retail.
So where you're gonna have another, then you may as well have a drop-off. How are you gonna operate the valet here on the street and then operate the valet in the cellar?
The va, no, it's the same thing, the retail patron will go downstairs, the valet will just be depositing the cars here.
How do you drop, you mean they're gonna drive the cars back up the ramp?
They're gonna drive the cars down the ramp again, yeah.
That's nonsense, they're not gonna do that.
Why wouldn't they do that?
Because they're not, because that's not how humans work.
Why isn't it-
You get out of your car, and by the way, that's like, less likely to be valet, they're more likely to let you just park there. No, go ahead, just pull it right there.
Ten minutes.
Right? That's how humans work. They'll, go just park there, and then-
Or that could become the reservoir space almost.
Yes, and so, and that'll become the reservoir space. And then the other part that we talked about is, where are the sidewalks? There are no sidewalks. So the pedestrian now has absolutely no, still has nothing to protect them from being pushed around by a car.
We heard your comment on that yesterday, and we'll, we'll, we'll work on these seven spaces.
Okay, so, so we have a problem with the retail even at all parking up there?
We came up with a plan, which we're gonna get back to you, that's gonna create a walkway right here, so that if people are up here, they'll be able to traverse right here, right to the walkway, very similar to the Autozone that I showed you a second ago, which has parking in the rear. So we have a way to create a safe passageway for people to walk to the street. We'll, we'll talk about this. I, I, I'm not as pessimistic as you are, that when you drive in downstairs, the valet parks your car here. I don't know where the valet brings my car when I park a car. I've never once pulled into a parking garage and said, "No, you're parking it too far away, you'll never bring it there." So, and God knows where they park the cars when I bring a car into a garage.
Because usually they park it far away from the site, but if you park right in front of the restaurant or wherever it is, they say, "Just pull it in here."
There'll be people, you can't park here. There'll be no parking. There'll be enforced, but--
What do you mean? They'll say, "Just pull it right in here." Or, "I'll pull it right in here."
If they're not following the rules.
Valets all downstairs.
The valets are all downstairs.
So, then I'll park it right in there. It's an empty space. What was, what's gonna make me stop from parking there unless they put cones on?
Unless maybe they decide, hearing what you're saying right now, Mayor's a smart guy, so when the doctors come in at 8 o'clock in the morning, he'll fill these spots first with the doctor's cars. And they're in there all day, so you got a doctor in there all day. I, I, we can work on it. I, I think we're coming, I hope we're coming closer. I heard yesterday, a lot of concern about cars coming into the street, a lot of concerns about a lot going on with entrances and, and all different, the valet, and how all the uses getting in here, and everybody's going in here, and that people are gonna sneak in from here, and they're gonna sneak in through the back entrance and in here, and they're gonna use this. And you were very concerned, and it was all, they're gonna be doing stuff bad, and da-da-da. And now what we've come back with is showing you that, hey, we don't want that to be a potential opportunity. We're, we'll queue, we'll valet everybody from downstairs. They won't back up onto the street. Everybody was concerned about cars backing up out onto the street as they come in, conflicting traffic patterns. Commissioner Ali Brown raised a question about the circular with the conflicting traffic patterns, a lot going on there. I, I really think we've come up with something here that addresses a lot of what you spent a half hour yesterday going through, absent your belief that these won't actually be used the right way. And maybe I could give you some more information to make you more comfortable. I'm gonna give my apology note to Ms. L'Oreal for, Monroe for, for saying what I said before. I'll give them both at the same time.
I, I think--
Why wouldn't, why wouldn't--
Sorry. I, I think, I personally, I think there is a potential, but you really need to hammer out every issue that you're hearing here and make sure that this does not get misused, like, you know, uh, and, and make sure that it, that parking space is not gonna be used as a reservoir, or somebody just dropping the car off and calling the valet guy, saying, "Hey, I left my car here. Take it downstairs." None of those things.
We'll try to work out some things to convince you and show you, give you assurances. But I hope I'm communicating, what I'm trying to communicate is that what was perceived, and has been perceived by Richard and, and Community Board 13 as a negative with all this stuff here, we were trying to make something better. We were trying to improve it. And I understand why everybody's got their position, Richard and his board, and we're entitled to have their position, but we were trying to make it better.
So, I would just like to add that we're learning more and more that if we impose these kinds of loosey conditions, you know, a promise not to do this, it doesn't work.
Yeah.
So, it's architecture that works. So, you need to show us with architecture how this is actually going to be controlled. It can't be a promise that the valet, you know--
Yeah, so maybe what I could do, I'm sitting here talking, what I'm thinking maybe is if you put some kind of fencing or some kind of barrier here so that cars can only go in in a parallel, in a one behind the other direction or something to prevent somebody, but I'm understanding what you're saying.
It needs to be an architectural solution, and the architecture speaks. We need to see the architecture speak so we don't come up with the obvious responses that we came up and--
I understand.
We know that's the entrance actually to the medical office, 'cause it takes you right to the elevator.
I get it.
That's architecture speaking. And unfortunately, the building is already built, and so I do ask, what was the Plan B? We, the Plan B being none of the special permits other than perhaps the PCEs--
It'd be limited to the as-of-right uses. So, the not-for-profit without sleeping accommodations is demand for that kind of use, isn't the man for, for other kinds of light manufacturing uses. There are those uses that are out there, and that's what he would have to live with. That was his Plan B. But as you could imagine, it's very expensive to hold on to a piece of land in New York City, and it's, takes an application a long time to get through the process. And, uh, let's go to what he was thinking. I mean, the uses that are going in here, and Commissioner Shadet, you said it yesterday, what is it, what were they thinking? What are they thinking? The uses that are going on these days in New York City are medical, food, and health. Those are the three strongest things left in New York City that people are doing all the time. You see the gyms, you're in here all the time with the gyms. You see the medical offices, we all see them everywhere. And you, you see the food. The food is everywhere. Grubhub, Uber delivers, everything is food, 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 food. That's what we're proposing to include here. That's normal, modern-day America now. That's every single shopping center you go into, there's an urgent care, there's a medical office, there's, there's a gym, there's a Planet Fitness. I mean, New Year's Eve, Planet Fitness was at Times Square, everybody was wearing purple, right? On New Year's Eve, everybody watched the Clarkson New Year's Eve this year, that, I mean, the, the, I couldn't believe it, the Planet Fitness stuff. I mean, that's how big Fitness is. So, we're not trying to do anything, it's so cockamamie here. Everybody yesterday was like, "Oh, my God, you're doing three major things, you're doing--
No, no, it's cockamamie because, as I always say to the architects, I wish there were an architect here, the architecture speaks. And when the architecture shows that it's poorly laid out and that the, the uses are in conflict with one another, that's cockamamie. So, it's not to say that an individual use is problematic--
It's the combination.
It's an individual use when it's badly planned. And, you know, even the non-architects on the board said, "What is going on?"
Yeah, well, I think moving the, the parking to the basement, the valet helps, cellar helps a lot. So, the next thing, you're not gonna like the conversation, though, I'm anticipating, so I'm kinda softening the blow, which is the, the staircase discussion. So, I know--
But that's not relevant to--
Oh, we're not up, you don't wanna talk about that? Or you wanna--
Isn't that the medical, I mean, that, isn't that the school-related subject? 'Cause we, we're trying to keep--
Okay, so I'll come to that. We could talk about that after.
Okay, so, did, so the question is, I know we want, we wove in and out, and that's again, during, in the course of these proceedings, I wanna remind the listeners to the video that you need to listen to this video and the two subsequent videos because we're going to end up blending the two, the three subjects together because we can't do otherwise, they're all related, okay? So, but, did we miss anything specifically related to the parking that we talked about yesterday?
I don't think you did. I listened to it three times.
Oh, landscaping, the landscaping, ordering the outdoor parking area from the residential--
I'm landscaping my house right now, and it's an unfortunate, miserable task. We will put as many flowering, thick green, R variety, everything you wanna see, the fencing, whatever you wanna see. I, the arch, the architecture representatives here, Zach, he will, and Mayor is the owner. We'll come back to you with a landscaping plan for that area that I, will look like a botanical garden.
I do have a question about this, the parking in the R2A.
Yes.
Um, as you know, it can't be used for any of the uses other than the daycare.
Mm-hmm.
This is, or may, ambulatory care's not permitted in an R2A--
R2A, no.
Right? So, how in the world are you gonna prevent the valets from not taking advantage of that nice parking?
We're going to, listen, we are doing this, I can't say it enough, voluntarily to make it better for the daycare. You have a very committed owner here who's got more than one property, exactly the same in Queens. He's sitting right here, I could testify to you. We are going to have leasehold documents in place, we are going to have signage in place. The daycare's facility is paying for the right to utilize that space. They will be enforcing it. It's a small area with basically just five or six or seven businesses there, plus the doctors. We will, doctors are generally rule-abiding, so we don't really have too much of a problem with them. We will enforce the rules on our property, the same way everybody else does. I drive all over the place, I, and I'm sure you do too, and you pull up, and there are reserved spaces that are reserved for certain members of an office, president's, it's just, you know, people reserve spaces. So, once everybody gets into, into the groove here, I don't, I, I don't think that'll be, that won't be the problem. You're not, the daycare won't tolerate it, Mayor won't tolerate it, we won't tolerate it. We'd ask you to bring in enforcement action if you wanted to, but it, everybody's to, listen, at the end of the day, the parking counts, the, the demand parking counts show that this, this parking garage is not even gonna be more than, let's talk big picture. I mean, forget about the demand for the, for the individual uses like we were bickering about, which I don't like to bicker, but about the 38 spaces and the 31 and the demand, all that nonsense. Forget about that. If you add everything up, the peak demand is at, how much is the parking lot? 56 spaces.
Depending on how--
Yeah, so even if they're wrong, there's 114 spaces. So, even if, even if Sydney is not as smart as I give her credit for, and I think she's very smart, even if she's, her math is so wrong, she says 56 is peak demand, so she's off by 30%, and it's 80. There's still 30 extra spaces. So, what everybody's talking about, about this place being crammed in all the time, I mean, I'm telling you, this is in eastern Queens, this is--
Okay, we've already talked about the demand, right?
This is, we've got numbers--
You need to get through--
We'll go back to--
--the way--
That's a bad subject for me. Bad things came out of that, so I don't wanna--
Right, okay. All right, are there speakers about the parking garage?
Probably Mr.--
There's an elected official--
Please. Oh, you can bring him or Fire Department--
Fire Department--
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Good afternoon, John Daly, Fire Department. I didn't fully get a chance to review this application, but I do have a question. Are there stackers currently in place?
Are there stackers in place, ma'am?
Yes. Okay. The Fire Department and the Department of Buildings, OTCR, has not reviewed the parking stackers. They are required. I just need to borrow your--
Mr. Daly's? Oh, you're just turning it around, okay. And then take the mic if you're gonna walk over--
Yes, ma'am. One issue I have is that, this room here is a fire pump room, which we need to use in the event that we need to pressurize the stamp pipe system or the sprinkler. There's no access. Two stairs that go down, that leads down to the cellar, while they're adjacent to each other, we have no way to access this, the opposite area of the floor that to fight a fire in a car. I, so I will be submitting a formal letter of objection to this application, and one that does need to be filed with the Department, the Fire Department and with the Department of Buildings. But we have a major issue, again, no access to the fire pump room, and of course, no access to the corner of Jericho and Little Neck.
Okay, a question. When you say access, you mean corridor access or equipment access?
We, we would prefer a stair in that corner location of Jericho and Little Neck, so we can operate, we can stage, bring our hoses down, have an opportunity to connect into the stamp pipe riser that would be in the stair, and then be able to fight a fire going from that corner of Jericho and Little Neck inward.
Just a, a question, so, you know, the building's built. Is this something that would've been picked up through the DOB review process?
Yes, ma'am. Should've, the plan examiner should've issued the, uh--
Plant examiner should've.
The objection that to file with OTCR.
So, we do need to then look at what the DOB approved plan, because the DOB approved plan, or the plans that has been submitted as a pride, doesn't seem to address--
No, but we're not sure we're seeing the DOB approved plan. We don't know.
Correct. I had, and I spoke with Battalion Chief in our office, told him about this application, you know, I was not sure at first if stacker parking had to be filed, and he said, "Yes, they are." And so, we checked, I, our, our internal system for plan examination filing, I found none. So, if we don't have it, OTCR does not have it. Because we are, communicate with them very extensively with these applications.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, other speakers, please.
There's an elected official.
Mm-hmm.
Gedench. We can take it and pass it if you want. That's fine. Do you wanna copy so you can read? Okay. And then we pass it. See ya.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is David Noe. I work for Councilmember Barry Gudencheck, Director of Constituent Services there in the office. I'm here today on behalf of the council member. I have the following testimony, which concerns BSA calendar number 2018-136BZ, 2018-137BZ, and 145BZ. And this is a testimony, again, from the council member. As a New York City council member representing the 2030 Council District, I speak in opposition to the three above-referenced applications to the Board of Standards and Appeals to allow a reduction in the parking for, for an as-of-right medical facility, as well as the operation of an educational facility and a physical cultural establishment in a C8-1 district. The property in question is situated at the intersection of Little Neck Parkway and Jamaica Avenue, an intersection with a high volume of traffic in all directions. Traffic circulation there is problematic because of the street layout. The property sits at a peculiar angle with a single ingress and egress located on Little Neck Parkway, and is accessible only by southbound traffic. There is limited parking around the building, and only metered parking available adjacent to the building. Thus, the property owner's request for reduction of parking with the addition of an educational facility and a PCE would further exacerbate the existing traffic congestion, creating an unsafe condition. I also have concerns about the property owner's variance application to allow an educational facility with 190 students in this commercial zone. Sharing the same building with medical offices, a gym, and retail offices is not an ideal situation for school security and thus deserves serious scrutiny. Citing the three uses within the same building could create logistical and safety concerns, especially given that a playground is planned for the roof on the fifth floor of the building. Lastly, because of the nature of this intersection, the drop-off and pickup zone for the students is proposed to be sited inside the property, next to the quad-tiered parking system. This configuration could create hazardous conditions for students and parents and add to the traffic that would build up on Little Neck Parkway, creating chaos as cars pull out, pull out of the single available driveway. Following a review of the application documents, Community Board 13Q, 13Q Queens voted overwhelmingly to reject the three aforementioned proposals. I stand with the local community board in oppositions, in opposition to the applications. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Please come.
I was gonna say good evening, I'm sorry. Good afternoon. I'm Eric Palatnick's best friend, Rich Hellenbrett.
That was said in jest.
Said in jest. My name is Richard Hellenbrett. I chair Community Board 13's Land Use Committee. I'm also a resident of Bellrose, the immediate area in question for 47 years, roughly. So, I know the traffic conditions, I know the situations. I will not read the, the testimony that I submitted, but there have been many things brought up. I have not seen what the current plan is, and I'm not sure I understand exactly where it's going. I know that the Building Department's objection in the original permits was to require valet parking, and that's why we, you know, we went along with the valet parking issue. We did have serious objections to the four-high stackers because, not for visual purposes, because they just wouldn't work. Nobody would ever use them. There would always be problems getting the cars and retrieving cars from a four-high stacker, especially when things don't go the way you plan them to go. The plan that has all of stackers automated in the basement was a serious issue to us. I think it was, you know, a valiant effort perhaps for them to try to come up with a solution to a serious problem, but I don't think it would work. To have that many cars in a small place and try to get the valets to run back and forth to the upstairs and the downstairs and retrieve cars. There's only apparently about three spaces available for the valet queue on, on grade, and that would always be backed up. I'm very familiar with Little Neck Parkway. It is constantly a problem, especially in that southbound direction with a very long traffic light at the bottom of the hill. In some of the renderings, it doesn't look like a hill, but it is a fairly steep hill. And there are stores at the top of the hill that require spaces for their own use. To have a 120-foot driveway accommodating incoming and outgoing, and including some parking for the retail spots is the la, the last plan that was presented to me in about five minutes at the community, at the Borough President's Hearing, that would just cause additional problems. I cannot imagine how a car could come in, make a U-turn, and go back out without using the valets, either if they're the parent of a child going into the R8, the R2A space or going into the retail spaces. I can't see how they could manipulate and get through traffic onsite, never mind trying to get back onto Little Neck Parkway. I have, you know, great problems with, with all of those issues, and it's just gonna back up into the community. In terms of the parking spaces available, yes, there are some parking spaces available almost all the time on Jericho Turnpike, but people aren't going to be going to Jericho Turnpike. They're going to be going to the proper parking location for this, for this site. The parking in the neighborhood is very limited. There are private houses, very closely spaced together. Most people park on the street, and there's a driveway for most of the houses. So, along Little Neck Parkway, there's very little parking. Between bus stops and parking spaces, driveways, I should say, there's very little space left over. So, I, I don't see anything there. And you go deeper into Bellrose, you're getting a very long walk just to come, bring your kids, or go to the PCE, or any of the other uses that are in the building. It all just doesn't make sense.
I have one question before you finish. On Jericho, you said there are spaces available on Jericho, but people won't be parking on Jericho. Why is that?
I bet people will be going to the building, to the parking lot, and I think not to Jericho. After a while, or if they're employees, perhaps they'll park on Jericho, but it is metered parking and they'll have to be running out and feeding meters. And some of those spots, I think, as the Cube Smart gets more and more popular, people might be parking on the street more often to get to that. Other than that, there's a U-Haul there. Not too many people are going to park on the street for that. So yes, there are some spots between going westbound from this site down to the local shopping mall that's down there. But really, that might be 10 spots, 15 spots. I've never counted them.
And how many blocks? I'm sorry. And how many blocks would you say there's 15 spots?
How many blocks?
How many? The distance between a radius, if you could?
I really don't know, but I would think most of the spots that would be available would be on Jericho Turnpike. And again, that's metered parking. Very few spots within Belrose, in the residential area of Belrose. I think the one thing that really hurt this building was the addition of the fourth floor. They probably had enough space in the building to accommodate the parking that would be required for the three floors when they purchased the additional spot, the R2A spot. That gave them the additional FAR to go up another floor and I don't think there's enough space for parking. That just created a lot more space. That was originally not a four-story building. So that, I think, changed the whole building.
This is an Azerfright building as it has been built up.
I don't understand how you move floor area from the R2A to the commercial zone at all. And even if you could, how you can move it to the commercial zone where you're mostly a commercial building?
You cannot.
I think this...
This might be a misunderstanding?
I think the best way to resolve this is to review the DOB-approved plan.
Yes.
The DOB-approved plan would be built pursuant to the Azerfright requirement and R2 has much lower floor area. So any moving from there would, A, is not permitted because it's a residential use versus a manufacturing. You cannot move floor area from two different use groups, two different zoning districts where different uses are allowed. And B, it's not going to benefit it. It's like .5 FAR, so it's going to be more at a loss.
Let me back. I may be wrong. That was my understanding at the time when they added that additional floor. That it seemed to be related to the acquisition of the additional R2A space. But perhaps I was wrong.
Hope not. The problems are way bigger than our special...
Yeah, I think it's more...
My problem is the effect on the community, the character of the community, the traffic that it's going to generate and dangerous conditions. I've already gotten the DOT to approve putting up bollards to avoid anybody northbound on Little Neck Parkway to make a turn into the, across traffic into the parking lot. They've agreed to put up bollards to prevent that and I think that's got to be either going in or going out. This can only have entrance going southbound. And so far, I think it's really going to be a problem with the community.
Okay. Thank you very much. I really appreciate you coming and your testimony. Please, please, sir. Thank you very much. Come on. I'm sorry, Mr. Palatnick. There's one of the speakers.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi. My name is Frank Olton and I'm here as a resident in the immediate area. I live within, I guess, about six or seven houses of where the building is going up. My main concern in coming is that I wanted to speak predominantly about parking, which has been discussed, I know, and to some degree about traffic. I want to verify what Richard said, that on days on Little Neck Parkway, that the traffic looking to make the turn on Little Neck Parkway, which would have to go right past this building, extends probably a block and a half, but sometimes longer, and presents a very difficult situation. But more specifically on parking, I really want to take, I really want to question the statement that parking is readily available in the area. I know there was a photograph submitted, which I haven't seen, and I think that you can get a picture at some point in time, which will show just about anything and I'm sure there is a time when parking spots are available. But I do want to indicate a couple of things. One, because of where we are located, we already have the parking situation aggravated by people who go to the Long Island Railroad and park their cars on our streets. So therefore, besides the regular residential parking, we have a second influx of parking there already. And I also want to point out that since the building has begun, including the building on the storage facility that was referred to before, since we had workers coming into the area, workers have chosen to park on these streets. They have not chosen to park on Jericho Turnpike. They have chosen to park on 87 Drive on 254th Street. And even with just the workers, there's a noticeable difference and parking has become more difficult. Now, the normal expectation would be that when the building is finished, the workers will be done and that would be resolved. But if there is an overflow parking onto the streets, it won't be resolved. And the last point I want to make is that there are days, if you, if the street I live in, 87 Drive, as you go in from the building, if you go on 87 Drive from Little Neck Parkway, you can go two, two and a half blocks and not find a parking space. If you go on 254th Street, you can go a block north and not find a parking space. The situation is tough right now for parking and I don't think it is as categorized, that there are lots of spots available. And basically, that's what I wanted to add.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Any other speakers on this? Okay.
Hi, I'm Sidney Kepin again with Philip Habib and Associates. I did want to speak a little bit on our on-street parking utilization that we did conduct. So based off of our cumulative peak parking demand for the building, for the proposed uses, which again was the retail use, the medical office, the gym, PCE use, and the daycare. As mentioned before, we, our calculations show that the overall building peak parking accumulation would peak at 56 spaces from, I believe it was...
Sorry, that's based on the Bayside Medical Facility?
For the parking accumulation rates, those were provided by DOT for the medical office facility and the other uses were used from previously approved EISs.
Right. So those are the 104 per thousand square feet. Right. But when you arrive at the 54 peak demands, your 56 peak demand, you're talking about using modal splits that come from the Bayside medical facilities?
Correct. And just saying, so we, you know, we did listen to the review session last night, as previously mentioned multiple times, and including with using the DOT modal splits, that would increase our parking accumulation to 59 vehicles from 1:00 to 2:00 p.m. So not much of an increase.
I'm a little confused now.
Can you again repeat it? So you're saying using the Bayside Medical Facility modal split, it is 56?
56, yes.
Using the DOT's modal split,
Yes.
the peak demand would be 59?
59, correct.
So then what was all the discussion with Mr. Palatnick about it going over?
That was for the individual medical office use.
Because there's 31 spots dedicated to medical office use, of which the peak demand is around 38. So they're exceeding the subcategory demand, but not the overall demand? Okay. All right. We'll see this in a submission because now I'm completely confused because for whatever reason, there was very aggressive behavior on the part of Mr. Palatnick, for which I hope we get an apology. That seems to stand for the proposition that when the math is done, there is an adequate parking in the building to meet demand.
Yes.
Right? So I don't want to talk about the demand anymore, but we're going to get a submission based on studies using DOT standards.
Correct.
Just to be clear. We're not going to talk about it anymore. That's the instruction to Ms. Kepin. Okay?
Yes. And to the point, first of all, I do apologize. I did not mean to get aggressive with the board. I just had a strong, strenuous disagreement in the way that we were doing it, so I do apologize. The testimony of Richard Hellenbrecht is very telling as well and I think that Commissioner Shaveta, you asked him the radius of where these parking spaces. He testified and he affirmed what I've said and what our traffic consultant said, which is we're not relying on the street system for any on-street parking, not seeking to do that. However, if somebody were to come to use any of the proposed retail spaces, what we are suggesting to the board is the entire strip of parking spaces in front of the building is empty most of the time, not utilized. That's what Mr. Hellenbrecht just said.
Well, in front of the building, half of it, 90 feet of it or something, is bus stop. Yeah, it says it in your own material.
Yeah. A portion of the front of the building is bus stop. The bus stop stops right here. The rest of the block from this point in this direction, in westerly direction to the shopping center is what I've observed as being rarely utilized. And that's what Mr. Hellenbrecht was just talking about when he was talking about the area in front of the building as being rarely utilized. So what I was simply trying to communicate to the board was that we're not, everybody was very concerned that we're causing all this mayhem and stuff and that the retail and where they're going to go. I'm just trying to say it's a practical matter. If somebody were coming in to grab a cup of coffee or something from one of the retail stores here, they do have a space that they could pull up out front and there's ample on-street parking.
I think that the issue was that the parking on Jericho is a pay parking and that people always, of course, prefer not to pay and so they will drive around the block really for a long time, just so they don't have to pay the $2 or whatever it costs.
That's my father.
And they don't have the quarters or whatever it is you need to have to use.
George Costanza, "No self-respecting Costanza pays for parking." That's a quote from Seinfeld. So I understand what you're suggesting, but there is a lot of spaces out front. If somebody was feeling like they could splurge on a parking meter, there is parking spots. There are parking spaces.
Okay. Did you want to add something? Okay. Any other comments about the parking? So I want to, we'll set a date after for all of them?
Yeah, that'd be great.
And so would I like to close this? I mean, not close. Move on to the next one. Yes, okay.
Item number 2, 2018-137BZ, 25177 Jericho Turnpike, Queens. Is considered still under oath?
They're all under oath. You're all under oath. Don't forget. Okay, I want to just preface this as we open this hearing because this is how people listen to a video. This is case number 2, 2018-137BZ. Please listen to the prior video for the prior number one case, which is 2018-136BZ, because things we said in that video are relevant to what we will be talking about now. Okay?
Hello, Eric Palatnick again. Thanks again for reviewing the application. This application is for the daycare component of the building at 25177 Jericho Turnpike. And what we've been talking about, just to bring the record up to the same spot, is amending the parking plan so that the patrons of the daycare will be the only people up at the top portion of the property and the daycare will have its own dedicated entrance at the rear of the building where patrons of the daycare will be able to enter.
Different from what we're looking at now or?
Nope, just what you're looking at right now.
Can you turn to the floor plan?
Sure. Unfortunately, the floor plan is not on here.
No, you don't have it up there? Okay.
They didn't put it up here. I apologize. But this is the entrance to the daycare right here at this portion. This is the primary entrance to the daycare. And once they come in, as was pointed out yesterday by everybody at the board, there was a lot of talk, where do they walk into? Well, the patron would walk in through the infants are right at the front. There's a reason why the infants are there and that's because state law requires infants to be at the ground level of a daycare facility, which makes sense because they can't walk and they can't get downstairs and we can't get them downstairs so easily. So they're at the front. The facility is designed in a way that is in accordance with all state regulations. So the placement of the daycare, of all the uses within the space, has all been designed in a way that complies with the state requirements for daycare facilities. So I know there was some concern yesterday that people might walk past infants. Is there anything improper about that? To our knowledge, there's nothing running afoul of any state codes or licensing requirements for daycare facilities by having it set up like this. And the reason why we have it set up like this is why we just suggested. The other comment that I'd like to address that the board made yesterday...
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Is the architect here?
The architect could not make it today. We apologize.
So what I want to say is everything that we're talking about from now forward is architecture. And so you're going to be telling us, you know, whatever it is you think about, how it's done. But in fact, it's the architect that needs to be here because we work, as you know, on many schools and daycare centers and we know what the standards are and we know what's reasonable. And we know that, for example, there is a lobby. There's security. You enter into a lobby with security and then the security sends you to the elevator banks or the stairs and you never have every single person in the building bypassing the tiniest children in the building all day long, hundreds of kids coming and going and so on because we also see that this is an after-school program. So it's kids coming for maybe an hour, for a couple of hours and a couple come in here and there, right? This is actually different than most of the daycares that we see and all of them have a lobby where you disperse. So I don't need to talk about this with you because you're not the architect, right? So I would say that all of our comments about the interaction between people and the fact that there's no place to put the strollers except by blocking means of egress, et cetera. Sorry?
Do you want to do a submission date?
Yeah. So I would say that without the architect here, it's kind of a useless conversation, but that all of our comments stand. You've got an interaction with other uses that are inappropriate. You've got access to, you've claimed devoted access to the daycare from the drive-up, but meanwhile, it's obvious to me that the medical office is going to be using those roots that take you right to the elevator, et cetera, et cetera. And as I said before, architecture speaks. So this idea of having a condition that says, oh, I promise we won't use that emergency egress as the entrance to the main front door doesn't work here. And the owner proceeded at his own risk choosing to build the building first or build it out first and then come to us for a special permit. So unless the owner is willing to undo quite a lot of problems with construction, at the moment, you don't have a solution. And even sharing, I mean, I think it's great to the idea of eliminating the medical office that's on the second floor because it should not be on the same floor as a daycare center and that will reduce your parking requirement. And at the moment, it's sharing the staircases. And again, only the architect can speak to that, but you cannot devote a staircase, two staircases, to one use. Those staircases must be available to the users, both for the fact that there's hardly any elevators in this building. There are two elevators separate from, with separate entrances. They're not available to the users. So if one breaks down, you're out of luck. It's called using the stair. We all have been in buildings where the one elevator breaks down, et cetera, et cetera. So these are all architectural questions. So if there's anything that you want to talk about that's not architecture...
Well, I could address a couple of things and thank you for giving me the chance. The first thing is the stair, you mentioned the emergency corridor that you were concerned that people were going to utilize.
Isn't that a bad architecture?
Okay. No, it's not. Because we just talked about the fact of that we're going to be redesigning things so that the daycare is the sole user right here and they have their own entrance that's right here. So I don't know why anybody would...
Because people are going to be parking, they're going to be bringing their cars down into the cellar, right? And then you're saying they're going to take the elevator right up?
That's what people...
What if they don't?
If they don't take the elevator up, they could take the stairs up, but they're not going to walk up the ramp and walk to the corner of the ramp and go in that exit, that entrance over there, which I think is what you're alluding to. That's not going to happen. So I can give you that piece of information. And then with respect to the architecture, the building is built and we heard the board's comments and I know how the board feels about having a staircase. I think what you're referring to is the concern that you raised at the review session yesterday. It was a staircase A is a shared egress stairway, emergency egress.
No, inconvenient stair. You have one elevator.
We have one elevator, right.
When the elevator is broken, it happens all the time. When an elevator is broken, the only way to get to the use is stair A for both the medical office and for the daycare.
Okay.
Oh, you mean from the parking? Yeah, how does the retail? If you take the elevator A, then you have to go out the corridor.
So just give me one second.
Okay. Whereas, but stair elevator C is inside the gym. So, oh, sorry.
That's only for the gym.
Where's the other elevator?
There's none.
There is none. That's it. Okay. So there's one elevator for everybody. For the daycare, there is a separate elevator.
If you want to speak, you have to come up to the mic and please state your name.
We can read the plans, but yeah.
Hi, Mayor Habib, Madam Chair. Thank you for letting me speak. The daycare has an exclusive entrance. The medical tenants cannot enter through the daycare vestibule. It's separate.
That's not what we're saying. So you're not, so we need to look at the drawings while we speak, that we know that the daycare has its own vestibule. What's adjacent to the daycare, and you wouldn't know this because you don't come to our hearings where we talk all the time about adults mixing with young children. We don't want any chance of that, of stranger adults, right? What you have is two things labeled exit, which to me says convenience entrance, both to a medical office and to whatever that is that takes you up, that's stair B. So that's the PCE, right? So the, or the medical office, depends on how you look at it, right?
So as I understand, stair B would be used by medical, daycare, and PCE as an emergency. Stair A would be used by medical and daycare and daycare exclusively, medical only for emergency.
Correct.
That's how you have it in your statement. That's how you have it in your statement.
Correct, and that's the way it's allowed to be used in the DOB, and we have multiple buildings, that's the way it's designed, two stairwells.
But don't forget, what we're talking about is a daycare center where we don't have children and strangers mix, okay?
We're talking about co-mingling of the two uses, and that's what we're trying to avoid.
They're not co-mingled here, except for the emergency exits, which are by co...
Okay, and that's what the chair's concern is, is that we prefer to have everything that revolves around the daycare and the children be exclusive to that use.
In a multi-use building, that's not possible. They have to use the emergency exits, because the DOB does not require individual exits for daycare or school.
Oh, we're not saying requirement.
I just want to add one more thing, I'm so sorry. You were asking about the one elevator being broken, or whatever, if there's an issue with the daycare elevator, they do have, they can go through the stairwell to get to the other elevator.
Which stair? Elevator, stair A, right?
Correct, if they had to use that elevator.
So, just to pick up on that, okay, so they go to stair A, let's say both elevators are broken, just to throw that out, because they're back-to-back, and that means is that they're working off of a similar machine room. So both elevators are broken, medical office and daycare are both required to use stair A as their only convenience stair. Let me put this in perspective for you. We see so many schools, and we see many schools inside of buildings with other uses. And what we say is, you can't have a convenience stair for the school that's shared by anyone else. And so what the schools do is, they build a separate convenience stair that isn't a fire stair, it's not required by DOB, it's the interior stair for the school. And that way, we know that the fire stair, or the convenience stair for the other use, cannot be accessed except with a key card to get into the school. At the moment, you don't have anything like that, and you're saying, oh, it's not required by DOB, but you're here for a special permit for a daycare.
I understand, thank you.
Okay.
We do have access control.
But you're not listening to what I just said?
I think, I would strongly suggest, Mr. Platnik, you explain how we look at schools. You recently did one in Staten Island, where we were trying to separate out the office space from the school, and how we were very careful that there are separate accessways. And here, the problem is that you have the portion of the ground floor, and then, for daycare, and then the third floor for daycare, in between, you have the gym and the medicals. So even having a separate staircase that is exclusively for the daycare becomes problematic, because you're then traversing through a section of a floor where there is no daycare-related operation.
Well, in addition to which, don't forget, the third floor has medical and daycare on the same floor. So there are only access for a convenience stair.
And I'm saying, even if you were to have a convenience stair, there's a convenience stair that will start on the first floor, second floor, there is no use of the daycare, and then you have to go all the way to the...
It's a lockout. The second floor, you're locked out of, so there would be no re-entry. So you have a convenience stair, no re-entry on the second floor. That's how you would solve that problem.
Here's the other thing, I know you said at 4741 earlier about the children, toddlers being on the first floor, but with the exits, you're still running an issue with it, because those exits have to be monitored by staff in 4741.
No, that's okay.
That's what they use to say, you can't have joint exits between two separate uses. So I'm not sure how one is a group and the other isn't.
I don't think this is really a useful conversation without the architect, who would understand what the issues are, and then would be able to respond with drawings. But I just want to reiterate that the entrance condition doesn't work by having all the people go right through the little kids. The isolation of uses doesn't work. The idea of sharing a medical office on the same floor as a daycare that shares the same staircase does not work. There's so many things that don't work, that, you know, my comments continue to be that this is not an appropriate use in this building, because the architecture shows us it's not working, okay? And to talk about, more about architecture with you, I don't think it's helpful, okay?
Can we have a sound project manager?
That's the one that you said was a good sample in Staten Island. You brought up the case as well.
Yeah, 1441.
South Avenue.
I'm familiar with that.
Showing the plans, the RFI plans.
I'm familiar with it. The reason why I'm not saying, okay, let's wait for the architects, I don't mind doing, is because we don't desire to add that extra staircase that you're asking for. We don't desire to do that. Let me explain why the conversation I'd like to have, is I just passed up 1751 Park Avenue, which is BSA calendar number 14414BZ. That's an application for Bailey House, which Bailey House provides social services to men, women, and children living with HIV and AIDS.
Oh, sorry, this was a really bad one to pick.
Why? Why?
I would just suggest you not go here on this one. I would just, for your betterment, just like skip this one. The conversation that the board had about this particular case taught the board a lot about how to proceed with these cases, right?
Yep, 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 yep.
So I would say, it's a poor choice, and just take my word for it, let's move on, okay?
But, hold on, hold on one second, just so I can understand. Did you educate me?
Trying to help you, Mr. Platnik. Sometimes it's better to let things unsaid.
I trust you, so I'll keep my mouth.
We're moving away from this case, because the case will not help you.
Okay, so let's, thank you. So what I would like to say then is just this, and I'll leave it at that, and then we could figure out what we're going to do. We don't want to provide the extra staircase, because we don't feel we're required to under the building code in the city of New York. We have a letter which we could submit to you from the architect stating that we do comply with the building code. We understand that the board is concerned that there may be some health, safety, or general welfare issue to the children in the event of an elevator being down, but our position is that we are being held by virtue of the fact that our property is located within a C8 zone, which triggers the school's special permit. By implying this condition, we are being treated much differently than every other daycare use in the city, which is not required to have its own...
You're absolutely right. Go forth to an R4 district and go make a daycare center, right? You're not required to come here for a daycare center.
Yeah, that's our argument.
You're absolutely right, but once you come here, then again, we have an obligation to make sure that the use is safe, right, for the children. And so if you don't want another agency, other than the Department of Health and the Department of School Safety, if they get involved in an as-of-right case, I don't actually know, then go forth. But the second that you come to BSA, we are entitled to look at everything, and you can't tell us what the parameters of our view are. And by the way, you know, we didn't even get into school safety issues yet, Department of Transportation has become quite strict about the schools, and we don't even know where they're going to go on this.
Well, that was where I was going to go. We'd like to refer it out to school safety, because, great, because we do feel safe. We'd also like to opine with the New York State, at the state level, and we'd like to communicate with them about this issue of the health and safety, because I'm sure this is not the first time somebody has raised the issue of children and the mixing of other uses. And with your consent, we would like to have a joint conversation with your board, with the state, to discuss the concept of daycare spaces, and if they have any concern about the concern that you're raising.
So we love the idea of having the Board of Ed, or what is it called, the Children's Services that looks at these things. We want them to look at it, in fact, we often send them the plans for the daycare centers, but don't misunderstand, the board has discretion to look at the issues that it finds of concern, whether or not another agency finds it concerning, okay?
I guess what I'm asking is, would it make the board feel comfortable if the agency that's charged specifically, not with zoning, but with the health, safety, and welfare of children and daycares, if they opined on the plan, and they were okay?
You heard what I said. We often reach out to them for their opinion, within the parameters of whatever it is they look at. We look at other things in addition, okay? So it does not deprive of us of our discretion and our viewpoint, okay?
Okay, fair enough.
And we are always more than, it's more than that we welcome other agencies, we invite them, and we want to hear from them, but that's not the only place, that's not the only criteria that are under consideration.
Fair enough.
Okay? All right, so we need to, I don't know if there's any other...
There were, you had more questions, unrelated to architecture. You had a question about...
Okay, I just want to throw in that I think I missed it on the prior, that I want the parking, the traffic analysis to include a level of service analysis, which is not in the current EAS. So it's level of service, whether or not it's triggered by seeker, it's triggered by our review of the impact, the environmental impacts.
You know what that means?
Yeah, level of service for the intersections.
Both applications?
Well, they're all related to each other, so you need to take in all of the uses that are proposed, and the impact on level of service. So we think the highest impact on level of service is daycare plus PCE plus medical facility. Okay, that'll be the worst-case scenario. Okay.
So you raised a question yesterday on the daycare, relating to the licensing of it. There were some questions of, why don't we have a license? There was a lot of discussion, there was some sort of, it sounded like a little bit of back and forth, where some people were surprised that we don't have a license yet, or...
No, 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 you misunderstood. No, no, no. What you did is, you said, we qualify in the matter of the 7319 threshold to be a school, a zoning resolution school, and your materials said we're a school, because here's a sample of a license from another facility. So we don't know anything about the other facility, but in addition to which, we don't know if that other facility handles children who are five to 12 years old. And I had, this time, didn't have the time to read carefully through Section 47.03 of the New York City Health Code, to find out what daycare we're used to, this idea of five and under, but we don't have experience with this after-school program, and whether that's characterized as a 47.03 after, what is it called, childcare program? So maybe it's something else, and so we just need to understand, how does that thing fit within the definition of a zoning resolution school?
All right, so we'll give you some more knowledge on that, so that you guys have what you need. I think the final question you raised related to the search that was done for the location. We'll give you back a bunch more information. Children of America is anxious to be in this neighborhood, serving this geographic area. We gave you the radius that they were looking, they were looking for a couple of years. We will give you more details on what they did and who they spoke to. But the reason we're making this application is because this is where we want to be in this geographic area, and there was nothing else available to them, so we'll make that more clear.
So if they've been looking, it means they've been speaking to real estate agents, right? So you should get it.
Their broker, yeah, their broker has been actively involved, the gentleman who wrote the letter that was submitted to you. So we will communicate back with them, and we will get the information from them.
Okay. What else?
Think that...
See whether there are any notes that aren't architecture. No, I don't think so. And Fire Department, do you want to speak to this? Because that's the other subject, which is Architecture and Fire Department and the Department of Buildings, it's a daycare center on the third floor and roof, right?
John Daly, Fire Department. First, I would like to apologize for not sending in a comment to the board prior to this hearing. This morning, did have an opportunity to talk to a deputy chief who's responsible for daycares and after-school programs. His first objection, of course, was the use of the roof as a playground. As per Article 37, no daycare is permitted above the third floor. So the owners would be required to obtain a variance from the Department of Health, Department of Buildings, and the Fire Department.
That's a section right after they say no infants on the first floor, right?
If the variance is granted, next problem is, we need Fire Department access from the exterior to that roof area. Of course, we do have setbacks, so we have to kind of sit down with our Fire Department access roof unit, and discuss that a little further, and I'll provide that information to the board. And the third issue we have is at the first floor, exiting out of the building. Two exits, both exit out into a driveway. In the event we have to respond to the building with our trucks and ambulances, it's going to be a traffic nightmare. I did speak on the previous case to the owner, we are scheduling a meeting together, a site visit, so we can discuss all these issues, which I'll also inform the board of. So right now, those are three issues that the Fire Department has with respect to the daycare.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Wow. Fire stairs, true. Is that even allowed? Just curious about that. In terms of building code, the two fire exits exit to underneath the building, to essentially the ramp to the parking garage. Remote-ish, because they're more than 15 feet apart, but I thought they had to exit to two totally different frontages. That's not even a frontage, that's onto the property. I don't know. That's a DOB call, however, I'm just surprised to see that that got through the DOB.
Well, have we seen the DOB approved plans?
We have not seen the DOB approve. So I speculate. Were those self-certified, by the way?
Were the DOB plans self-full plan review? We have them here, I could leave them, if you'd like a copy for your, if you're, I could leave a set with...
Whatever, it needs to be submitted formally, so leaving it isn't necessary. You don't need to leave it.
Yeah, we have a set here, I mean, just if you're, I'll hand it up, we'll give it out on form, a formal submission. And we'll go through with the Fire Department, and we'll speak to them. Mayor is whispering in my ear that there is egress to Jericho Turnpike from stair A, but we'll maybe schedule, when the Fire Department comes out, maybe they could spend some time, and we'll go through with them.
A daycare center? Yeah, oh, I see, you go out that?
Yeah, through Jericho. So, but we'll sit with, I think they just scheduled, they said they scheduled the time, they're going to be there, mayor knows the building inside out, obviously.
Okay.
We'll try and, of course, satisfy everything the Fire Department can. And we'll bring back your comments to the architect. The stroller parking, I know you didn't bring up, by the way, but just so you know, we did speak to Children of America, they use a wall rack system for most of the strollers. Most strollers that the parents are using now are spring-loaded strollers that fold up. They're not like the big old ones that my parents used to have years and years and years ago.
I don't know, if you just take a walk down on Tribeca, just like four blocks...
Yeah, on the way here, I pass it all the time.
There are the Cadillacs of strollers, all lined up, and they take about three feet of the sidewalk, and there's about 30 of them at any given ideal daycare moment. So explain to me why these parents won't have those Cadillacs for their kids.
Because Children of America's got facilities all over the country, and they specialize in children, and they don't lease space for stroller storage, they know they need strollers to be hung on walls, and they've developed a system whereby they hang them. So we'll show you the system that they utilize.
All right, but I just want to, again, your architect should be listening to this video. Where the strollers are proposed to be is in a narrow corridor in front of the elevator, you can't tell me that's where you put strollers. There needs to be a dedicated area that doesn't interfere with egress from a crowded elevator. You're putting, how many hundreds of kids are coming in and out of this?
Yeah, there's about 200, about 200 kids. We will...
Yeah, so it means these are packed elevators all day long, and you're saying you're going to put strollers where everyone gets out of the elevator? I don't think so. So message to architect, the plan is not worked out, architecture speaks, okay?
We'll relay that message.
And a message to developer, this may mean significant amount of reconstruction, if you have any hope of getting this project, these various projects approved, assuming we even get to the demand question.
We're going to shut it, I'm not even talking about the man.
No, I'm just saying, because I don't know that we get to reduce the amount of parking. Okay.
Do, are you done?
Yeah, I think we're done on the school.
Yeah, I don't think of any more dates.
So do we want to go then to the third case? So he's a separate applicant, so we make a...
That's true, he's a separate applicant.
Well, public, any speakers on the daycare?
There are speakers on the daycare?
No? So then why don't we then schedule the two?
Yeah, we can schedule the two, and then move to the PC.
Okay, so.
I want to save August.
Let's do August.
Are you in August? I went out to July, in August.
You need more time, Simpah. Trust us.
We don't need much time, we can come back to you with our materials in three weeks.
You need more time.
No, Sydney's fast. Sydney's fast, and the architect's...
You need to redesign this project.
I think our concern is addressing FDNY's access issues with regards to daycare and the parking layout, so I'm not sure how quickly that is going to be resolved, because you need to coordinate with FDNY.
And I'd also like, I really want some focus on the separation of uses between the daycare and the other uses.
Okay, sorry, so, yeah, you need more, you need to, the architect, message to architect, project needs to be seriously redesigned in concert with the reduction in the parking, the amount of parking, but the issue of medical facility on the same floor as daycare, I would just say, don't go there.
Well, why, can I, why is that the problem? If there's a wall between everybody, what's...
Because it shares a staircase.
Well, the staircase is the issue, that's what you're getting at. It's not the two uses, it's the stairs, right? We address the stairs, then we address the problem, right?
Well, unless you provide two, unless you provide two separate elevators for the medical facilities, whereby if one breaks, the other one at least is operational, and you're not dependent on the staircases as an alternate means of vertical circulation.
And we also need the two egresses need to be separate.
I mean, those would be fire exits, and that can be maybe through, through the very security system, but then you need to have a very robust security system. So those are some of the alternatives. You have seen some projects that-
Yeah, no, the one you're hearing later today, yes.
So I think you should relay those options and see how those can be worked out.
And the most simple solution, frankly, is an interior stair, and that, by the way, gives you an opportunity to take out, to give yourself some kind of a lobby here, because you don't even have a lobby for the daycare. So I'd suggest take a look at Retail 3, which has kind of a weird shape to it at the rear, and move some of those classrooms over and create a real lobby so that no one has to go past little kids, and then there's plenty of room to install a separate staircase. And don't bother giving us a letter from the architect that it complies with code-
How do you know? I had one on the table in front of me.
Because that's not the question before us, right? The question before us is, is it safe? And so far, no, okay?
I understand. You've given me your perspective, and thank you. I have different perspectives, but it doesn't mean I don't respect yours. I have a different one, but it's not, but I'm hearing what you're telling me, and I appreciate it.
But since your client's here, when the attorney has different perspectives than the board-
You're getting permission from?
Yes.
Yeah, that's not good. That doesn't help, that doesn't help the approval.
That's called 10 hearings, and I don't know much, how much he charges you per hearing and per preparation, but it would save you a lot of money if he would, you would just agree to do the things that the board is doing.
We're going to talk, and we're trying to come that way. Thank you for giving us that.
What Fire Department said about the, above the third floor, it is right above the section that with regard to no children, infant, toddlers on the first floor, but there's waivers for both.
If you qualify, whatever it is you have to do to qualify.
So we'll sit with them.
Continued, continued hearing will be August 6th for July 17th submission.
Can you just hold on one second, just give me one second.
August 6th for July?
July 17th.
July submission. Thank you. Does that work for you, Mr.?
Just checking something. Can we make it? Excuse me? They can do, he's asking me, they can do sooner, is there any-
No, let's just move on. No, you can't do it sooner. You need time to solve these problems. There are a lot of problems with this application, and so you need to take time to answer them, okay? We don't want to read something where our comments are exactly the same as what we just said.
Also, I imagine you want the architect here?
Yes, certainly the architect must come with the necessary.
Okay, so July 17th was the date that you-
Submission for August 6th hearing.
For August 6th? August 6th it'll be.
And to that point, also, the Fire Department, as it said, you need approval from Department of Health, from Fire Department and DOB to have a daycare center on the third floor. That being your supposition, maybe you move the daycare center to the second floor. So, and if, and so one of my comments was about the accident of lease-ups. If you've already made a commitment to the PCE to be on the second floor, that's the accident of lease-ups. So as a result, what's the point of us talking about a daycare on the third floor if DOA says absolutely not, or Fire Department says no way? So we need to get that cleared up before you come, okay?
Fair enough.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item, oh, sorry. Go ahead. Item number 3, 2018-145BZ, 25173, Jericho Turnpike, Queens. Do you, raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond to any further questions? Okay, sign. Eric, take your-
Good afternoon, Madam Chair Commissioners, Frank Saint-Jacques, Ackerman, LLP for the Applicant, Planet Fitness. We attended yesterday's review session, and so I'll just run through the comments. I apologize for the inconsistency. There's two major inconsistencies with respect to the plan set that we submitted. The base building, site plan and seller plan weren't coordinated with the most recent submission related to the other applications that were just heard. We'll make sure in future submissions that's coordinated. And Commissioner Chanda, you also mentioned, and I confirm that there's discrepancies related to floor area throughout different items in the, the application. I will offer an explanation and make sure that's consistent going forward. The revised plans show the correct zoning floor area of about 17,271 square feet. The statement of facts, the revised zoning analysis, and potentially other portions of the application, but those are the two I saw just before coming here today, reflect a gross floor area. It's obviously incorrect, and also affects the parking calculation, right? Which should be 58 spaces. We'll go through that much more carefully in our next submission, and I apologize for the confusion. We will also discuss and detail sound attenuation with the PCE operator in the next submission. And I'll note more clearly on the plans, there's no actual massage services provided by licensed massage professionals. All the massage, there are massage chairs and sort of mechanical massage devices that occur in the, what's labeled as the black card spa. We attempted to clarify that with, it's hard to tell, so we'll add a note and further clarify that in the next submission. The one, so we're aware that, so this, this application isn't seeking any waivers, the-
Sorry, sorry. Before you say that, the massage room shows two beds.
So it's, it's confusing there. It's a, it's a, it's a mechanical, I can tell you the name of it.
Okay, some kind of strange name.
One's a massage chair and one's a hydro massage bed. Essentially, you lay down on it and there's, there's a liquid in the bed. We'll make that labeling much clearer, but there are no massage therapists on premises.
Something like that, yeah.
So a number of the Planet Fitness applications are similarly confusing here. Our office will make sure to note that in the next submission.
Okay, thanks.
So there's chairs and the sort of bed devices, but no licensed massage professionals. So with, you know, we'll make those changes. That's something that we can do, at least as it relates to the PCE space relatively quickly. I'm not sure if we should follow the other application.
Unfortunately, you know, this is just a PCE, but you must travel with the other applications. And I know that you, your architect has designed a project that's laid out like this, but as you can hear from the testimony, the shape of the tenant space may change, right?
Right.
Both because Fire Department says it needs some other kind of an access point that just happens to be right at your corner, or that there's a fire stair, something that needs to be modified, or that actually you're moving to the third floor. I don't know if your client would be okay with that, but at the same time, that may be the way the property owner needs to address his other interests.
Construction started for the PCE? I'm just curious. Oh, which one?
I believe it has. I don't have a status of the, there is a lease.
There is a lease.
So we'll, we'll discuss that internally, because I know these are a lot of open questions that we have as well.
Yeah, can you find out at what stage the construction is? And let us know immediately?
Yeah, I can, I'll try and do so in the hallway and let the board know.
Okay, great, thank you.
But otherwise, I will submit before July 17th for the, or sorry, is it July 17th for the continued hearing, August 6th?
Correct. Right, July 17th?
Do we have a date conflict?
Well, Mr. Plonnik wanted to raise some comments about the daycare, there was an incorrect statement made by the Fire Department.
But just for the purposes of scheduling this PCE, I just wanted to know if there was discussion about the date being bad?
Yeah, they want to, they want to move up the date. I told them can't.
Well, I know they want to, but is there a conflict preventing you from coming August 6th?
No.
No, great.
Okay. So, and does Fire Department want to talk about the gym, or?
No.
Okay. So we can, we will set it on to, up for the same schedule, right?
Yes. August 6th, July 17th.
Right.
Submission.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
But now the question is, do we want to call, call back? Which one are we calling now?
This is for the daycare. Item number 2, 2018-137BZ, 25177, Jericho Turnpike, Queens.
All right, thank you. John Daly, Fire Department. I just wanted to correct a statement that was made. I said, no, daycares are not permitted above the third floor.
Above the third floor.
Above the third floor. So the daycare on the third floor is permitted use by the state.
It's just the roof wouldn't be permitted.
Yeah, it's the roof, that's a playground.
Okay.
Understood.
I think-
And that's why we're asking for, we're asking for a quicker time, because we're obviously under a lot of financial pressure. And there, we could respond to everything, we have no external items.
We can give you a little more time, well, can we just move on? We don't have the-
He's bleeding under the building.
That's the hearing that we have available, we're not going to discuss it anymore.
There's no way you can do it?
Okay, no.
All right, thank you for considering it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And we're done. Item number 4, 2018-18BZ, 1441G, South Avenue Island. Uh, sorry, South Avenue, Stack Island. Sorry, Islands. It is on that. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond to any further questions?
Thank you, Sprowder, for the cards.
Yeah. My jungle gyms, all those stackers.
Good evening, Todd Dale for the Applicant. I'm going to pass this up, just for reference, a speaker at a second. We did listen to review session.
Sorry, sorry.
That's totally- Take your time, it'll last, that's fine.
We didn't ask for speakers for the gym. Was there anybody who still wanted to speak about the gym, the PCE? No? Okay. No, I know, but I just wanted to check because I didn't ask, and I must ask. Anybody want to speak about the PCE? Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much for coming.
Okay, sorry. Say your name again, please.
Todd Dale for the Applicant.
Yes.
We did have representative review session. I realize there were probably two key issues that were raised. The first one I want to bring up is with respect to the lighting and any effect in the adjacent woodland area. Just to clarify, we did submit a lighting plan that shows that these are spilled, that the spill of the lights is designed not to go past the roof, so there is a lumen diagram. But just to clarify, that woodland area is a voluntary woodland area. It's not a DEC or anything that's set aside, it's something that they, they set up. But also spoke to, you know, the architect who's been involved with this, one of the landscape architects, and he noted that on Teleport Drive, there's already streetlights that are there. So there's already lights that are there, and that any lighting on the roof with this spill that's designed is never going to exceed the existing streetlights that are already there. So, you know, I understand the concerns that were raised, but this really was designed, and there is no anticipation or expectation that the light would go beyond the roof of the area.
So, so one of the reasons that this came up is because I read the tech memo and some of the EAS, where it, and where, of course, this was about city planning's approval of this entire commons, right? And one of the discussions that goes on is that in exchange for building actually draining a portion of the wetland, it was determined that a way to, I don't know if the word properly is mitigating, because you're draining the wetland, but nonetheless, a way of sort of at least retaining in perpetuity a portion of the wetland. They said that there would be a certain number of acres preserved as wetland or preserved natural area, right? So what I don't know, because I didn't read it so carefully, is whether this area, which I would think would count, because that's how they're measuring the acreage, whether this area is part of that preserved area, in which case, I think that was a DEC domain. And so that's kind of DEC's call, though I understand what you're saying with streetlights, once you have streetlights, what are you going to do? But not being an expert on this subject at all, all I really know about is how the turtles won't lay their eggs if the hotels have lights on, right?
That's fair, and I understand that. No, and I, and I understand, and that's why we want to, I reached out, and as I spoke to, actually, if you remember from the school application, the property was there, he says, "It's mentioned in the tech memo, but there's no specific D restriction." That said, they have no intent of changing this, but this light, if you really reference, I would say, not to minimize that concern, but really focusing on the design and the lumen diagram that was presented, and we show the lights that are there that are proposed to be these, sort of spill stops at the roof. They really, even if there weren't streetlights, they would, they would say that there's going to be no effect two stories down, but that anything, you know, even if those lights were shining down, they wouldn't go over, I'm not a light technician, but they said wouldn't go over the existing streetlights. So, so we have three levels of-
Right. So, so the other part of it is, because we have this on another case, this case is that one? The one that's still in negotiation with the neighbors, that's in Queens, right? So, what? Yeah, so that one, where there's a lot of discussion with neighbors, the, it's exactly the same design garage with those central poles that, that shine like this, and what we've studied and what we've learned is, so on the one hand, there's the lumen spread thing that we all understand, the, it's the easiest, because you can measure it with a light meter. On the other hand, there's this subject of brightness, which means that you can actually perceive the glow of the place even if it's not actually shining light onto your property. So it's, it's a, it's a different measurement, right? And so that was something that was actually looked at in that white stone case, where the community was very upset because it could see the brightness, sort of the glow of the place, right? So I, I would just have to say that what I'd like to do is just reach out to DEC, because this is their domain, and find out. And in addition to which, there's the subject of, did you want to add something about that?
I just wanted to know, since this is a corporate common, what are the heights of the office buildings and others in the area? If you can provide that and if there's any-
Well, I think that, I think it's shown on there. I mean, the closest, the only building that's close is the one that was approved to school, which I think, as I recall, was a six-story building. So, and that's like 250 feet away. There's nothing within hundreds of feet of this. So as far as buildings in the area, it's, it's hundreds of feet, and the closest one is the school building. So there's, there's, there's no, you know, I would say that compared to other similar applications the board has seen, I would say that this has got the furthest buildings from the actual proposed roof area. And I, I understand what's being brought up, but I would say that, you know, as I said, every, you know, every design factor they tell me was taken to this, and they're not expecting any issue. And I understand what you're reaching out as far as the brightness, but, you know, human beings will look up, creatures aren't going to look up.
What do you mean?
I just, I don't think it's an issue.
They live in trees. What?
Well, I mean, it's, it's two, it's two stories away, and I just don't think that there's any, you know, is that a scientific?
But anyway, I'm not an expert on this subject. I'm just saying that it's not, it's a wooded area that's being protected for a reason to qualify under the EAS. I know the EAS did not mention rooftop parking, because I read it. And so to the extent that there is an issue, maybe there's an issue, but, but the reason, so if this was the only question open, then maybe that would be it. But my bigger issue is the separation of not knowing about this parking garage and its entrance.
Well, let's talk about that, and then maybe we can revisit the lighting. How's that? So I wanted to pass this along, this diagram, which was presented at the school application. And I would say, even though that the school application has been closed and granted, we're happy to revisit some of the discussion that was there in order to, you know, ease some of the concerns that were raised. Just want to point out, the area that's south of the parking garage, just so you see right there, which is Teleport Drive.
Okay, teleport.
Okay. Right. That area is controlled by the Port Authority, and there is no access allowed there. So, there is no physical other place that the entrance to the garage can be located. If you actually look on Google, you'll see that they set aside orange cones there. Port Authority controls that. There's no access there. And that's why, when you look at the parent circulation, which we talked about, they actually go there and have to turn around. They can't extend past. So, there's no...
Why is that?
It's the Port Authority, and they have some security reasons for what they do. I don't know what exactly they do on the adjacent lot, but all we know is we don't have access to that.
Well, what about...
So, that's one, one point I would bring up. The other thing, too, is with respect to the circulation, you know, we did have that hearing. I know for a fact that the parking garage was there, and it was discussed. It was on all the plans. It was on...
But not the entrance to it.
Sure it was. We talked about that entrance when we were there during the discussion.
You didn't mention that there were 840 trips coming out of that place directly across the street from the school.
However, I would say that that location, just to clarify, that parking garage, just so you know, is currently the foundations completed on it because it can be built as of right.
Yes.
And the only reason that we're here is because instead of building a four-story enclosed parking garage, we're proposing the three-story.
That may be true.
No, I just, I'm just...
But the school could not have been built as of right, and we didn't know at the time. So, I am very upset about this because there I was, spending all the time worrying about the 33 parking spaces that are in the surface lot, and about the truck dock, and about the few parents who would be parking in the 33 parking spaces, and about the MTA bus stop passing by the kids. That's what I was worried about. And at no time did anyone say to me, "Oh, well, don't forget about the 830 vehicle trips that are also going to be passing by the kids."
That parking garage was on all the materials, and I can't, there is no way that the board could have been...
No, could have known.
No, could have not known that that parking garage was there, because we were here, we discussed it.
The parking garage, not the entrance to the garage and 830 vehicle trips.
The entrance was clearly shown on all the plans. It was on this plan, it was on the proposed plan.
Clearly shown, how?
The garage, it was...
There is no diagram that indicates 830 trips all exiting from that.
That's right, because we're in a situation like that. I mean, the other thing, too, is, as we said about that whole school circulation plan, we talked about it, we had them here, that they've been monitoring the entrance there for 10 years. They've gone through this many, many times. They've pointed out there where they've got security staff. It's marked on there. They use radios to bring all the buses in. And the fact is, two things. One, that parking garage, if it wasn't here for this application, and it was as of right, would still have been there, and it would still have been discussed, four stories with more spaces.
No, 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 no. Had it been presented to us that those were the exit, the only means of access to the parking garage while we were reviewing the school, we would have taken that into account during the school analysis. And I certainly would have said, "That's too much traffic for all of those kids to be dealing with, especially the ones who are going to be walking across the street to get to the ball fields, which they're forced, where they're forced to cross with all of that traffic." And I would have said, "Move the entrance to the school someplace else, perhaps to the other side." Or, I'm not sure what the answer would have been. But, in this case, I'm just looking, it says corporate commons one existing, and it says existing parkings. That sounds like it's all part of the same development. Why can't that be the entrance and egress from the parking garage?
I just, I can't fathom that this, just to say, this was never hidden. When we did the school application, it was never, it was never hidden.
So, then, why don't, why was this the first time that I learned that there are 830 vehicle trips?
I can't speak to the level of review that existed.
No, no, no.
But I know that we present this, we did a circulation plan, it was in the tech memo, it was on the plans, it was on the site plan, it was on the revised site plans. I know we talked about the parking garage.
So, Mr. Dale, okay, so, here's what I'm going to tell you. I'm not willing to consider this application anymore without your client present, because your client agreed to all kinds of terms in order to make that school a possibility. And I didn't know, the board didn't know, that this parking garage is competing for that traffic circulation that we talked about for I don't know how many hearings, and this was never raised. And I want your client here at the next hearing for us to discuss this.
This application's not about the school, which was closed and granted. This application is here for...
Right, but I'm ready to open up the school, because this was not, this was a material fact that was...
And why, under what authority would the board reopen the school application?
A material fact. It's called a rehearing.
We can, we absolutely have discretion to reopen up.
We have a discretion to reopen our own cases.
Especially when this, I don't think we should go down that road.
Let's not.
I just, I don't, I don't...
I don't want to. That's why I want your client here.
Exactly. So, I, I just don't understand what, how's this?
You just heard. You just heard me.
The client could have been here today if there was any intent.
Should have brought him.
Well, it wasn't mentioned during review session. If it had been mentioned during review session, we could have done that.
Okay, so, you have a chance to bring him to the next hearing.
And what would you want the client to say, that I can't present right here?
Because your client knows better about the state of construction and, and to agree with us...
I just told you that the foundation was completed.
Sorry. The foundation is a foundation. I know what a foundation is, right? And I know that you can change things once a foundation is built.
There's no physical way to change the entrance to this garage. If you did it to the west, it would be in the woodlands area.
No.
Did it to the south, you can't do it to the teleport drive.
It goes through the corporate commons one, existing.
And tear through all the landscaping that's already existing there.
It's some bushes. I'm looking at bushes on the drawing, because this is as much information as we have, some circles that indicate bushes, which may, which probably aren't there because the building is under construction.
I just...
I'm guessing that it's not there because the building under construction would damage all those bushes.
So, for this particular application, which is here for a very specific issue...
Yes.
That, no, I understand what you're bringing. For this particular issue, though, as far as what is being raised, as far as the issues in this particular application.
Are you asking us to ignore everything we know?
No. This, as an attorney, you would appreciate that we're here before one particular issue.
No, and I do, I do.
Sure. And I'm not, I'm not saying that. So, for this particular issue, which is the rooftop parking, which is trying to seek to change what could be an as-of-right four-story structure to a two-story structure, which actually reduces the amount of parking and the amount of visits that potentially could come to this building for the rooftop. It's, it's a roof versus, you know, rooftop parking. That's, that's the issue that's here.
I, I appreciate that. But I think the chair was pretty clear that she'd want an explanation as to how the circulation's going to work on the, because of the prior case that we are granted, we do have the authority to open that case up. I think it's much better served if we just get, the owner here, we sit down, we talk about it, and we find another solution, rather than everyone flexing and, and, and not getting very far with it.
I just, I find it very hard to believe that after all the information that we presented, it was very shocking to us...
Counselor.
...to hear that raised, because I know it was discussed.
Show me where the information was presented, and then we'll have a conversation.
It's a plan, this site plan submitted.
It wasn't presented.
It was in the tech memo.
I recall, I recall, we, we had very extensive conversations about the circulation. We said about which buses go where, we talked about which cars, how many cars are expected to pass. I didn't, and unless this is just going to be an empty structure parking that no cars are going to go into, something's a little different. There are more cars, if this, there are, there will be, there, there was an idea that there was going to be many more cars than what was presented to us that are going to be passing through there. Now, and that's, if that's where the opening is, that's the only, that's obviously the only thing that, that, the only solution.
No, it's not the only, because I'm looking at the other option. There's a parking lot.
No, no, as it's written now, like, if that was the idea, then they would have had to provide that information.
Yes.
Because that was the, that's the logical, now, I understand your position saying, "Well, you know, we showed a garage, you should have figured out something was, was astray." Not when we have representations of how many cars are passing through there, and how many buses are passing through there.
And there was a long conversation.
And that was that kind of representation.
First of all, the, the bus issue, I, I don't think is relevant to the parking garage, okay? As far as any vehicles moving into there.
It's about traffic.
Well, I mean, the buses will pass through anyway. The option here, what I would say is, look at the no-action scenario. The no-action scenario instead of this parking garage would be the as-of-right parking structure, or it would just be open parking. I just don't understand how, at this point, it can be raised.
I just told you...
I just don't, I don't want it implied that we didn't make it.
You're introducing new facts into the record of another case that was not before us, and you're, what you're presenting us with is the possibility of simply reopening that case, which I wouldn't recommend, or us decide, working it out on your parking garage case. And since it's the exact same owner, it would, granted, be way more difficult when, if it were a different owner, since it's the exact same owner, it's a conversation that can be had and must be had, because I feel like the case that we heard earlier was improperly decided if we cannot, if we did not have these facts. If you want to show me that in the transcript, or in the section in the video where it was discussed that this parking garage was going to be opening right onto here with 400 and however many cars...
I don't know what this meant, but in the tech memo, we have like an excerpt from it does indicate that they're going to come to BSA 37349.
Okay.
Parking garage, so at least SEACER reviewed is open.
SEACER reviewed that they're coming to the BSA. SEACER did not review, nor would it have, that the parking, that all of the traffic is being dumped onto that section of whatever that's called, School Road, or something like that. It did not mention that, because it didn't, right? And it was not mentioned in any of the hearings.
There's 900 total parking spaces that are required, and approximately 400 or so are here. Majority, the way this whole lot was designed, is that people come in from South Street. The vast majority of people who come in are going to park in the open parking lot, because that's where they're immediately accessible, and that's where the main entrance to the building is. This garage is actually just spill-over parking that's required because of zoning requirements. Everyone coming from South, we've already said, you can't come from teleport. So, everyone coming into the site comes from South.
You could come from teleport if you cut across Commons One, right?
So, if you went up and then around or something like that, but, you're familiar with the area, everyone's going to be traveling on South.
I, I, if we let them.
Everyone's going to be traveling on South access to the site.
So, you're saying this 500 and something space car no one's going to use? Is that what you're trying to say?
No, I'm saying that from a design standpoint, that when people come in, the first spaces that they're going to take are, if you go to any site, you're going to take the spaces that are closest to the entrance and are the most accessible.
Right.
And everyone coming from South comes to the open parking lot first. I don't think there's any dispute with respect to that. The main entrance to the building is facing South Avenue. So, the only people who would ever go to that parking garage are, if everything else is filled. I'm not saying it won't happen, because zoning requires...
So, then, why build it if nobody needs it? Why add another 137 spaces?
Because zoning requires access, as the board knows.
No, 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 no. You're overbuilding this, overbuilding the amount of parking by almost twice. So, this isn't about zoning.
No, 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 that's not true.
Yeah, you said that there's 540-something spaces required, and you're providing 900 and something spaces.
What I said is that there's 400 in the garage, roughly. There's approximately 500 or so in the open parking spot. The number of required spaces is shown on the zoning analysis. I believe we're providing 935 or 940 for the total development. So, the required is something like 750 or 700.
No, 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 no. Your own statement says 564 spaces required by zoning, 460 spaces are the demand, and 935 spaces are being provided on the zoning lot. And that's why I asked, "Wow, you're providing so many spaces. What do you need another 135 spaces for?"
I'm not sure where that number is from. 796 on the zoning...
From your submission.
From which submission?
Your, oh, sorry, the tech memo two. It's the tech memo two I'm reading this from, actually. So, you know, I don't know the tech memo is...
I can't speak to the tech memo. The architect and the zoning analysis, the 796 required is consistent, both with this application.
Well, you should speak to your environment consultant, because they are coming out differently. So, I'm reading...
Possibly, 796 is what's required.
You can appreciate the chair's concern as to the, you can appreciate the, the chair's concern as to the school and how this, this overflow of cars...
Sure. And that's why we addressed the concern when we have the presentation, and we have the people there, and we presented the fact that this school has, for a decade, maneuvered and managed people coming into the site, that they have security staff that are there. They're proposing new security staff there. They have the radios, they control the buses, they have people monitoring the students that are coming in. And the fact is, is that these particular location to this garage, there's actually parking spaces that are closer to the school than the garage. The garage is at least 125 feet away from the school entrance.
But isn't it, let's say we do open an entrance here and go through the corporate commons or that comes to teleport, and I understand that people likely want to go the way that they, but there's certainly ways we can landscape around it, so they can't come through here. And that might solve the chair's concern.
I'm saying, create a pedestrian egress that's right opposite Commons Three, or wherever number that is. I mean, I'm not saying pedestrians shouldn't get out of the parking garage that way and go directly to the office building they want. What I'm saying is, you don't want to see 800 trips passing in front of the school. It's bad enough as it is, right? So, anyway, I don't want to belabor this, it's already been said. Are there any speakers on this? So, I really recommend, if you want to get this done, that you bring your client the next time, or you tell your client what the issues are, and maybe, because your client was very amenable to working with us on so many levels, it was really good application with respect to the school, the changes that needed to be made were made instantaneously, you know, a very good business analysis. So, I think if he just listens to these comments and the ones yesterday, he will come up with a solution, rather than you coming up with his solution. He's a very savvy guy, and I think he will...
Yes, he is. And we discussed this, and, and, as I said, would have been willing to be here if we thought that there was any need for him to be here. So, sorry.
This is reasonable, what I'm, what I'm saying, isn't it?
I would say, other than the fact that the foundation is built and the construction is going forward, and I don't know what is already there, so they've already committed costs based on an as-of-right structure. So, I understand what you're saying, but, you know...
Not saying it's not an as-of-right structure. And a foundation is a foundation, it's not the same as a slab.
We don't know how far they are into it.
I don't know, I don't have photos to present, to extend.
No, and you don't. And you also aren't a construction manager, and you don't know what would be entailed by simply changing a couple of curb cuts, et cetera, et cetera. So, let's just leave it at that and set this up for another hearing.
I would say this, that's fine. I understand the board's position.
Okay.
We could, we will reach it out to the owner.
Yeah.
Okay. And present it to the owner. Depending on what the response is, we can bring in the architect or the site design person to explain why it is possible or why it isn't possible, in order to satisfy the board's concerns. I would say, because of the fact the foundation is built, and because they have materials coming in to build this garage, because it was based on the school, we would really like to accelerate.
Sooner the better. Absolutely right. And I would recommend to your client...
We could be here next week.
...that a solution is the way to go on this, right?
I understand.
A solution, as opposed to a why we can't.
Hopefully, they're not too far done in the...
Right, but I don't even want to talk about it, a solution? Because construction gets built and unbuilt every day of the week. Often, a contractor puts the door in the wrong place, and you say, "Yep, move the